Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, can we call the roll?
Councilmember Zwick.
Here.
Councilmember Parr.
Here.
Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilmember Terosus is absent at the moment. Councilmember De La Torre.
Here.
Mayor Potem McCa— I'm sorry. Whoa. Mayor Potem McGrath.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum, so we can proceed. We will go to item number one, Madam Clerk. Can you call it, please?
Okay. Item number one's public input. Public input is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item. And I do think we have several individuals for public input. Yes, we have four. So I will read the names of all four. Donnie Longino. If you could just come up and stand along the wall.
Yeah, we typically ask people to just stand up against the wall and then come up in order of the order your name is called. Thank you.
Grant Harris. Donald Hinchman. And Kat.
All right, and as you come up, if you can state your name for the record, so people who are watching on YouTube or on Channel 16 will know who you are. And you probably want to pull the mic up closer to you. There you go. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Donnie Longino. I'm a— and I work at Providence St. John's here in Santa Monica. I've been there for 22 years. I've been a nurse assistant, that's what I am, a nurse assistant, for 33 years. So I come to work—I work in the daytime. So each shift, I have 10 to 12 patients that I have to take care of. You know, that's bathing, changing, turning, walking, feeding, those things. We are constantly short-staffed at the hospital. So with that, being short-staffed most of the time, I can't give the care that I really would want, you know, want to give because of—the because of the short staffing. Our turnover—for CNA's is constant because—because people don't stay—they don't stay— they don't stay there. And the main reason is because of the low wages, the low pay. So they go to—they leave us and they go to the surrounding hospitals that pay more. So I just hope that you can support our healthcare workers who are—
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out on this rainy evening.
Next, we have Grant Harris.
Hi there, members of the council. My name is Grant Harris. I'm in—
Sir, can you start over again? I'm sorry, your mic got turned off, but I turned it back on.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
You can.
Hi there, members of the council. My name is Grant. I work at St. John's as an EMT in the emergency department. I'm here just to give you a feel for the sort of things that are going through our minds in the ER and then the healthcare professions in general. Heroes work here is a phrase you might have heard on news, on TV, in papers, all over the place. If you guys haven't seen it, you can go to your local hospital and you'll see a big banner up there that says, "Heroes work here." It's going to be high enough that the hospitals are happy, that they're sending the public the right message, but it's not going to be low enough that I see it when I walk through the doors every day to go to work. A manager told me she was recently looking at the numbers, and she saw that in the 14 years we've been recording our statistics, this is the busiest St. John's ER has ever Since I personally started four years ago, that fact, combined with the stresses that have led to three-quarters of my coworkers leaving other EMTs, at least six nurses that I've been close with leaving, doctors leaving, and not only leaving the job, but leaving the profession altogether. I am now in a position where I no longer—I have to make the choice between taking care of someone who's having a cardiac arrest and doing chest compressions on them, or helping my team get another person who's having a stroke up to the catheter lab to have that stroke unblocked in their head. Alongside that, we're seeing—and the only thing that hasn't gone up in—
You can just finish your sentence, sir.
The only thing that hasn't gone up is our pay and the time that we've worked there. Fortunately, because of inflation, it's gone down 20% in the last three years. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Donald Hinchman.
Hello, members of the Santa Monica City Council. My name is Don Hinchman, and I've been a CT technologist at Providence St. John's for a little over 20 years now, and a member of SEIU UHW. I would just like to reiterate some statements that I made here last week, speaking to you regarding my fellow coworkers and supporting staff members. My comments were primarily made towards the directing—directed towards the transportation staff today, as this is the group that I primarily interact with and choose to call my friends. I would describe the transporters at Providence St. John's as being exceptional. It's the transportation staff that makes the hospital go, yet, in my opinion, some of the least valued employees. They are frequently interstaffed and the ones that are blamed when things do not go right because of these staffing issues. They could make more money working in fast food, but they choose to continue to do a hard and stressful job. They deal with the sick, the dying, as well as patients that are in isolation, putting themselves at risk because they care. It's not just a job, it's being there for another human being and the satisfaction of helping others. I cannot think of another group of people that is more deserving of recognition and bonuses than they. Ask that today that you think of the transportation staff and all other healthcare workers that make it possible for me to do my job. Please help address the healthcare shortfalls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kat.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Catalina. I go by Kat. I'm on the streets. I talk with a lot of homeless people, that's why. I'm here, yes, with a different agenda. I'm in July 2020, I launched Operation Love Zing with my sixth grader. And I just said everyone would be leveled on the planet. We all been brought to our knees, doesn't matter what race, ethnicity, where you're from, how rich, how poor, how famous, didn't matter. We were able to wear our masks, we were able to walk the streets again. And I said, "Start just complimenting people, send a little love zing." We're all, like, from spirit embodied. And so start sending love to everyone you encounter, doesn't matter who they are. I love your mask, I love your shoes, anything. Whether they acknowledge it or not, at least you sense a love out there. And if they didn't take it, love zing off to somebody else, just start uplifting the human spirit again to kind of get us back. And here we are, you know, back later, and we're not doing so great. And so I think it's really important, especially with the homeless, you know, I see them out, you know, in the pouring rain. I mean, it'd demolish anybody's spirits to be out there. And I go check on them, and I know, I read the articles, and I'm on the Daily Press, Dr. Benjamin goes out and finds the skin of—sees the appendix and gives them shots, just to, you know, try to keep them so they're more balanced. And it said something, it didn't matter, I mean, a lot of people are mentally ill, yes, but also when you're that broken, it's hard to have your spirit high. So I go and check on my homies, an angel, she's usually in front of 1212, this little black girl, and she was so demolished after the last rainstorm, it just crushed my heart to see her spirit is so broken. So I made sure and just got her attention and said, "Hey, girl, you know, it's over with, you made it through." So just go and send a little love to people, like, if I love your shoes, to anybody, I challenge everyone to raise their attention to anybody 20%, to send some encouragement. It could be, you know, Grandma Pearl with, you know, my friend Jesus, who's, like, was outside of the yard, engaged, a biker-looking guy with tattoos all over the place, but he has a cool hat, be like, "Hey, I like your hat." Just make little compliments to reignite that spark, because we are also our spirit embodied, and just start infusing that love back from the ground up and popping up so we can bridge that gap. Most of us are religious, you know, heaven on earth, let's start helping infuse that, you know, sparks back into our spirit, find each other of our spirits, no matter of outside appearances, no matter your judgments, let's just remember we are spirit embodied, and let's try raising each other up so we can. Thank you for your time, and thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you.
We have one late chit from Jonathan.
Oh, we moved to here for one minute because your chit was late. Any objection? All right, Mr. Foster, you have one minute.
Well, I should get two minutes. The thing I wanted to talk about was in the last meeting, on the live meeting feed, and some of the related videos that came up had Negrete's running for office. So I clicked on that one because it was kind of funny, and then there was the video about Ryan Sickler, so I watched all this video. I had no idea who you were, or who your dad was, none, until two weeks ago. And what I wanted to say, I was born the day Jimi Hendrix died, Mr. Acid, so I've taken acid plenty. I'm sorry that happened to you. I know a lot about acid, studied the stuff now. That should never have happened to you. I'm sorry that happened to you. And when I said—I was calling you a baloney government, I wanted you to know it didn't have anything to do with what you talked about on there. You know what I mean? What happened—it had nothing to do with you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Is that it, Madam Clerk?
That is all.
All right, we'll close that addition of public input, and then we'll move to item two.
Okay. Mr. Grant Harris.
I'm sorry, since I erroneously put myself down twice here, I'm just going to go ahead and take this time to make the ask that we're coming here for.
Okay, well, sir, this is for comments on agendized items? Is there an agenda item you're speaking on?
Yeah, I thought that we were agenda item number one, and I was mistaken, so—
Well, agenda item number one is public input on non-agendized items, things that are not on our agenda.
I guess it would be 3A, I think.
All right, okay, well, go ahead then. We just need to make sure. Okay, thank you.
I apologize. I was—I came out here with my representatives, Nick being one of them, wonderful guy, thank you for taking me out here and bringing this forward. I'm just going to close out with our pay. The people you've met today is not going to go up by hospital management's own volition. Because the people who want to help others for a living, as you in public service know, are the easiest people to take advantage of. And what got me here today was asking myself if the right thing to do would be ushering, hoping you guys would move towards increasing the pay of people who take care of your mothers, sons, friends, cousins, families, making sure that they can make enough money to eat, put a roof over their heads, take care of their family, take care of themselves. The union reps are going to be talking to you guys about putting of payrolls on the table, and I'd love it if you'd consider it. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Do we have any other public input under item two?
That is all we have.
All right, then we will move on to closed session.
Item 3A, conference with labor negotiator, city representative, city manager David White, and chief people officer Lori Gentles, human resources manager Robert Scalise, Alexander Volberding, Leibert Cassidy Whitmore, bargain unit ATA. Item 3B, existing litigation, City of Santa Monica and others versus 1238 10th Street LLC. Item 3C, existing litigation, City of San—I'm sorry, NMS 1539 LLC and others versus City of Santa Monica. Item 3D, anticipated litigation, WS Communities versus City of Santa Monica. Item 3E, existing litigation, Santa Monica Malibu School District and others versus Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization. Item 3F, existing litigation, Linca Kabilka versus City of Santa Monica. And that is all.
All right, and Mr. City Attorney, one of these has to do with telecommunications, if I'm— which one is that?
Yes, that is the last one.
Item 3F?
Yes.
So I just want to let everyone know that in the closed session, I will be recusing myself from any discussion in connection with item 3F. As many people know, I work for AT&amp;T, that's my day job. And even though this particular item doesn't directly affect AT&amp;T, whenever there's any issue regarding telecommunications policy on any city agenda, I recuse myself because there, in fact, could be some long-term relationship between the two. And with that, I'll turn to our city attorney and ask when he thinks we'll be back from closed session.
I would say optimistically, 7:00.
All right, optimistically, 7:00.
A lot of their—a lot—most of their clients are referrals from local doctors, et cetera. If that parking lot leaves behind them, I don't know how a lot of those people, some who are on crutches, some who are in wheelchairs, will be able to get to their location. So my question is, with the affordable housing that will replace the parking lot, is there still a way to request the developer to provide some onsite customer parking, especially for that block, both on the west side of 14th and Wilshire, and on the east side, where almost every business is somewhat of a local business? But not everyone can walk to there, because in the case of ecology, it is the disabilities of their patients who are trying to get better.
And Ms. Newsom, my podium mic thing, although it says on, it does not look like the mic is on, so I think you'll have to turn the—
I'll take care of the mics tonight.
Thank you. Okay, oh, great. So, hello, council members. My name is Ayla Scott, and I'm a senior development analyst with the Housing and Human Services Division. There's a bit of a noise.
Someone is—someone's listening to me online, although I love to hear my echo.
So, yes, so we understand that public parking is a very important consideration for this RFP, specifically for the reasons you mentioned, and an important consideration for future development of these sites. So we will ask respondents to show us conceptually an approach to replacing public parking as part of the RFP. At this stage, the process is about taking steps towards identifying a development team. And the first step in that direction would be to make the surplus—the exempt surplus land declaration. And the next step would be to release an RFP to identify and consider and select a development team, not to commit to any specific proposal at this stage. The future development plans would be addressed at a later stage, after council selects the development team, and that would be informed by a community outreach process.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that's the least on people's minds, and I would never expect us to replace one-for-one parking, but I think— —when the time comes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, it's apparently not working. Councilmember Terosus. Now it's working.
Well, now my mic is on.
It should say—
Okay, thank you. Are you—are you turning it on manually? Okay.
Carolyn Trakel, it's on now.
Got it, no problem. Hi, Ayla, good to see you. I would just ask, how quickly do we think we can do this? Because I have heard from a lot of members in the community that this is of top priority. We obviously want to build as much affordable housing as we can. What's the timeline on actually issuing the RFP and getting a development team under some sort of E&amp;A?
Is it on? Yes, okay. So, so, under the housing element, the city committed to releasing an RFP no later than June 30th. So we anticipate being able to meet that deadline. And then after the RFP is released, it would take probably another, you know, seven to nine months to come back to council for, you know, to select the development team. That time would be needed in order to release the RFP, provide adequate time to receive thoughtful responses, and do the evaluation, and, you know, make that information available, and then come back to council.
And I assume that we're—just by the way, I read the staff report, that we are asking for one development team to do all three sites concurrently, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're going to market this far and wide, because there are a lot of really excellent affordable housing developers out there. Great, hope they're listening. Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions. So without—so tonight, we're not deciding whether or not there's actually going to be parking on these sites, is that correct? We're just conceptually going to declare them surplus lands and then put out the RFP, is that correct?
So the only action for—actual action for tonight is the exempt surplus land declaration, and then staff would release the RFP by the June 30th deadline. And then down the line, council would be selecting a team, and then subsequent to that, after, you know, a community outreach process, council would, at the end of it, reach an agreement with the selected team on a final development proposal.
Right. And what we are anticipating, what we have promised, housing and community development, is that we're going to build 100% affordable housing on this site, is that correct?
That's what's committed in the housing element.
Right. And would we have to be careful about whether or not imposing too great a parking requirement could be viewed as a constraint on building that housing, since it costs a lot of money to build a parking?
Yeah, so in terms of how parking requirements would interact with housing element compliance, you know, I have some colleagues here from community development that might be in a better position to answer.
Hello, council members. So we did include language when we adopted the housing element that says that we would consider other community-serving uses, so I don't believe this would be considered a constraint.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up for questions. Oh, sorry, Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, I read the staff report. The Surplus Land Act, you know, obviously, the focus is on housing, but it says affordable home ownership as well, is that correct?
So, I believe—
And it supports, yeah, the creation of affordable housing for rent, but also for people to purchase and to own that property?
So there's—there's language in the statute that covers, you know, a variety of uses. So one is—there's housing and different kinds of affordable housing. That's just explaining the statutory requirement— That's just explaining the statutory requirement for, for the SLA.
Is, is there any, any discussion in terms of, as we start developing the, the RFP, is staff considering any, any projects for affordable home ownership, or sort of like a rent-to-own model, or what we call TORA at one point?
Yeah, so there would be some trade-offs to consider for incorporating home ownership into this RFP. So that would include cost, for example. Most of the, most of, not all of the sources of funding for affordable housing that are out there are for rental. And so incorporating home ownership into this RFP would potentially lead to a much higher city subsidy than it would be for rental. So for example, a much higher city subsidy would be needed potentially to construct the housing and also to subsidize the purchase by the individual home buyer. And so that would be one potential trade-off, is that, you know, the strategy of using the city-owned sites for affordable housing, for the housing element, would be to achieve some cost efficiencies in terms of the housing trust funds and the ability to, you know, serve more households and build more housing while reducing the cost to the city because the city doesn't need to subsidize the land cost because the city already owns the land. So part of the strategy of using the city-owned sites was to try to minimize the additional housing trust fund that would be needed to achieve the number of units that's considered in the housing element. So there's one potential trade-off there in terms of cost, rental versus homeownership. There's also potential trade-offs too, in terms of the kinds of proposers that we would get. You know, affordable housing for homeownership is, is kind of a specialized subset, if you will, of affordable housing development. So, you know, the same types of proposers that might be inclined to, to submit a proposal for rental housing, they may not have the same kind of portfolio and track record that, that you would need, you know, to pre-qualify home buyers, for example, obtain construction financing for affordable homeownership, and, you know, sell the homes to qualified buyers. So that would potentially increase the complexity of trying to do both in, in one RFP. So that's another example of a potential trade-off.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I'm really interested, and I know there's interest on this council for looking at those possibilities so that we have a sort of a diversity in how we, you know, how we help people, you know, find housing. And definitely, there's a lot of interest in creating generational wealth, you know, for low-income residents and tenants and, and families here in Santa Monica. So I, I would, I would love it if, if staff can, you know, provide us, you know, just what you just said, like, you know, all the intricacies of how, of, you know, the difference between, you know, renting and owning, and how these projects might, how we might be able to, you know, maybe even engage the council in a discussion on how, on, on the type of RFPs that we can put out, you know, to, to look at, to look into this, this concept, you know, of affordable homeownership here in Santa Monica. And then, and then just in terms of like, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to see all the, where these, is there, are there any other amenities? You know, for example, I know that in community corporation, they've built affordable housing with also like having community rooms, you know, so like where you could do tutoring and, you know, and, and the tenants themselves, you know, because sometimes you're in these apartments, they're too small, but you can't have a, if you have a big family, you can't host a birthday party, you know? So then they started doing these community rooms as part of the project. And maybe you, you can't answer this now, but is, is staff considering to add those elements into an RFP, sort of what we're doing with Parking Lot 3? You know, they're looking at a mixed-use project. Are these, right now, just slated to just be 100% housing with no other type of amenity? Or are you looking at potentially even like community rooms at a minimum?
Yeah, so I believe the housing element, as my colleague mentioned, that, you know, the, the sites can be considered for other community-serving, to include other community-serving purposes. You know, the first step, as I mentioned before, is finding the right team with the right track record and prior experience, you know, perhaps providing some of those amenities that you, that you described, if that's something that's important to the council. So the first step would really be, you know, identifying the team, and then, you know, the eventual development plan would be something that would come after extensive community outreach and also council action and input.
So there'll be some time for this council to sort of give that type of direction in terms of how we influence the RFP and the criteria set forth in the RFP?
Well, if there's, if there's, you know, a specific, you know, desire to, you know, encourage proposers to submit concepts related to community amenities, that could be incorporated. But at this point, it would be conceptual only because the final development plan would be, would come after the selection of the team.
Okay. All right. That's good. Thank you for that clarity. Thanks.
All right. Do we have a motion with regard to item 5B?
I move.
All right. 5B moved by Brock, seconded by Terosis. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Zwik?
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes. That passes unanimously, 7 to 0.
Item 5E, adoption of a resolution to enter into a updated freeway agreement, I'm sorry, freeway maintenance agreement and negotiate a delegated maintenance agreement with Caltrans.
Good evening. I'm Alex, your city engineer.
Yes. Thank you, Alex. Quick, just a quick question. I was, I was looking at the, the resolution, and there was, I just wanted to clarify this. The, the, you know, there's a certain, a certain sort of off-ramps on the freeway, in particular, like Lincoln Boulevard, you know, you get off from the 10 freeway on Lincoln. Sometimes there's just a lot of trash, you know, right, on the curb. I read that that's our responsibility, but I just want to clarify, is it our responsibility to clean up that curb area that's not fenced? You know, basically, basically everything on this side of the fence, that's our responsibility? Or is that Caltrans responsibility?
So for the most part, like, things on the city side of the fence is for city to maintain, but for, you know, anything on the other side of the fence is for Caltrans to maintain? There's some areas, there's that triangle area, so that triangle area is actually on the Caltrans responsibility, just, it's just the way the fence lines up, it's still on them.
Considering, you know, and this is a renewal, you know, of an agreement that's been going on for a long time, and I just wanted to just express that I'd like, I'd like city manager, yourself, whoever can put together sort of just a more detailed report of those sort of like, you know, difficult areas or any challenging areas that you all have assessed that we can take responsibility for. You know, we'll, we'll be embarking on a sort of quarterly community cleanups that we plan to initiate, and there's an ad hoc committee that myself, Councilwoman Parra, Councilwoman Negrete are a part of. And we want to identify all those areas that are, you know, maybe a gray area where Caltrans might not be doing a better job, or we could probably do a better job. We want to identify those areas so we can put, put that in as part of the community cleanups, the quarterly cleanups that we want to engage in. So if you can provide that for us in the future, that would be, that would be very useful.
Yes, sure. Happy to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. I'd like, I'd like to move the item, but you, you have something else to say, Phil?
Well, you can still move the item.
I'll move the item second, Phil.
Sure.
All right. Moved by De La Torre, seconded by Brock. Councilmember Brock has a question, I believe.
Wait, you left too soon. You're not off the hook yet. And I know this only covers existing prior agreements and updates them, but I know I would like to, and I think other council members would too, like to sit down with Public Works and even take a walkthrough of the areas that are off-limits to us at Caltrans, and trying to devise some sort of strategy along the freeway embankments, et cetera, work a new agreement with Caltrans for the future that would allow us to keep those areas clean, keep those areas safe, and work more proactively with CHP and Caltrans to take care of those. And that's not for tonight. I know that. These, these agreements cover the past and update slightly. But I, I think, I think most of us would feel that the areas we see by our freeways now between encampments and trash left and graffiti along the 10 freeway is oftentimes a disaster. And I know it's been very difficult getting Caltrans to be really responsive. So I, for one, would like to go on a tour of those areas and see what we can do, what kind of new agreements we can make as our budget improves to help govern those areas.
So just so I understand, Councilmember Brock, you are asking for us to set up a meeting with Caltrans within the Caltrans' right of way?
Or with, with the council members first, so whoever's interested could walk those areas, drive those areas, and identify the areas that are perpetual issues that are, that are covered by Caltrans. Where we're not getting responsiveness, it, it increases the potential for crime, it leaves people on those freeway embankments, we're not showing compassion, neither is Caltrans by leaving them there. And we need to be more proactive. And, and I know Councilmember Negrete and I already brought up, and a couple others brought up, the air, the triangle at Lincoln Boulevard, and how do we take control of that and beautify that area and stop it from just being seen as a trash pit where you come into Santa Monica?
And if I could just interject here, I think that we want to be respectful.
Is that true?
Well, I think we need to be respectful of our internal structure. Our internal structure is that we act through the city manager, and so I think what appropriate would be to, let me finish, would be to direct the city manager to engage in conversations with Caltrans about areas that are within Caltrans purview but clearly affect the sense of security and safety in the city of Santa Monica, and to arrange, if any council members would like, Caltrans-conducted tours of those areas by automobile or something like that.
That would be fine.
Does that work, Mr. Valte?
That works.
Okay. Thanks.
And I can say, in response to the direction we received from council, we certainly are engaged in those conversations with Caltrans, both through, well, through the Public Works Department and also through our office and the city manager's office, trying to find ways of addressing the 16 item and getting some action taken. So this is an area that we are actively working on as a team and trying to find relief and solutions. In fact, we recently, we recently were looking to apply for a very significant statewide grant to address and beautify a significant portion of areas surrounding Interstate 10. Unfortunately, Caltrans did not agree that we would be, we would be able to apply for a grant that would be received well and affirmatively approved. So we aren't able to apply for that grant, it would have been, I think, about a $5 million grant, I believe. But because of our community demographics and characteristics, we would not qualify. So we are struggling to figure out ways of addressing the direction given to us. We just have not yet identified a pathway that will provide the improvement in the area and the relief I think that we're all seeking.
Just want to make sure there's a spotlight on those areas. Thank you.
So we have a motion by De La Torre, seconded by Brock. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom?
Councilmember Zwik?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. That passes unanimously, 7 to 0.
Next. Can we take?
Yes, yes. We're on to item 6. Please call it.
Item 6, public input, which is for remaining items on the agenda only, with the exception of item 12A, the public hearing. Public input for that item will be heard at the time of the public hearing. So we have four.
Sorry, we're amusing ourselves up here. I apologize to everyone.
All right. I have four people for public input, if you could please line up as I call your name. Denise Barton, David Morris, Alvin Gillich, and Cara Taub.
And just while you're all lining up, the reason Ms. Newsom is calling them is because we're having some technical difficulties up here, and my screen isn't working. So only she has access to the public comment list. So thank you for your understanding.
Question, if I want to do 12A now, can I do it now?
I don't think so, because it's a public hearing, so we have to do it separately, I'm afraid.
And Ms. Barton, you're speaking on 10C, 16A, and 16F. I'm assuming you want four minutes total for those three items?
Um, yes, please. Good evening. For item 10C, I'm quite concerned about your attitude that there are no limitations for parking spaces that can be converted for outdoor spaces, including, excluding ADA spaces. But are you aware that on-street parking is the only, on-street parking is the only free parking for the elderly and disabled with a placard? So would this be another way to discriminate against the elderly and disabled, considering how unwelcome they are here by actions like this? And you know the city is considered to be in the coastal zone, right? For example, you know, the coastal zone downtown is from the alley in between Lincoln and 7th to Ocean Avenue. So in the coastal zone, the city is supposed to provide, provide a certain number of parking spaces for coastal access. And with the removal of Parking Structure 3, the removal of parking at the Civic Center, the removal of parking with surface lots for development, and the removal of on-street parking for outdoor dining, one would have to question if you're currently compliant with that number. Next, item 16A. City Councilmember Zwik, since your name is first on this item, I can only take it as you want to further destroy resident property owners and businesses' quality of life. You know, electric and gas leaf blowers have been banned or prohibited in your, in your words, since 1981, not only due to emissions of gas leaf blowers, but because of the noise generated due to their operation. So Councilmember Zwik, why do you think you can come, you can be seated as a new council member and right off the bat try to disrupt the city in this manner? Unless, of course, there's some financial benefit for you, leaving one to wonder how much of an investment you hold in Edison, alternate energy, and electric leaf blower companies? Or do you think this act will boost your image? Because it won't. It will simply bring you further questioning and critique of your further actions. I have to ask, if you did any research for this item, do you want to undo what the community worked so hard to do, showing you only represent yourself? Next, 16F. I support turning the lot where Parking Structure 3 used to be into a surface parking lot. To provide parking on the 1300 block of 4th Street would make accessing the promenade easier and safer, not only for visitors, but for property owners and employees too. Although I do have to wonder how much money the city is losing as a result of tearing down Parking Structure 3 to leave it as a vacant lot for two years. It is a valid question. So I would guess the city being able to get any revenue from that location is better than nothing, which is why I support a surface parking lot for cars to park where Parking Structure 3 used to be. In addition, the Santa Monica Coalition suggests that the parking revenue generated be used for expanded hours and days for the critical care unit, which would have the police and the fire department, due to the critical care unit only operating from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Mr. Morris, before you speak, there's actually two more names on the list for public input. I don't think they're late, I just missed them on the list. And if you could please come up as I call your name, Nicole Faris and Jennifer Smith. Go ahead, Mr. Morris.
Good evening. I'm speaking to item 11. Why is it the city clerk and the city attorney have allowed Ms. Erica Leslie to serve simultaneously on both the rental, rent control board and the Downtown Santa Monica Board for eight months, specifically since July 14, 2022, in violation of the city resolution that reads in pertinent part under section 3, quote, "No person shall serve simultaneously on more than one board, commission, committee, or task force, including the Santa Monica Pier Corporation, Downtown Santa Monica, Inc., Santa Monica Travel and Tourism, and the Regional Advisory Boards," end quote. Why is it the city clerk and city attorney have allowed one person to hog seats on two boards in violation of the city law for eight months? While there are other citizens who would like to serve on those boards, are there going to be consequences for those highly-paid city officials for such negligence, violating city laws and allowing such usurpation of power by one singular citizen? We are a city of 93,000 residents. No resident should sit on more than one board or commission, whether appointed or elected. Progressive cities value equity and participatory democracy. Santa Monica should as well. I hope the city clerk has already drafted a letter notifying Ms. Leslie that she has to vacate one of the seats without further delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Alvin Gillich?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Davis, council members. Nice to see all of you again. I'm here tonight to speak on item 16A, or 16E, excuse me, wearing my hat as the vice chair of the Montana Avenue Merchants Association. I'd like to thank you for considering our request for $10,000 of council discretionary funds to be used for our annual art walk, which will be this year on September 30th. For those of you who've attended year after year, it has grown in scope and size year over year, with our biggest and best being just last September, 2022. So based on that and the success So based on that and the success Main Street has had with the pilot program to close down several blocks for different street events, we feel it's time for us to try that. And in order to do that, we have to increase our budget. And this $10,000 would be very helpful to us for public safety issues, the street barricades, other requirements by the police department and the fire department. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gillich.
Next, we have Kara Taub.
Hi, Kara Taub, Chair of the Montana Avenue Merchants Association. I just want to follow along with what Alvin was saying. Every year, this event has grown bigger and bigger. Last year, we had over 60 artists participating and probably about a dozen performing artists. And it's simply grown too big for us to accommodate on our sidewalks and public right-of-ways. And it's time for us to now move it into the street for everyone's public safety and enjoyment. As the person who reads the emails that comes into our inbox, I have to say that the most frequently asked question is, when is the Art Walk and when is the Holiday Walk? These are the events that everyone is the most interested in. These questions come from merchants, from businesses, from all of our marketing partners, from artists who want to participate. And I hope that you will consider our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Taub. Ms. Faris?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicole Faris. I think I know a bunch of you. Hello, nice to see you all again. I am here as co-chair of Grad Night, so I'll be speaking on item 16C. Jennifer's supposed to be here, she's at another meeting. But she and I really appreciate you. There she is. Great. We really appreciate the consideration of the city council and the support for Grad Night. This is a 30-year tradition at Sam Ojai, started by a group of parents to keep our children, our seniors, our graduating seniors, safe on graduation night, which is statistically the most dangerous night of a teenager's life. So in order to keep them all safe, we throw an all-night huge party. We invite you all to come and volunteer. And we have lots of amusements for them. We keep them fed. We have a DJ. There are games, there are casino games and carnival games. And just kind of everything that they could kind of enjoy all evening. And then in the end of the evening, or at about 3 o'clock in the morning, they have a big bonfire. They watch their senior film, put together by some of the kids in the film class. And then we give them their diplomas and they go off into their future, safe and sound. So we appreciate the support of the city council. Our costs have gone up dramatically post-COVID, and so the $10,000 will go a long way to making sure that we keep our children safe.
Thank you, Ms. Faris, and good to see you. School board member Jennifer Smith.
Thank you so much. I just came from the new district office. I invite you all to come and take a tour in about a month. I think we'll all be set up.
Thank you both.
I have two minutes? Oh, so no, I'd really like to, really, I have so much appreciation for the collaborative efforts of the city and the school district. Nicole did such a good job of describing the event, and I think you all know very much about it. We're going to try and have more of an open house to bring in adults in the community so they can see what we do and build and keep building the event and make sure that the community knows. And I really do, I just, I love that the new district office is so close to City Hall, so we can be even more collaborative. And I do invite you to come and take a tour. What's the address? Such a good question.
I think it's 1717 4th Street, right?
Yeah, it is 1717 4th Street, yes. So right next to the hotel. So.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
All right, take care. Thanks so much.
All right, that closes the public comment. Am I correct, Ms. Newsom?
Yes, it does.
All right. So we will move on to item 10, ordinances.
In accordance with Charter, Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present dissent. Item 10A, second reading and adoption of an interim zoning ordinance eliminating prohibition of certain restaurants and establishments with frontage on the 3rd Street Promenade.
This is the second reading, so there's no staff report or public comment. Is there a motion?
I move.
Moved by Brock, seconded by Negrete. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Item 10B, introduction and adoption of an emergency interim zoning ordinance to confirm the applicability of certain zoning and health and safety regulations to wireless facilities subject to Santa Monica Municipal Code, Chapter 9.32, personal wireless service facilities.
All right, and for those of you who were here before we went into public comment, I will be recusing myself as I work for AT&amp;T. And while this particular item doesn't directly affect AT&amp;T, I have a established practice of whenever telecommunications issues come before the council, I recuse myself. And so I will be turning the chair over to Mayor Protem Negrete.
It's a long, long walk.
And she's out.
Thank you.
Good morning, or good evening. Been a long day. Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council. My name is Tony Kim, and I'm a principal planner with the city planning division. It's been over three years since I've been in these chambers for a hearing, and I'm feeling all the emotions right now. Before you tonight is an emergency interim zoning ordinance to clarify existing land use regulations related to wireless telecommunications facilities and to provide clear guidance on the applicable permitting requirements and procedures. The city's regulation of wireless facilities would not change as a result of this IZO. With us tonight is the esteemed Dr. Jonathan Kramer with Telecom Law Firm to make the presentation and be available for any questions you may have.
Esteemed, I'm not so sure, but I'm Jonathan Kramer. I am an attorney and a telecommunications engineer. I've had the privilege of working for the city in various capacities, consulting on telecommunications, law issues, and I'm a Willmont resident. Short presentation tonight. The ordinance that is before you, the interim ordinance, is basically to take care of what is described as a loophole or a misunderstanding in readings of the city's code. So that's why it's a small item, but it's an important item. Now, before I get into it, well, let me get into it. Use this one. Yeah, this will work. So what we're talking about tonight is a small area of preemption in federal law. It's referred to as the over-the-air-receiving devices rule. It's a federal title, that's why it's really weird. And we abbreviate that as, or we talk about it as OTARD. And the OTARD rules basically say, Congress has said that local governments, this is not an area for us to regulate. And the OTARD rules, and I'll get into what they are graphically in a moment, really exempt a certain class of antennas from our purview. They don't exempt them from safety codes, but they exempt them from a planning process. So we're bringing this item tonight to resolve a potential misunderstanding in how the code applies and clarifying it. So it's a small item, but it has an important impact, because this is the type of thing that can come back as more and more broadband systems are deployed in the city. So what are OTARD antennas? Well, they can look like almost anything, TV antennas, the one on the far left. The three in the center are actually wireless internet antennas. They're essentially Wi-Fi antennas. And then the antenna over in the far right is a traditional dish-type of satellite antenna. These are all antennas that the FCC says we can only very, very, very minimally regulate. And that's what we're trying to do, is to clarify the code. And what are not OTARD antennas? Cell towers, broadcast towers, commercial 2-way radios. Those are outside of what we're doing tonight. Those are not affected by what we're bringing to you tonight. So essentially, again, a very narrow range of what we're asking you to look at. The FCC rules don't prohibit us from applying generally nondiscriminatory safety codes. So we're still in the safety code business. We still can protect historic zones, but we can do this only in a way that is basically the least burdensome to accomplish those tasks. And that's what the ordinance before you tonight does. But what the FCC does prohibit, and this is directly from the applicable FCC code, is, and I'm going to read it just for clarity, "Any regulation, including but not limited to any state or local law regulation, including zoning, land use, or building regulations, or even private, any private covenant, contract provision, lease provision, homeowners' association rule, or similar restriction on property within the exclusive use or control of the antenna user, where the user has a direct or indirect ownership or leasehold." Look, I'm going to torture you if I finish to the end, but the bottom line is the FCC says, basically, this is an area of hands-off for us, the most important, because we're the local law and regulation authority. So tonight's ordinance, what are we doing? We're making some very minor but necessary immediate changes to the municipal code. We're clarifying that OTARD antennas are subject only to construction permits, and that's where we pick up the safety codes. The tonight's ordinance, it meets the requirements of the FCC's preemptive rules. Basically, we are aligning our code to come into compliance with federal regulations. And we're clarifying the land use planning table, which is really the guts of what we're requesting tonight. And then we're setting the stage to bring this back through the normal process, which would go through the Planning Commission and back to the city council. In fact, I think the first action of the Planning Commission is going to be tomorrow night. And that's it. That's what we're asking you to do. A lot of pages in the staff report, I know, but the real changes are in the table itself. I think with that, I'm certainly happy to answer questions, and I'll pull Tony back, the esteemed Tony Kim, back up here for any additional questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? What have you guys left out?
Thank you.
So seeing no questions, I'll call for a motion to adopt the finding of categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15303.
I'll move.
Wasn't done, but okay. New construction or conversion of small structures of the SEQA guidelines. So moved by Brock?
Second.
Seconded by Terosus. Can we take a roll call vote?
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
So that passes six to zero? Is that how we say that?
Yes.
Did I do go, okay?
Yes. And there's actually one more motion.
Oh, yes.
Emergency interim zoning ordinance, is that?
So I'll call for a motion to introduce and adopt an IZO interim zoning ordinance, reading by the title only and waiving further reading thereof, to confirm the applicability of certain zoning and health and safety regulations to wireless facilities subject to Santa Monica Municipal Code, Chapter 9.32, personal wireless service facilities. Do we have a maker in a second?
I'll move.
Moved by Brock, seconded by Parr. Roll call vote?
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
That passes six to zero? And we can call back in, Mayor Davis?
He's coming.
Okay.
As she's walking up, I'll call the next item. Item 10C, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending the text of the zoning ordinance to establish an outdoor space program to allow outdoor commercial activity on privately-owned properly property and other minor amendments related to emergency response and economic recovery, sorry, including extension of certain permit timeframes, adoption of resolution establishing fees for permits subject to outdoor space program.
All right, thank you. I'm back. Let's go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and city council members. Steve Muzakami and also joined here with Carrie Fekui. And we're here from the city planning division. So the next item on the agenda is an establishment of a permanent outdoor space program located on private property. So as the council is familiar with, the city established the temporary outdoor use program for businesses. This was soon after the start of the pandemic, back in May in 2020. Under this initial program, businesses were granted permits to use sidewalks, on-street parking spaces for parklets, portions of the Santa Monica Pier, as well as the 3rd Street Promenade, and also outdoor space on private property for commercial activities. The program has supported a variety of businesses, including restaurants, fitness uses, personal services, as well as retail, on both public areas as well as within private surface parking lots. The temporary outdoor space program is currently grouped together at the moment with other recovery provisions under IZO that is set to expire on June 30 of this year. In addition to the new program, staff proposes to codify the two-year permit timeframe extension provided during the pandemic that was recently expired in December 2022, that would essentially memorialize the timeframes into the zoning code, and this would be for future reference. So the temporary program has been critical in supporting businesses during the pandemic, and its overall success provides us with a new perspective of how the city's approach to commercial use of outdoor space moving forward. This opportunity to use outdoor space on private property serves many of our businesses who are not eligible to have a parklet in front of their business, particularly on commercial streets that have higher traffic volumes and speeds, such as Pico and Most of Volshire Boulevard, for example. Currently, we have 94 permits issued under the program, with about 37 or so of them active, primarily used for outdoor dining. The permanent program would allow existing businesses to renew their existing permits and basically retain their existing outdoor spaces as it's been permitted under the temporary program. And these existing businesses would not be subject to the new program standards and requirements. So the new program continues to provide flexibility also to new applicants, but includes a few additional operational requirements to ensure that new outdoor spaces are compatible with its surroundings. So on January 25, the Planning Commission recommended that council adopt the proposed program and also codify the two-year permit extension into the zoning code. The commission acknowledged the success of the city's temporary outdoor space program, its emergency orders, and its interim zoning provisions supportive of economic recovery, and also expressed the importance of continuing to support our Santa Monica businesses following the pandemic through this particular program. The commission recommended program flexibility to allow businesses to essentially right-size these outdoor spaces based on their needs. The commission specifically recommended changes to two draft provisions of the program related to maximum size of outdoor space, as well as a limitation on the number of these existing parking spaces within a lot that can be converted to these outdoor spaces. Now, staff had initially proposed a maximum size of 1,000 square feet and up to 50% conversion of existing spaces. However, the Planning Commission recommended no size and no conversion restrictions, provided that the outdoor spaces comply with building and fire codes, as well as circulation standards to ensure the safety and overall circulation within these existing parking lots. Now, these recommendations by the Planning Commission are consistent with the current temporary program, which has no size and no parking conversion limitations. This would allow staff to be able to work with applicants on establishing these outdoor spaces that work for both the business as well as the city. And staff is supportive of these changes, as both staff and the Planning Commission are now aligned on the permanent program that is before the city council this evening. So next up, Carrie will be going over the business outreach, our site surveys, and our coordination efforts that essentially helped inform the framework of this program. And Carrie will also be taking us through the program standards, as well as next steps for existing permit holders.
Great, thank you. So as Steve said, I'll briefly go through the outreach that was done between the temporary and the establishment of the permanent program. So the first thing we did, to get a good sense of how these temporary spaces are still being used, how many are still active, and what they exactly look like, we took a site visit out to all 94 of the temporary permit addresses and identified that there are approximately about 35 or so of those still in operation, based off of existing seats outside, barriers in place, or people actually using them. So I provided some photos here just to give you an idea of what people are putting out in their private spaces. So here on Berkeley, you can see it's pretty informal, just handful of tables and benches and some lighting on private property in between commercial tenant spaces. And then up on Montana, you can see more of a structured outdoor space used for a salon in a parking lot. And on Pico here, a much more informal temporary pop-up tent with temporary tables and a very small parking lot that still has access to an ADA parking space. And then further on Pico, at Lunetta, you can see here a pretty large outdoor dining area across the commercial tenant space from an alley. And on Montana, as well, on the northern end of this parcel adjacent to a residential is a cluster of seating as well. So after we did that, we started to do some survey outreach to really kind of refine how these spaces were being used, how successful they were, what businesses prioritize, and it was to give us a sense of how to shape the standards for the permanent program. So we sent these out to 94 of the permit holders, got 24 responses. We asked questions like, how is this space being used? And as Steve mentioned, and as you can see here, majority are restaurant or food serving. We asked how often, and you can see pretty much all of them use it at least once a week, with almost 70% of them using it daily. We asked what the size of the space is, and to kind of get it, what Steve was saying, with the size flexibility, it's a full range of anywhere from 300 to 1,600 square feet, which is a range of, you know, about 2 to 10 or more parking spaces that were taken. But a slight majority of all of those, you can see, were in the range of about 1,000 or greater. We also asked what amenities people would be interested in seeing to be allowed in the new program. A lot hinted at planter boxes to enclose these outdoor spaces, more temporary floor coverings, and at the same time, also were interested in permanent canopies or other sunshade devices as opposed to the temporary pop-up tents that we see. We asked an open-ended question, just to get general feedback on what people thought of the program. It was largely all positive, said it made their businesses really survive during the pandemic, it was a better use in off-street parking, they get requests from the customers to sit out there all the time. And also to kind of go back to the sizing, so we asked what size they currently exist at and what they would desire. You can see how it's broken down amongst the different size ranges and how they were all pretty happy with what they self-selected for the size of their outdoor space. So after that, we started coordinating internally with different city divisions, just to get a sense of what issues they saw arise during the temporary program, how they want to shape their involvement in the review of these new programs coming in under the permanent program. So we met with Building and Safety, Mobility, Resource Recovery and Recycling, and Economic Development. When we met with Building and Safety, they largely said they want their involvement to remain consistent moving forward with plan review against building code, permit issuance for any structural or electrical work. We want to note that the standards in the program that we'll be putting in administrative guidelines or regulations are really based off the bare minimum requirements to issue permit under Building and Safety and Life and Safety, Fire Safety as well. So that includes things like ADA access, barriers, building permits, and that's really, so when we put those in the administrative guidelines, it'll provide businesses with the option to take more of a minimal design approach that would be compliant with the building permit thresholds and make it as easy of a process for them as possible. We also met with Mobility. They said they heard no explicit issues or complaints related to parking, circulation, or loading during the temporary program. So the ordinance moving forward and the administrative regulations that were developed in coordination with Mobility will address just that. So they would like to see a requirement for a parking and loading operations plan only if the outdoor space would impact any potential loading areas. Similar to that, if staff or customers have to cross a public right-of-way, like an alley, to get to the outdoor space, staff would not outright prohibit that, but would like to work with applicant to make sure that they come up with a safe way to make that happen. In addition to that, they want to prohibit blocking or removing curb cuts if an outdoor space is only taking up part of a parking lot, the rest of the parking lot's open, they want to make sure whatever is being accessed is done safely and to the standards for mobility. And on the other side of that, if an outdoor space takes up an excessive curb cut, they want to see that closed off. When we met with RRR, they also had no explicit issues or complaints about trash and recycling, pickup. They just want to continue their involvement to continue reviewing to make sure that there is clearance, driveway visibility, and access to refuse storage areas. And Economic Development, so they're involved largely with this, the temporary program. Initially, when that started, they heard a lot of interest from fitness operators who wanted to operate solely outside on underutilized surface parking lots with any, without any association with an existing use on the site. At this time, staff does not recommend including this in the program for a couple of reasons. One, we have not heard, as well as with Economic Development, has not heard any additional interest from fitness operators, anyone or any other use about this type of complete outdoor use on a parking lot. We also would see this as potentially having noise or other impacts that would be generated when a business operates only outside. And we also saw it as an unfair advantage for other businesses that are required to operate out of a leased commercial tenant space. So the program that is proposed tonight has a lot of the same goals from the temporary program and the economic recovery efforts that happened over the last few years. It's to promote economic development and business retention, flexibility and ease for businesses, ensure fire, life, and safety issues are addressed, and to mitigate impacts to the site and to the surrounding land uses. So we did this by proposing some changes from the temporary program as it moves to the permanent. Here you can see for the land use, we did some slight updating to this, and the temporary program is permitted in commercial zones located on the same or adjacent parcel, and the uses that were allowed are really based off the underlying use, except for auto and liquor store uses. In the permanent program, we're carrying all that forward, except for clarifying that if a business is located in a commercial zone with a residential lot adjacent to it, they can provide the outdoor space there as well. So that was just adding some specificity in there. And on top of that, we also prohibited animal care uses, which we saw would be generating some nuisance to surrounding land uses. Additionally, for floor area and parking, it's proposed that these outdoor spaces will not be considered floor area, an expansion of use, or require additional parking. That's to help businesses propose these spaces without running into any issue of exceeding their allowable FAR. Obviously, if they're going to propose in a parking lot, we don't want to have them be required to provide more parking for the parking they're taking. And also on top of that, we are proposing that legal nonconforming uses can also participate in this program and not count as an expansion of a legal nonconforming use. So now in the code, if a use is existing in an area where it's not allowed to, they are not allowed to expand in that space, so it would prohibit them from participating. We're allowing this for, say, if there's a restaurant that's in an operation in an industrial zone, we don't want to unfairly prohibit them from participating. And we want to note that they'll still be held to all the other regulations, so that would reduce any kind of impact that they would have. As Steve mentioned, conversion of parking and allowable size, there's no change proposed from the temporary program, which did not limit either of those factors. This was based off the Planning Commission's recommendation, so no cap on size and no maximum percentage of parking spaces to be converted. On top of what Steve mentioned earlier, this also would help to allow businesses that are, say, in a multi-tenant commercial building to fairly take advantage of this program. Locational requirements, so we added a new standard here that would require a 15-foot setback from a property line that abuts residential use or residential zone. In the temporary program, there was no locational requirements, it could have really been located anywhere. So we're putting this in place, so say there's a parking lot abutting residential, it'll really encourage them to put it closer to the commercial use as opposed to across the drive aisle, across parking, to closer to a residential, more sensitive use. So for the amenities, such as decks, canopies, structures, heaters, we did some changes where in the temporary program, they could really put out whatever would work for them at the time, a lot of temporary canopies. These all had to comply with fire code regulations, but in the permanent program, we're carrying all that forward, but we're going to prohibit the use of these temporary tents and canopies. Few reasons for that. Building and Safety expressed concerns about wind load with these temporary tents that aren't tied down or fixed to anything. In addition to that, it'll also help and encourage businesses to invest in these permanent materials and better quality design for these outdoor spaces that, once they receive, they can have indefinitely. As for hours of operation, again, in the temporary program, there were no limits on when these outdoor spaces could be used, it was really based off of how the current businesses were operating. In the permanent program, though, we are putting restrictions on restaurants and fitness and training. For restaurants, it's 8 to 11, fitness at 7 to 7. We want to note if any of these uses that fall within this category had to go for a special entitlement or permit that already restricted their hours, either more or less than what's established here, that that entitlement would prevail. These are really just a baseline if it's a new business without any kind of restriction or conditions on their use. As for alcohol permits, no change here. Restaurants that want to serve alcohol will have to go to the city and to the ABC to obtain all required alcohol permits. Administrative regulations, as we mentioned, these will hold a lot of the more technical standards related to building and fire code, mobility clearances, what goes into a parking loading operations plan, how to design for these decks to get permits, and also parking lot circulation, things to look out for. So these will all be developed in conjunction with the city divisions mentioned earlier that we've been working with. Santa Monica Pier, just want to briefly mention that the pier is exempt from the standards listed here of max size, location, hours of operation, conversion of parking spaces. That's all really decided at the discretion of the pier. And again, as mentioned earlier, existing nonconforming uses will be permitted to participate in this program and are still held to all of the other program standards developed in the permanent program. So the application process, so what's required for these existing permit holders to transition into the new permanent program? So this new program for the transition period will expire March 31st, 2024, so it gives about a year for applicants to submit their application, for staff to review and send out the approvals of these sites. The applications will be due by October 31st, 2023, as proposed. That gives about six months for them to get it in. The plans will really reflect what is permitted there now from the temporary program, and as Steve mentioned, these existing permit holders are exempt from the new standards. If they have something that's existing now that was approved under the temporary program that does not comply with the standards, we'll just see that as nonconforming, and they'll be able to continue using it, as long as they're applying other permits at the times noted here. We also want to note, we know that the wastewater fees can be pretty prohibitive for restaurants that are looking to add more seats, so similar to the parklet program, we're launching a, we're proposing a three-year payment plan for the restaurants that are in this permit renewal process. As for new applicants, they're subject to a zoning conformance review, all the application fees, and all of the standards set in the program requirements. And we know it's a lot of information for these businesses that are very busy, so we want to do as much as we can for these temporary participants to transition to the permanent. So we came up with this outreach plan to go door-to-door to all the 90-something businesses, make sure they're aware that this new permanent program's coming up, make sure they're aware of all the timelines and the application process. We have a lot of their contact information that we can follow up on from their applications, and we'll provide them with ours as well. And also to do more of a global push for outreach about, you know, new businesses that weren't in the temporary that want to participate in the new program, we'll work with the comms team to do a coordinated digital outreach effort, and also with Economic Development Divisions, Business Improvement Districts, and the Chamber of Commerce. And with that, I'll pass it back to Steve to go over the zoning ordinance implementation.
Thanks, Carrie. So the zoning ordinance would be amended to include a new section, which would be titled "The Outdoor Commercial Uses on Private Property." The following sections on this list in the zoning ordinance would also be amended just to provide consistency with the program allowances, which include floor area, floor area ratio sections, parking, and illegal nonconforming uses. So also, as mentioned, the subject, Temporary Outdoor Space Program, is currently grouped together with other provisions under IZO 2724 that are set to expire on June 30th, as we are no longer in a state of emergency in terms of the pandemic. In this discussion, the council should focus on whether the proposed program provides adequate flexibility in support of business retention and new businesses, whether the program standards are adequate in ensuring neighborhood compatibility, as well as any other recommendations the council may have for some consideration. So staff recommends that the council adopt the proposed outdoor space program and related zoning amendments, including memorializing the two-year permit extension. That concludes staff's report, and both Carrie and I are available for any questions.
All right, so we're doing questions only, folks. I have Mayor Potem Negrete in the queue.
Thank you. I have a question about the ABC, the alcohol licensing. They have to apply separately, even though if their restaurant already has the appropriate alcohol licenses and permits, they have to apply separate for the outdoor portion?
No, if they, for businesses that have existing permits, many of our existing permit holders already have their alcohol permits, and they've already have them authorized through the ABC. If, for example, a new business comes in and they need alcohol service, then they'll have to get the alcohol permits from the city as well as the ABC to be able to get their floor plans in, and then we would, through the alcohol permit, be able to know what seats are in the inside as well as the outside. So that would cover new businesses.
I just want to be clear, because I got emails and people calling about that it's cumbersome and that the process is awful, and they already have, I just want to understand that really crystal clear, that if they already have the necessary licenses to sell alcohol indoors at their establishment, adding the outdoor on private property, like we're talking about right now, there is no additional?
Well, yeah, in those examples, if we do have existing floor plans that were a part of that original alcohol permit, what we would do for our existing permit holders is kind of amend their existing alcohol permits in terms of just expanded number of seats. So what we would do is, every time we issue an alcohol permit, whether it be administrative or through a conditional use permit, there's a set of plans that are approved based on their restaurants and seating, seat counts. So we would then just go to their original files and amend with the new floor plans they would be providing with us. So it would be something more of a streamlined process at that point.
So it is streamlined, it's not. And then the other question was, where there are places where there's, this was also, came up as a concern, percentage of sales. Some of the establishments, depending on where they're located, give, you know, if it's on city property, they're paying percentage of sales, and they're paying the per square foot, I guess, rental, right? For example, on the pier. So is that, is that how that's working? They're paying both percentage of sales and then the additional per square foot to be outside?
Well, for this program, since all of our outdoor space is on privately-owned property, there are no lease agreements between the city and these vendors. So it's a little bit different from the parklets program, where we are actually leasing public land and our sidewalks and our parklets for leasing agreements. So this is really just between the property owner and a business to be able to get their open space, and there isn't anything that we're charging based on square footage.
At the pier, though, aren't they using, aren't some of the restaurants using additional space in the back?
They could be, yeah. I mean, if it's...
This doesn't apply to public property.
Okay.
This is private.
Okay, sorry. And then, hours of operation, I just wanted to also go back and understand that you, so it's limited from, because of the outdoor noise, I presume, right? Okay, but then the hours of operation inside continue, so they just have to shut down that outdoor part?
That's correct.
That, again, we're only, we're not talking about the pier, we're talking about these other places.
That's right.
And then lastly, because I was the one that had had the discussion around underutilized parking lots and creating alternative options, and I know it gets tricky, because depending on where the parking lot is, there could be ordinance rules around noise and things like that. Can you go back to that? I just wanted to clarify what you're saying there. We're moving, we're, we're not considering modifying anything to make the use of underutilized parking lots available to businesses that would comply within any noise, you know, whatever, if it's an outdoor dog place or animal place or workout?
Well, we can find it, yeah. So as a part of this program, and like you said, we're, during the pandemic, we did have some inquiries about... some inquiries about trying to see if we can utilize some of these vacant parking spaces that are owned privately owned, but then they're just not being utilized. And so through this program, we did do a little bit of analysis to see what that might look like in terms of maybe is there specific zones or areas that might be able to kind of accommodate something of this nature. Towards the end, we weren't really getting a lot of demand in terms of workout. I think initially, once the pandemic started, there was probably a lot more. But then we also have different areas where workout can happen. So we can have workout in the parks and in the beach areas through permits. So there's different ways other than just private indoor space that we can achieve some outdoor fitness. And so at this time, based on the limited demand, and, you know, we're working with our economic development team just to make sure that there isn't still a push for to be able to use these parking lots. So at this point, we're not moving forward with the program like that, but if in the future that we start to get that demand about workout space, perhaps maybe we can take a look at it. But I think based on just parts of the economic recovery, how businesses are now able to utilize their indoor space, I think the use of indoors and outdoors is satisfying most of our businesses there.
Yeah, and it's not just for workout, there was other businesses too. And I would just say that there might not be a demand now, because there was a demand, and then they were told at multiple sites that you can't convert it. So I still think we should be looking at underutilized parking lots and how we can maybe, it doesn't have to just be for outdoor workouts, there's other opportunities, but thank you.
All right, Councilmember Terosus.
Hi, thank you so much. So a few quick questions just related to some of the feedback I've received from folks in the community. I'm sure you've also seen some of the articles that have been written on our outdoor dining program, in the news, et cetera. I understand that we're taking a lot of care here. But in terms of the outreach going door-to-door, we know that businesses are, especially small businesses, are busy, they don't necessarily know what's going on here at the city council, they're not watching the meetings. Are you actually going door-to-door to all of the current applicants? And then in terms of your outreach strategy going forward, I've found that in doing business outreach, door-to-door is actually the most effective, like direct canvassing is most effective. Are you going to plan to do that to try to promote the program to new businesses? Do you have the capacity to do that?
Yeah, I think just in terms of initially, once, when we hit adoption, our main focus is really going to be on our existing permit holders, just to make sure that they're aware of the program, their next steps in terms of just getting their permanent program. So we actually have all of that data in terms of being able to contact them, and then in terms of, I think, the program moving forward to be able to kind of advertise the program as we, you know, kind of get beyond our existing permit holders, then I think Carrie can kind of speak to that a little bit, but I think that's the intent of the...
I would just offer, like, can we engage our business associations? I would be absolutely happy to go with you all. I've done this for my day job, I think it's very effective, like, would you want our help? We're happy to do it.
Yeah, I think, you know, we have a lot of good partners, I think, with economic development and the business improvement district managers, you know, that have a really good tie with the business communities and business corridors. So I think to do the really large, citywide kind of push for this with new businesses will really rely on them for their support with the bid meetings they have and, you know, help us push the word out. But as Steve said, yeah, the door-to-door, I think, you know, we did that when we did the site visits, or we'd be able to do it again and just really engage them and make sure that these temporary, you know, users are kind of the priority for the next few months, to make sure they hit those timelines and get their applications in.
Okay, and then in terms of what council, Mayor Protem Negrete mentioned, have we set up, is economic development providing one-on-one technical assistance, like a concierge service to actually walk people through this process if they're having trouble? Can we do that?
Yeah, so I think, especially when we move from the temporary to permanent, you know, there are a lot of points where, you know, these sites are also unique, what space they're proposing, the way their parking's laid out, we try to build in the flexibility so if they don't exactly meet every single standard that they can, you know, work with staff in their review of the application to get that done. I think it'll be similar to a lot of our other entitlement processes where there is back and forth with staff before we issue the approval and they can go for the building permit.
Yeah, I would just hope that we can offer that, like, white glove service to folks, because I think people have been through a lot and we've heard, you know, comments on the process. And on the 43332 that we are charging folks, is there a fee waiver program for folks who cannot afford that?
Well, I think for the, our existing permit holders, that fee will be waived because they're already in the program. And so we set that dollar amount pretty low, based on kind of the amount of time the staff will be working with applicants, but that would be a fee that would apply to new applicants.
And I understand we have eliminated all personal guarantees as a requirement? City Attorney Sloan? I just wanted to make sure that we have eliminated all, or maybe David Martin can answer, that they're, just, it's not, okay, I just want to make sure we've eliminated all personal guarantees from any of...
Yeah, this is private property.
Okay, got it. And then finally, in terms of the folks who have CUPs to serve alcohol, do we have anything on private property if a CUP has lapsed, if a business is closed during the pandemic to have that CUP kind of grandfathered in over a certain period of time?
Yeah, so our recent economic development, I'm sorry, recovery interim zoning ordinances that are now codified allows for, before it used to be a little bit more restrictive in terms of when a business closed, it would be like closed for more than 12 months, then the, a new restaurant would have to get their planning entitlements. So we made that change in October last year, so it does provide flexibility for those existing restaurants. If they're, if they're closed for more than 12 months, a new restaurant operator can get in without having to get their new planning entitlement.
Great, that is really, I'm glad to hear that. I think that's really important, especially for economic recovery. Those are all my questions. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. This is an enormous amount of work, really appreciate it, really excited.
Councilmember Brock? And can I ask you, when you're finished asking questions, can you take yourselves out of the queue? Because I can't do it with the technical difficulties we're having.
I have a few questions. First, when is the residential noise cutoff? At what time do residents, that is, the noise of the neighborhood, can a resident call and say, hey, someone's having a party next door? Is that 10:00 or 11:00?
I don't know if there's, like, citywide, there's, we just have the noise ordinance that's in place based on how loud something could be in continuous operation. So for example, certain times of the day for residential districts, it's a certain decibel level for continuous time.
So there's no nighttime? I thought there was some sort of nighttime, like after 10:00 PM or after 11:00 PM? And Santa Monica PD is saying, no, there is no cutoff? Okay.
Yeah, so for our program for restaurants, operators, it would be 11:00.
And that was my reason for asking, because I was concerned if an outdoor restaurant was next to a residential area, that their noise dissipate and not go on till 11:00 or midnight. I saw 11:00, but I was worried that for some neighborhoods, that might be considered excessive. I know this is for restaurants, I'm focusing on a restaurant bar event house on Main Street, and it seems that they've had amplified music numerous times throughout the year. They're next to the Kraft History Museum, and I am concerned, because I've had residents call over and over again from the Santa Monica shores and say, and I've been by there, because residents have called me, they've had amplified music 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, and does this cover an establishment like that, the Victorian?
So, so for any existing businesses that have their current entitlements in place, that could very well have outdoor seating area that has later hours. So let's say for...
But are they allowed to have amplified music outside?
Depends on if there is a specific condition of approval.
Yeah, because I noticed here, we're making sure that you can only be acoustic in your outdoor restaurants, and so I'm concerned, especially there, because we've had complaints from the motel across the street on the east side of the Victorian, and on the west side had numerous complaints from the Santa Monica shores. The sound hits their building, vibrates, comes back. And so my question is, this, does this cover anything like that facility?
Yeah, so this, this program specifically prohibits the use of amplified noise on the outside. That includes televisions or speakers or anything of that nature. So anything new under this program would be prohibited from using.
But if it's existing, it doesn't count. You just said new.
Right, covered under this program, right. But normally, you know, amplified music is something that is not, is not loud citywide. Our conditional use permits, if there's an alcohol conditional use permit on there, there's probably some conditions that are connected to that.
Okay. Yeah, because that's bothered me for a long time, but that would not be covered. And is there any way, maybe this is for our city attorney, is there any way we can backtrack on something like that and change their cup if they continue to have outdoor amplified music?
Well, here, we're only talking about this program.
Right.
If you're asking generally, we could look at modifying CUPs, but that's an extended, difficult process, if it was allowed specifically under their CUP.
But solving it for any new...
You may just want to also remind people that the Victorian's on public property, so it's not covered by this at all in any of it.
Right, it's on our land.
Right, so what we're talking about tonight, I just want to be careful we're not wandering off into Brown Act territory, because what's before us is uses on private property.
Right. And then I have a couple of questions on the pier part of the ordinance. If we can look at page 25, I think, there were a couple other things there, and on the bottom, administrative regulations. And I was curious, we're giving the staff a free hand on administrative regulations, are we also gonna, is the staff gonna keep track of what actions they take in this regard and hopefully not make the regulations overly cumbersome?
Yeah, so the, that part of the staff, so the administrative regulations are intended to, we would have more of the technical kind of code requirements. I'll use an example of like building safety thresholds for a building permit, for example. The current program right now has certain size limitations and thresholds before, and an applicant has to come in and get a building permit for some work, a deck, and so, or structures that are, that are in height. And so that would be the place where we kind of put those more technical code requirements. The fire department also has some tenting requirements when a tent permit is required, and of course during the winter when businesses are going to apply for just the temporary tents just to keep warmth out there, that's where those regulations will also live. So the intent of that, that grouping is to be as minimal as possible, though, and it's really kind of just to enforce fire life safety issues.
Okay. And, and I know this was a question a couple of years ago, I've mentioned it a couple of times, even on the fire department, which you don't control, the heater and safety fees, I hope they'll be kept reasonable. How late will the pier, are we planning the pier being open during the summer? Is it staying at 10:00, or are we expanding till midnight, or do we have any idea?
We're right now engaged in those conversations with the pier. They've reached out to us to engage in conversations about potentially expanding hours, so we're in dialogue with them about that right now.
Okay, because if you're a pier bar or pier business, the outdoor 11:00 may not necessarily have to be a hard, fast rule, because if the pier's open till midnight or 1:00, you'd want to stop alcohol sales, obviously, half hour, 45 minutes before the pier would close. But does it have to be hard, fast on the pier?
For the Santa Monica pier, where actually the ordinance would not subject them to kind of the hours of operations, the pier is going to be a lot more flexible because of its location.
No residences, anything like that.
So there won't be, there'd be very few limitations on the pier.
I'm sorry, repeat the line?
Very few limitations on the pier.
Okay, all right, just again for safety. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dela Torre.
Want to really thank you for this report, and also just for the approach that staff took, to be flexible, to really just focus on core safety issues, you know, and, and I think that's just the right approach that we need right now. So really thank you for taking that approach, that's a well-thought-out approach. The, I had, the main concerns I had were around noise, which Councilmember Brock brought up, so I, I know that, you know, we, we should definitely be sensitive, especially, and you have it in your report, you know, where there's residential zones, we want to be very protective, you know, of that. But there was a question that I had regarding the use of television and screens for the outdoor areas. I think, I think it could, it could definitely be a great opportunity, you know, for, you know, there's the Super Bowl game, for example, or a fight comes up, you know, people want to, a lot of times it's too crowded in the indoor space, if they can have the indoor and outdoor going on, it's probably advantageous, you know, for businesses. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that, sort of, I don't know if, you all probably debated it a little bit, what were the pros and cons of that? And I wanted to hear a little bit about that, if you have that sort of information, because I'm inclined to support, you know, allowing the, you know, the televisions and the screens for special events, you know? And I don't know if you all talked about that, and if you did, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question, because that was very much a part of the noise kind of discussions that we're having. And I think what we, through some experience, through just the pandemic, I think the, because there's no size limitation on the outdoors, some of these spaces could get fairly crowded in terms of that. We have had some operators that did have televisions out there for football games, and we did receive some noise complaints throughout. Thursday's a popular day now, Mondays as well, Sundays for football. And so the concern would be, could it be a slippery slope in terms of, you know, one operation that has a minimal size, but they have, you know, kind of a modest television versus the one that kind of goes above and beyond maybe what would be reasonable, I think, close to our neighborhood? So we did have those conversations, there's always kind of discussions about, you know, special times, but it, something of an ordinance is very hard to kind of keep track of, you know, special events if you were, as you were. So we did think about that, but I think just in terms of ease of implementation and just making sure that if we are going to allow for these outdoor spaces to really kind of be out there and promote them, that we want to be able to control kind of the overall noise for the residents.
Okay, great, so that would be, it would be a consideration, but I, I guess, are we, are we, we will allow it and sort of on a case-by-case basis, or right now, there's no?
Yeah, our staff would recommend not to allow it.
Okay, so right now, not do that, see how it goes? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schwick.
Hi, and thank you again. I'll reiterate, I'm excited that we're making this program permanent and keeping it flexible. To go back to some questions from Councilmember Negrete, when it came to, it was a part of the presentation that I missed understanding completely that had to do with underutilized lots, were there, were there businesses that sought interest in using a lot that wasn't the business itself? Was there something to that effect that you were talking about?
Yeah, just to provide some background, if you can picture the private lot, that's really just for pay, pay, pay parking lots, but it's privately owned, there are some inquiries about some of those underutilized parking lots to be able to, just see if a fitness group can just jump in there throughout the day, operate, and, and then, you know, without being within kind of a fully enclosed building, because there are no buildings on those properties. And so that was kind of the inquiries that we're getting early on during the pandemic.
I see, and, and the recommendation is, is to prohibit such uses, not just for fitness, but any sort of contract for outdoor commercial use on an underutilized privately owned lot?
Yeah, at this time, you know, the zoning code has always been structured in a way where all of our businesses are within fully enclosed buildings, and that's just based on compatibilities of uses. As Carrie had mentioned in the presentation, allowing for possibly this option could have some, some concerns with our, even just our existing businesses that are paying rents for to be in the indoors, and whether or not that would be kind of a concern competitive-wise. wise, to be able to kind of lease cheaper areas, but then also to have a business exclusively out in the parking lots. You can kind of imagine that, as it's ongoing, the adjacent uses that can be, kind of be against those uses, that could be, create some kind of noise issues. So those are kind of our initial concerns, and because the demand, we really don't have the demand at the moment, we chose not to include it in this ordinance.
I see what you're, I see what you're saying. I do wonder whether, you know, in an uncertain environment where we've had many waves of this particular pandemic, and we may see other strains of this or anything else in the future, we might be precluding opportunities, but I also don't know exactly if it's a privately owned lot that seeks to lease to some other entity, why we would need to be so heavily involved, but that's a policy question, I know. Just one more question, the 15-foot setback, so there were pictures you showed us of some outdoor dining that was, say, on the opposite side of the parking lot or something, so that would be no longer conforming use, are they grandfathered in or not, or?
For this example, since the former restaurant are, they are one of our existing permit holders, their setup would turn kind of nonconforming, so they're able to keep that, they just wouldn't be able to expand upon it. But in the future, for example, if another business wanted to propose it, they'd be 15 feet from that common property line, and I think what we're trying to do is really try to push these outdoor spaces on that interior side, which is a little bit along the backside of the buildings. In this example, this can be something of a typical driveway, where it's just one drive while down, and so, if an application was to come in and they wanted to place it where this restaurant is, we would work with them to try to get it on the other side, because we do have this 15-foot setback.
But you, you would still be practical, you would imagine, in most of these spaces, just on the other side, for instance?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Negrete.
I just wanted to clarify the wastewater payment structure. Is it matching exactly what we did, where it's 20% due upfront to LA City, a three-year plan for the fees due to Santa Monica, but is there that two-year option to extend with financial hardship?
Yeah, and I think that's the same approach that we're going to take with this program as we did with the Parklets program.
Do we think that, or we're taking that same approach?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay. And then just, I don't know if when's the appropriate time, I, and maybe it's when there's a motion, mayor, but I am still concerned that I don't want to oust the whole use of, I agree that if a private, if somebody privately owns a parking lot, why we would get so involved in somebody renting it out for a different business use? And I also, I hear your argument that, about other businesses feeling like they're renting for physical space, but not everybody's business, as you said, there's not a high demand currently, is, can operate outside like that, but there has been some businesses that have found ways to do so, and just in the name of, you know, creating access point for micro businesses and people who might not be able to afford four walls and a roof, this is an opportunity for us to kind of be more inclusive and create different business opportunities. I think obviously we would have to really look at what businesses go there, but I do wonder how we can sort of, I don't want to strike that so that it's really hard to get back to, because I feel like we have an opportunity now, and I'm not really sure how we do that in this, maybe it's when the motion comes to move it, we make some sort of amendment, but I hear everything you guys are saying, because I realize that, you know, what works on one corner might not work somewhere else, and you guys try to create uniformity, but hopefully we can at least come back to that conversation at some point.
Councilmember Schwick.
I meant to remove myself before.
Oh, sorry, okay. All right, I see no other questions. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Of the staff recommendation?
Of the staff's recommendation.
All right. Is there a second?
I'd like to second, but can we make a friendly amendment?
First, you have to second the motion, then the motion's on the table, and then you can request a friendly amendment. But it has to be a motion to amend before you can request amendment.
Okay, so should I second and then request an amendment?
That's up to you.
I'll second, and then I'd like to make a motion to make a friendly amendment.
You don't make a motion, you just ask the maker of the motion if there's a friendly amendment.
Mayor Brock, can I make a friendly amendment? And I'm going to need some help putting this, articulating this so that it's best worded, but I would like to still have us not completely strike from this, the ability to look at underutilized lots. And I know you said, it sounds like you guys are already sort of like loosely, I don't want to say putting it out there, but you haven't completely put it to bed, but if we can somehow adopt a language that says that we will still consider other utilizations of outdoor, underutilized parking lots for outdoor businesses, that would be great.
So, I think you need to be a little more specific, so it would be underutilized privately owned.
Privately owned.
Parking lots, and allowing uses that are not connected to an adjacent brick and mortar use, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that friendly to the maker? Assuming it's friendly to the seconder.
Yes, it's friendly to the seconder.
All right. Is there any, for, Mr. City Manager, you're looking quizzical.
No, I'm just following the conversation.
Okay.
I think, I just want to make sure I understand, so we're talking about opportunities where folks can lease out their underutilized lot to a third party?
Right.
Right.
Without that use necessarily being connected to the adjacent brick and mortar. And I think, as I understand, the proposed amendment is to simply explore a program for doing that, it's not to really impose any standards at this point or anything like that.
And just a clarification, question, would that be for any business that doesn't currently have a brick and mortar location, so somebody that doesn't have?
Right. They're just the lots that are privately owned. Are you saying that there's lots that have brick and mortars that could be rented separately?
Well, I think what he's saying is that the people who would be applying to operate in the underutilized parking lots would not be places that have brick and mortar existence somewhere in the city.
It can be either or, like, it could be another business that currently has a business and say, hey, we'd like to maybe utilize this, so it can be either, either.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, okay, guys, we're going to do it. If you want to speak, you put yourself in the queue.
Yes. In conferring on the friendly amendment, can I recommend that that instead give direction to come back with something reflecting that, because it actually could be pretty complicated, and how we would deal with that? And deal with that separately?
You guys are the experts on how to bring it back, so.
Well, but the question is, that has to be friendly to both the maker and the seconder?
That is absolutely acceptable and makes it much more clear. Thank you.
All right, and is that acceptable to the seconder?
Yes.
All right, so we are back to a motion to adopt the staff recommendation, and then what we will do at the conclusion of the vote on that is give direction to staff, so we don't get confused about it. All right, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Tarosis?
Oh, I was going to say what City Attorney said.
Oh, all right, okay. So seeing no one else in the queue and no one waving anything at me, may we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom?
Sure, and we're doing this as all, just one motion, correct?
Yes, we're doing it all as one motion, and it is the original staff recommendation without any modification.
Okay. Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Tarosis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwick?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero, and then I'll turn, who would like to give the direction to staff? All right, Mayor Protem Negrete.
So, just, I would like to give direction that we further explore using underutilized privately owned lots that do not have already an operating brick and mortar, so that we can explore opportunities for businesses to operate on those lots.
And, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Would you want these, these uses to be connected with an existing Santa Monica business?
That's so general and broad, do you mean like there's a brick and mortar and that they can have a second business? I mean.
As opposed to just anybody using that lot, even without a business in Santa Monica? Just asking for clarification.
I don't know if anyone else has a question about that, I'm trying to clarify whether that would be a negative or positive.
All right, so we're, our line is getting longer. We're going to go to Councilmembers Schwick and Councilmember Tarosis.
I would just say that if this isn't in the name of flexibility, I don't know why it would be imposing additional qualifications as to whether it's a brick and mortar, or whether it's already in Santa Monica. If the idea is to expand uses, then I would say it could be open to any of those parties.
Councilmember Tarosis?
I would concur with that statement. I would just say, we need to ensure that we're giving those folks the proper technical assistance to get the correct licenses to be operating, because we, I'd assume that we might scale up some home-based businesses, or like folks using commissary space into brick and mortar, or pop-up, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, in these parking lots. I agree with Protem Negrete and Councilmember Schwick, we should make it as flexible as possible, but within regulation, and I agree that this could be complicated.
All right, Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, I want to agree with what was said in terms of, you know, providing flexibility, opening it up to other businesses, let's see how it goes, and I'm sure staff can come back with changes, you know, based on experience.
Councilmember Brock?
These, these pop-up businesses, or businesses that do not have regular storefronts that would pop up, let's say in the Elks parking lot, or the Moose parking lot, or wherever, they still have to get business licenses and follow all city regulations, correct?
That would be right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Parr?
So, my two cents, without putting too many restrictions, but I think this would be a great opportunity for a starter business, for a Santa Monica resident, so that would be the only type of regulation that I would like to see put in there, is just be a Santa Monica native, because this would be an opportunity for them to start their business, so that's just my two cents, but I will support whatever you guys all support.
All right, so we have some proposed direction for Mayor Protem Negrete, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have direction proposed by Mayor Protem Negrete for staff to come back with a proposal for use of underutilized private parking lots, incorporating, I hope, some of the comments you've heard up here on the dais. That was seconded by Councilmember De La Torre, we can do direction on a voice vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, that passes unanimously. Councilmember De La Torre, will you take yourself out of the queue, or I'm going to keep calling on you? All right. Thank you very much, staff, I appreciate all the work that went into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11A, adoption of a resolution amending the policies for boards and commissioners. Good evening, council, Nikki Newsom presenting on this item tonight. Yeah, double duty. So, tonight, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution amending the policies for city boards, commissions, committees, task forces, and regional advisory boards, and repealing resolution number 11396, and to consider an attendance policy regarding boards and commission members attending meetings via teleconferencing rules under the Brown Act. So just a little bit of background, the, as everyone knows, Governor Newsom sunsetted the COVID restrictions on February 28th, and as such, boards and commissions return to in-person meetings on March 1st. So at that time, staff decided to review the board and commission's resolutions to make sure that the policies in there were congruent with the current status of things. So we're proposing these five amendments. The first is a recognition of outgoing members. Currently, we don't have anything to recognize our outgoing members, and in the past, we used to do some sort of a plaque for all the members. Unfortunately, that became cost prohibitive, so we had to stop, but we do feel like it's important to recognize our members who give their time. So, our proposal is for, at the first meeting after the annual appointments are made, that at a council, that council meeting, that we recognize the outgoing boards and commission members. The second item is a method for, whoa, I'm sorry, it's been a long day, a method for presenting annual reports when no annual dinner is budgeted. For those of you who aren't familiar, in the past, we always held an annual dinner for boards and commissions. It was our way for, to, first of all, thank our boards and commission members, it was also an opportunity for the city attorney's office to provide AB 1234 training, and it was also an opportunity to provide a fun way to present the annual reports of all the boards and commissions. Unfortunately, due to COVID, that was one of the items that we had to eliminate from our budget, although I should say that even prior to COVID, we were being tasked with trying to hold the dinner on a smaller budget, so it just became, when COVID happened, it was just a no-brainer to just get, to just not do it anymore. So what we're proposing is that until we are able, we're not proposing that we by any means get rid of the dinner, we're hopeful maybe one day we can bring it back, but since we're not currently budgeted, and we're probably not going to be budgeted for a while, that we hold during the first quarter of the fiscal year, that we, the clerks set a schedule so that the boards and commissions present, like, three boards and commissions per council meeting present their annual reports to council at that time. The third item is establishing a policy for appointing secretaries. So this already exists in the charter, it states in the charter that the city manager shall appoint secretaries to all the boards and commissions. Where it stays silent is on subcommittees, and we, and the staff feels that since subcommittees are also, must be complying with the Brown Act, that they too should have staffing as well to ensure that they are complying with the Brown Act. The fourth item is establishing a deadline for submitter of agendas to the city clerk's office. This already exists, it's already our policy that agendas must be submitted to our office by 4:30 for same-day posting, but it's, it's not codified anywhere, so we're just seeking to make sure this is codified in the rules. And then number five, discontinuing the requirement for board and commission members to receive onboarding training within the first 90 days of their appointment. So, this was a, a component that was added by the previous city attorney's office that we onboard, or provide, the city attorney's office would provide training, and onboarding training for every quarter for new members. That's kind of gotten a little difficult. For one thing, sometimes, you know, we don't have a lot of appointments during a particular quarter, and so it's just not really efficient. The bulk of the appointments obviously come about during the annual appointments, so we're just proposing that we just not do it quarterly, and that maybe we do it on some other schedule. And then finally, a virtual attendance policy. The Brown Act is silent when it comes to attending meetings virtually via the Brown Act, and we just feel that in the spirit of the Brown Act, that we ensure that members are attending meetings in person consistently, and so, we're proposing simply that we adopt the same rules that have already been adopted by the state in AB 2449, which says that no more than three consecutive months, or 20% of regular meetings for the local agency within a calendar year, or more than two meetings and the legislative body meets fewer than 10 times per calendar year. With that, uh-oh. Again, these are the recommendations, and I'm here for questions.
All right, we have some questions, and we're still in questions, only questions, Councilmember Schwick.
So, on the final issue around attendance, I see in the report that it says, because the costs of upgrading city meeting facilities and staffing required to support hybrid meetings, the city is unable to implement AB 2449, and the city's Brown Act bodies must resume practices as they were prior to COVID-19, and yet, I'm also hearing a recommendation that the council adopt the same attendance policy as stipulated by AB 2449 to ensure consistency, and I'm just wondering, it seems as if AB 2449 does allow some amount of hybrid participation, but we're seemingly not able to provide that, but we are still holding people to the same attendance requirements, and I'm just wondering if there's a contradiction there in what we're able to provide our commissioners and what we're requiring of them?
So, no, currently at this time, we can't provide hybrid meetings under 2449, but since it is a part of discussion, and we already have heard that council does at some point wish to implement hybrid meetings at some point, so we were just proposing that since this attendance policy is already in play in 2449, so it's not to be incongruent, so that if we do, are able to move to 2449, that it's the same policy, and so there's no confusion.
Got it, and this is maybe more for the city attorney, I see there was a formal opinion issued as to what sort of accommodation should be provided to those with a disability and their ability to attend in person, and it says that the, the opinion of the office was that the city is not required. And it says that the opinion of the office was that the city is not required to provide such an accommodation, and I see a logic here, but frankly, I'm a little skeptical that this would, this would hold muster with the federal ADA law, but I'm just curious if you could unpack it a little bit.
So here we're talking about actual members of the boards and commissions, not the public participation. The law is that attendance in person is considered an essential element of participation as a member on a board or commission legislative body. In addition to that, state law says that it limits the number of times and how a member of a commission can participate by teleconference remotely. Yes, well, it has traditionally too. Traditionally, of course, one, like a council member wanting to participate remotely would have to post the agenda in a public place and call in from a place where the public could be there also. That's been softened a little bit, but still limits the number of times, as the clerk's office was saying, that you can do that. But the ADA definitely, certainly, we've checked this out thoroughly, the ADA says that it's an essential element of participation that you be there in person.
Councilmember Tarosis.
No, I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped right over you. I apologize. Councilmember Para.
Hi, Nikki, thank you for that report. So I had a quick question for you for, I think it was last item, item five, that had to do with the onboarding. What exactly does the onboarding process entail for new board members or commission members?
I knew that was going to come up. So I'm going to be frank, and I feel that the onboarding right now is a little weak. Right now, we've been just doing like Brown Act and ethics training, but about two years ago, I sat on a panel at the new law for clerks, and where I sat on the panel, where we discussed, you know, boards and commissions and everything, and my other panelists brought up how they actually onboard their members, and it was in a more robust way so that they kind of just got more information as they were onboarding, much like council does when new members are elected. So that has been one of my goals, to eventually implement a more robust onboarding training. Unfortunately, it's just, there's been a lot happening, a lot of staffing changes. There's going to be, continue to be more staffing changes. So it, you know, it's not going to happen this year, next year, in an election. So the, when we had the working group come up with the board and commission revamp program, one of the things that we were tasked with was having a five-year comprehensive review, as long as it doesn't fall in an election year. So my proposal would be to, and when we do our next comprehensive review, which would be 2025, would be that we look at implementing a more robust onboarding program for our board and commission members, because currently it is a little lackluster. Basically, they come in, we do the training, and then they're just kind of left up to the devices of, you know, here's your liaison. But, you know, we've come to learn, especially with COVID, where there wasn't a lot of human contact, where there's been some shorefalls. So my hope is that we can implement a more robust onboarding for that and to work on that in 2025.
And have you considered, and just to make things, because again, you know, one of the things that we've learned from COVID is obviously we're short-staffed, we don't have a lot of money, and we don't have a lot of time. Have you considered doing a video?
Yeah, I mean, we've done.
A checklist and a video that you can just, you know, send to every member, because, because, you know, we've been getting emails from new commissioners, I didn't know, you know, about this meeting, you know, like city council meetings, for example. And so one of my questions to David was like, oh, do new commissioners, you know, do they know that they need to sign up to get notifications about city council meetings, for example, or is that something that they get on their onboarding, you know? Is that something on their checklist of onboarding, like you need to sign up if you want to be notified, or there's little things like that.
So as a commission member, I mean, a commission member is just like any other member of the public.
Right.
They'll just contact our office to get on that mailing list, to get agendas and all that kind of stuff. So that wouldn't be necessarily a part of the onboarding process for boards and commission members. I'm more, you know, talking about, you know, when they come in, you know, they get to know the Brown Act, the ethics training, the how do you get your email address set up, like all that kind of stuff so that they can be a more efficient, productive board and commission member.
Right. I'm just trying to take the work off of you, that's all. I just think that that, there's just a suggestion that that could be one of those things that we can add to a checklist, to be like, hey, these are things that you may want to do, sign up to get notifications of XYZ meetings and what have you, but, all right.
Definitely something we can look into. I mean, right now, we record the trainings we do do. We do do. And, you know, yeah, and, you know, we do, we send them out to all the members, you know, the, there's a chair training that we implemented this year for chairs and vice chairs, I'm sorry, we implemented it last year. We made it, you know, a requirement that you must take the training, some didn't, and then those are the ones that are running into a lot of issues now. So, you know, we are, you know, like I said, we do record it so that they can view it later and everything, but.
That's great.
But I do want to make an effort to make it a little bit more broken.
And, you know, and just in my last two cents on it, and the way that we've done it is we've done it in sections, so you know that there's a Brown Act section, and there's a vice chair section, and there's, so that way you can cut it together. So if anything changes, you only have to change one section of it. So just my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Tarosis.
Sorry. What do you think the timeline is for implementing this like hybrid meeting possibility? Is that being looked into, or is it just like, we have no resources, so we can't do it right now? It's okay, you can be honest.
At this point, it's a budget question.
It's a budget question, so, yeah, we just had that discussion on Saturday. I would have to second what Councilmembers Swick said on this interpretation, that we don't have to provide a reasonable combination for folks with a disability. That just really concerns me that we've put that out there, but if you're saying that's the law, that's the law. And then I just want to clarify that you didn't mean any of the section, or sorry, the updates to the code section here in the resolution to apply to anyone on like an independently elected body, like the rent control board or the school board, for example.
Are you referring specifically to?
I'm referring to.
These amendments?
Yeah, I'm referring to Section 3 specifically. It says, no person shall serve simultaneously more than one board, commission, committee, or task force. And I just want to clarify that that would not apply to something like the rent control board or the school board that's independently elected by the voters and not an appointed board or commission.
Counsel, would you like me to address that?
Sure, if you're the appropriate person.
Well, my reading of this section is that since it applies to boards and the rent control board is a board, then somebody could not simultaneously serve on the rent control board and, for example, DTSM.
So if I'm on the board of the National Women's Political Caucus, and I wanted to be appointed to a board at the city of Santa Monica, I wouldn't be able to do that?
That's literally what it says, yes.
I think we need to clarify that section that seems concerning to me because it could preclude people that are on independent boards and bodies that don't report to the city.
I think it'd be good to clarify.
Yeah, okay, great.
And I, and actually, I think before, when this first came up, when we first adopted this policy, we did run that by the city attorney at the time, and it was stated that the, you know, one's an elective board, one is an appointed board, they don't, that there isn't a conflict.
Okay, great.
Can I interrupt here for a second?
Sure.
Because I apologize for doing that, but since I was the only council member when we did elect, adopt this policy, we actually did have a brief discussion about it because at the time, Rob Raider, who was a duly-elected member of the Santa Monica College Board, was also sitting on downtown Santa Monica, and someone specifically asked, would that mean he could not sit on both, and the answer was no. And maybe this is just some ambiguous wording here that slipped through, but I think it was the time, and obviously, this is a new council, but just to make it clear, at the time this was adopted, it was clear that it was not meant to apply to independently elected people because, for the reasons you're stating, they're independently elected, and there are many other boards that people in theory might serve on, whether it's a board of directors of a nonprofit or something like that, the Elks Board or something like that would keep people from serving then on our boards and commissions. So I think that, you know, just to give some background there, now, obviously, we're the new council, and we can change that, but I think, just so people understand, the legislative intent of the current wording was not to exclude people who are independently elected to other boards, not under the jurisdiction of the city.
Thanks. Yeah, that was my question. I just wanted to clarify that the chain of command, obviously, is that we appoint folks to advise us as a council, as a city, and that other boards and commissions would be separate from this. So thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, Councilmember Brock.
Well, I'll start with the first questions I had, then I may want to come back to this last question that was discussed. I think we said at one point what the cost was of implementing some sort of hybrid meetings, and I mentioned Saturday again about hybrid meeting cost, and even just the fact that we can't seem to video conference meetings in our chamber, i.e., for instance, the Westside City's Council of Governments, meaning this is the only city in the Westside Cog that can't seem to, that no meetings can be held here for the Westside City's Council of Governments because we're the only city without video capability in that way. The second part of that is, what, how expensive is it to find a way of doing hybrid meetings such as Beverly Hills, Culver City, West Hollywood, Malibu, et cetera, do? And are there federal grants or state grants that we can apply for to help that? Because I think that's, this day and age, after we've gone through COVID, it seems pretty essential. And I know it takes more staff, I know all that, but what facilities do we need? What hardcore things do we need to be able to implement that? And can the city manager's office or someone come back to us with an amount, I think you did, but I don't remember the amount, and it's probably changed if it's more than one or two months old.
Yeah, so we did a couple of steps. So we did historically provide some feedback and guidance on costs and staffing needed to go to hybrid, and then we had a recent council meeting where we were given direction to come back with costing and staffing. So, in fact, we just talked about it this morning. So our intention is, along with the budget that we bring forward to, we will provide an option in front of council of what it would cost, both from a technology perspective and a staffing perspective, to achieve hybrid meetings, and then certainly within the context of our budget discussions, you know, council has the opportunity to make trade-offs with the resources available to achieve that objective over something else, per se.
Okay, some of the other things that were mentioned, recognition of outgoing members, I know I mentioned that was one of the first things I mentioned when I was elected, that all those board members who were stuck on Zoom calls needed to be recognized at the end. And the methodology of having the chairs, vice chairs of commissions come in and do a five-minute report on their commission's activities for a year, I think is wonderful. That's a great way because they also become, they also are seen by the city council members as well, and it resparks interest in those commissions, so they don't feel they're isolated. I think all that's great. The onboarding training, I really like Councilmember Para's idea, that you just create a series of videos and they sort of have a video education course, and they have to complete it. And, you know, you can tell the same as when they do the AB 1234 training, that you've completed your hour on that and move on. And I think that's a great idea because it wouldn't take staff time other than to set it up. It'd be like brocking your block on boards and commissions. I figured I had to throw that in. But the serious thing is, I think that's a great way to reduce staff time, and as Councilmember Para said, all you have to do is if something changes, you reset just that video. The rest of them stay the same. I think that's a fantastic idea that won't take, other than the initial videos and hair and makeup for you and becoming, you know, and proper lighting, then you're great.
I look good in every lighting.
There you go, see? I like that. But I think that's, I think that's worth investigating because that would really save a lot of time. As far as this, the issue about a person serving, I don't think anyone's saying, and I hope our rules don't say, that if you're on a national organization, that you would then be prohibited from being on another board.
That's what the city attorney just said.
No, Caroline said that, Carolyn said that, sorry, Madam Tarosis said that. And my question is, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent was, and I don't think the college board would have anything to do with it either, or SMUSD School District Board. I think it's concerned when it's part of the municipal structure in Santa Monica that people are concerned. So my question then is, and if it doesn't say, I would think these rules are confined to people who serve on a board, whether elected or appointed, or a commission, whether elected or appointed. Now, there are subsets for members, I think, of working groups, et cetera, but that's my question, I think, first and foremost.
Well, I think it is purely what worded. It says, you know, more than one board, commission, committee, or task force, and it includes some of the corporations, and then also regional advisory boards. So it's kind of in and out of how specific it is. I would recommend with anything that's ambiguous to clarify it, one way or the other.
So my next question would be, is this something that's part of the agenda item this evening, or would this need to be re-agended for?
No, the agenda item is to amend these rules, and so it'd be fully within that if you wanted to make this change, too.
Okay.
The Brown Act just requires a general description of what's to be discussed. And so if you wanted to clarify, I would recommend adding, this section shall not apply to and insert any elected board or advisory board and so forth. If you said any elected board, then I think that clarifies.
Within the Santa Monica.
Right.
City structure.
Right.
And then, yeah, so it's in within Santa Monica. So my question, I guess this is more of a, maybe it's an esoteric question or a practical question, is that we have 90, someone said earlier, when they were speaking from the public, we have 93, formerly 94,000, whatever it is our population is, are we saying that people have to double up because we don't have, because we don't have enough people to apply? And shouldn't people be able to apply and be on each commissioner board individually without duplication? So that's, that's one of my questions, whether it be, and I know we've had problems lately. Tonight, we have only one applicant for the ARB, I understand that. But I still think we want, as a city, as a progressive city, to make sure that our residents fully have a chance to serve, whether it be in a volunteer basis, which our boards and commissions are, except for, I think, the planning commission gets a small stipend. But our other boards and commissions, I think there are a number of applicants and a number of people in our city who want to participate, who want to serve, and we want to encourage that, which does not mean have people serving on an elected body that reports and is part of the city structure, not school district, not college. And if Rob Raider was disqualified.
No, no, he wasn't. And he served for many years after that.
Yeah, no, I.
But I think this may require some delving into the rent control board structure. That is a completely different body. It does not report.
No, I know, but I still consider an elected board within the city.
Right. Well, no, not within the city, that's the point, I think. It's just like the school board or the college board. It's separately elected with its own.
That's not what it says in the current structure.
If I could just speak up here, we, when we, when the clerk's office did this, you know, we had a working group, we had a council ad hoc group, the whole point of this section was so that we didn't have, you know, the same people on all the boards and commissions. And that meant the council boards and commissions that you appoint. So the whole point was so that we do get a more, you know, vibrant group, that we do get new blood in on a rotating, constant basis. It's the same reason why we put in here as well the term limit, that you have to sit out for, you know, once you serve a certain amount of time, you have to sit for a while before you can, you know, reapply for another board and commission. It was never intended to have anything to do with the elected bodies at all. They are separate bodies that council has no authority over.
And council, clearly, the council cannot regulate who's on the rent control board, but you can regulate who you appoint to DTSM. So it's that end of it that you have the authority over.
Any more questions, Councilmember Brock?
Not yet. I'm fine.
All right, Councilmember De La Torre.
I'm trying to find where the language is in terms of ensuring that we have diversity on our boards, and we just, you know, we passed a pillar, a budget pillar, last Saturday, talking about, you know, having diversity and social inclusion and so forth, and I'm trying to figure out how we, if we have that goal, and how we achieve that in terms of our outreach strategy.
So, in Section 16, it says that the city clerk, and this is, we added this because you asked for, actually, Councilmember De La Torre, the city clerk will provide an annual report to inform the city council on the aggregate demographic profile of the city's boards, commissions, and task force. So, that's-
Okay. Yeah, so this gives us a, sort of a snapshot of where we are in terms of, you know, our demographic profile, so we know if there's gaps, right? But in terms of outreach strategy and so forth, we still don't have that developed within the framework of this ordinance.
No, I mean, you know, the boards and commissions are tasked, you know, they go out to the, now that we're coming out of this whole COVID world, you know, they can go to the different festivals and events and kind of, you know, try to drum up, you know, new membership. We send out through all the, all the social media contacts, you know, when a, you know, a position is open. You know, again, those are all things that involve a lot of staff time, not so much the boards and commissions, and then going out to, you know, the festivals and stuff, but for us, you know, internally, you know, we do, we post, we, you know, we broadcast it on, I think we even made, posted on city TV, maybe annually, I think, annual postings go on city TV, I can't remember, but, you know, to the exit. Obviously, we can't, I mean, look, there's, it doesn't, we're not allowed to ask certain questions, right? So, we can't ask race, or age, or all those, the only time that we can ask those questions is those specific boards where we have to fill a position based on, like, for example, the housing commission where a seat is specifically set aside for someone who receive, isn't a voucher program, or on the disabilities commission where a certain number of seats have to be set aside for members of the community who do have a disability. Other than that, you know, I mean, the applications are pretty vanilla when we see them, because how do we know?
Yeah, correct.
And how do you know when you receive it?
Yeah, do you know when, in terms of the annual report, like, when the next one is expected to be produced?
I think we do it at the end of the fiscal year, so, right, so by the same time we do the annuals-
Yeah.
-we'll also be producing the demographic report.
So, sometime in June, maybe?
It's usually slated for that last meeting in June, but, you know, council also has a policy where they don't appoint members to boards and commissions if there's one person absent, and nine times out of ten, there's usually at least one member absent for that last meeting in June, so it winds up getting pushed to July and-
Okay, that sounds great. At least we know that annual report's coming, so that we can see where we're at. All right, sounds good, I don't have any other questions.
All right, Councilmember Para.
My questions were kind of answered by Attorney Sloan, but I was just going to say that some of the confusion also lies within the actual resolution, because the wording in the resolution, when you read it, it does refer to Santa Monica boards and commissions. So, if you're, you know, you're reading the language, and you're looking at it, you know, it says Santa Monica has established numerous boards, commissions, committees, task force, setting term limits, establishing policies, and then you continue to read through. And so, when you're reading the staff report, and then you go and you read the resolution, it's safe to assume that when you're looking at the term limits and what have you, it's very safe to assume that you're talking about Santa Monica boards and commissions and what have you, and, you know, the ability or not to be on more than one at the same time. And so, I don't think that this is something that we should be approving as written, because it doesn't seem to, I mean, if we're talking about not being able to be on a national committee, and then being, you know, on a national board, and then being on a city, a Santa Monica board, the way this reads, it doesn't jive.
So, this, that part of it's already adopted, though. That would need to be amended, that's already an adopted part of the, this was already adopted by council two years ago.
Let's see, it's proved as to form, so this is not something that we would do right now, because it seems like-
Not that part of it, that part isn't what's up for amendment. The items that are being amended tonight are the list of items I-
Just that?
Yes.
The entire document is front of council, so you could amend any part of the document, if you wanted to.
Yeah, see, that's what I thought.
Right, you could amend it, but I'm saying, you said that I wouldn't amend or adopt it as it is, but it's already in there.
Sorry, that's what I said, okay. I meant to say, we would need to amend this, this document here, because the way that I'm reading it right now, it doesn't make sense with the discussion that we're having right now.
All right, Councilmember Turosis.
Okay, I don't know if this is a question or suggestion for City Attorney Sloan, but is it possible that we could amend Section 3 to say, "No person shall serve simultaneously on more than one Santa Monica City Council-appointed board, commission, committee, or task force"?
That's exactly what I have just written down.
Oh, sorry, okay, all right, yes, great.
I was going to offer that, yes, that would make perfect sense.
I think that would clarify that issue, and then, I don't want to overcomplicate this, and maybe when we hear about the equity plan from Paolo, we'll get a little more clarification, but I would just say, I have heard a lot of very concerning things about some, quite frankly, I'll just say, have experienced with some of our boards and commissions since I've been on council, I've seen direct evidence of it, and I really do think it's high time for some sort of anti-racism, diversity, inclusion training across the board as a requirement, if we are talking about revamping the onboarding process. I do think that that needs to be part of it, so that we can be clear that we're holding everyone to the same standard, that we are holding the city as in our just-adopted priorities.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to echo those comments, I mean, but even on the city council, I think-
Yes, I agree.
I think we've experienced, some of us, you know, have experienced this on the city council, microaggressions, implicit bias, all the nice buzzwords that make us feel very terrible at the end of the day. And so, I'd like to apply it up and down, three hundred, you know, through the whole organization, because I think, you know, we can't just sit up here and say, "This is good for the boards and the commissions." I think whatever we're trying to recommend to boards and commissions should be good enough for us to take as well, and so, it's real important for us to have those very uncomfortable but very important conversations, and so, I'm totally supportive of that. I, you know, I just want to say that in terms of the holding two positions, you know, I can tell you that I went through a similar situation, and I know that it's not exactly the same, but, you know, I was on the school board, being on the city council, you know, no, you can't do that, right? That, you know, the, I feel a certain way about how people went about it, but in any case, I understand sort of where people's position is on that. We passed policies here, you know, to ensure that people's husbands, wives, close relatives couldn't, you know, if they were, they couldn't serve on boards and commissions, you know, so, and I think, you know, there's politics involved, right? It gets political, and people sort of like a certain person, they want that person to be having as much power as they can, because it serves a purpose for the people that are in power. But I think what we should go for, what we should always strive to do is to, you know, really, to open up opportunities for as many people as we can in our city to serve on different boards and commissions. When one person is assuming two positions of power in any board or commission, whether elected or not, it just, that's one space that, you know, that could have gone to another person to develop that leadership. You know, a lot of the boards and commissions, commissioners, that's sort of the stepping stone for them to get involved and run for office, for example. So, like, planning commissioners, a lot of times run, you know, for city council, or in this case, also rent control board members, you know, run for city council, school board members run for city council. So, we want to give ample opportunity as much as we can, and I'm all for that. So, I want to make sure that within, within the boards, commissions, elected and appointed that are housed within the city structure, I think, I think we should, we should make it that you can serve in one capacity, so then that person is focused on that, whether you're on the rent control board, you're giving all your attention, right, to that, to the charge of that board, you're elected to serve, you know, and to give all that you can to that elected board. It's a very important position, and so, I want to, I want to make sure that we're, that we, you know, establish a system that will, that will do that, that will, that will, you know, give that person sort of all that responsibility to focus, you know, on their, on their obligations, and not having it, having it being divvied up with other, you know, other charges, you know, so, and then it provides an opportunity for other residents to occupy those spaces and develop their leadership, and we want to expand those opportunities. So, that's, that's my take on that.
Mayor Pottein Negrete.
So, it sounds like we've sort of devolved into comments, so I'm going to do questions, a question and a comment.
We abandoned questions long ago, I'm afraid.
Sorry, I have a question and a comment, but in terms of outreach, I just wanted to make the point that I think, I agree that we should be trying to get, you know, as diverse a population as possible, but I do think we need to realize that the onus also is on people to get involved, and where that conversation starts, I don't know that it comes from the staff at City Hall, I think it comes from community members, council members reaching out. I know I personally go to the high schools, I talk to the local young collegegoers, and so, those are ways that we can engage with young people to inform them how to get involved, and not just young people, we can go to park programs, our, you know, community meetings, and outside of just when you're talking to people in the street who don't go to all these community meetings, because most likely, if you're in a neighborhood association, you're obviously aware of all the different boards and commissions. So, I think that's something we all need to do, and I think, having served, whether it be on PTA or some other organization, no matter how you inform people, you could fly a plane in the sky, you could, you know, put an emergency broadcast on people's phones and stamp it on their foreheads, and, you know, not everybody reads everything. So, that's probably always going to be a challenge, and that's something that we have to, we have to engage in in the community. So, that was just my comment about that. So, I think as council members, we should probably try to go out there and maybe, maybe we can take that on, because I agree, I talk to people all the time that have no idea what boards and commissions exist, but they do want to get involved. In terms of what we're talking about with the different boards and commissions, there are some boards and commissions we've had an issue with putting members on, so, and I know that's not all of them, there's some that, you know, we have lots of applicants on, and some we don't, but I do just want to redefine, because I feel like we're getting into a murky water situation where we're comparing apples to oranges. So, City Attorney, you explained earlier the difference, because it sounds like we are talking about this language, which I know is not what you're proposing up there, but since we're modifying language, which you already suggested, that the difference between an elected body, like rent control board is elected, right, and does not report to the city, as opposed to the boards and commissions which serve as advisory boards that work directly with city council or the city, correct?
Well, advisory boards are specifically exempted from this. So, like, planning commission, it would be covered.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm suggesting a clarification, if you want to go down this path, to make it clear that this only applies to the Santa Monica City Council-appointed boards and commissions, committees, and so forth. If that's what you intend.
A correction, though, it actually says, "This section shall not apply to advisory boards reporting to, reporting to city staff." That's, that's different.
Right, right, right.
So, can we be really, really, really clear, because I think there's a difference between us appointing, you know, we're positions in power and appointing the same person to two commissions and boards, that's totally different than the public electing somebody. I get that what, what Councilmember De La Torre just said, oftentimes, it benefits certain people to fight for certain things, but I think just to be, to take that out of the equation and be very clear, I think it's good to clarify the definition and how, how does rent control board, because I think that's what we're talking about, and a member who's on rent control board, and an appointed or a college board, those are elected positions by the general public in an election, and then appointed boards and commissions are appointed by council members on the dais, and those are, that's, those are different, and I don't know if it's explained clearly in there.
The ambiguity is when somebody is on both an elected board and a council-appointed board.
But what would be the conflict of interest?
Well, if I can just interject for a second, this whole thing came up because we had multiple people serving on multiple appointed boards. For example, we had one person who at the same time was serving on the arts commission, as well as, I can't remember, I think it was the wreck and parks commission, it might have been, I'm not sure, there was one. But we had people serving on multiple boards at the same time, they were serving on travel and tourism, and at the same time, yeah, they were serving on other boards and commissions. That's what we were trying to address, and that, and part of that was Councilmember De La Torre's concern, was there was no reason for these people to serve on more than one board or commission, so it was to give them that opportunity, give more people an opportunity to serve. So, I think that was really the key. But it was never, like, as I said, we discussed electeds and said, "No, this wasn't meant to preclude electeds." It wasn't really a conflict of interest issue, it was just that if this, people in the city, or Santa Monica and Malibu, in the case of the school board and the college board, elected someone, that was very different than them being appointed to a Santa Monica city board or commission, and that was not seen as being someone taking up two seats on boards and commissions, because in one, they'd been elected, and the other, they were appointed by the city council. So, it wasn't a conflict of interest issue, it was a, if someone goes out and gets elected, and by the way, I should point out that the person who was mentioned during public comment was appointed to downtown Santa Monica before she was ever elected or appointed to anything, she was a private citizen at the time. So, even then, you know, so, I mean, that, I just want to make that clear, I think there's some notion that there's some conflict of interest or something, that wasn't it. It was just simply that we didn't want people serving on multiple appointed boards and commissions like Santa Monica Travel and Tourism, and the Peter Corporation, or that sort of thing.
But there is a rule that precludes people from being on two elected bodies?
Yes.
Yes, there's state law about incompatibility of offices.
But that's not cities, right, so that's the state of California.
So, someone can't serve on the rent control board in the city council?
Right. Right.
Or the county board of supervisors and the city council.
Right.
Or an appointed board and commission in city council, because obviously, I recuse myself from PSROC to be on city council. I just wanted to be really clear about that, because I think that wasn't clear. So, I'm assuming we're moving forward with more discussion around that, or some sort of motion to modify language, unless you haven't already?
Well, I haven't, oh, well, I was going to make a motion that we, I'm moved that we adopt the staff recommendation. Uh-oh, has to put on the other hat now, had to put on, with regard to the amendments for recognition of outgoing members, a method for presenting annual reports where no annual dinner is budgeted, establish a policy for appointing secretaries, establish a deadline for submission of agendas to the city clerk's office, and discontinuing the requirement for boards and commission members to receive onboarding training within the first ninety days, and in addition to those proposed amendments, the proposed amendment from City Attorney Sloan, that Section 3 shall state, "No person shall serve simultaneously on more than one Santa Monica City Council-appointed board, commission, committee, or task force," et cetera. That's my motion.
Et cetera.
Is anyone seconded? All right, moved by Davis, seconded by Negrete, Councilmember Brock, did you want to engage in any further discussion?
Yeah, I had a comment, back to the amendment part, and I was thinking of it a different way, though, too, because I have the feeling, and I'd have, we'd have to have the city clerk check records, but in this particular case, if someone's elected to one body, appointed to another body, and the elected official has a meeting, they're probably going to go to that and not the commission meeting at the same time. So, my other question on this is, are people going to miss one or more meetings, or can they really, if they're an elected body, can they really split their attention to another important city commissioner or board? So, I still have concerns about that, and I believe it has caused conflicts in the past. Now, Mayor Davis, I absolutely remember, I think, Alvin, who was here to speak earlier, he was on travel and tourism, and on recreation and parks commission, Neil Carey was as well. So, I agree with what you're saying, and we abandoned that rule, or reinforced the rule, that people cannot be simultaneously on two boards or commissions, because we want equity, we want a diversity, we wanted a way for our residents to feel that they had a chance to be on a board or commission and participate, and I think that's important.
All right, seeing no other requests to speak in the queue, Councilmember Swick, couldn't just leave it alone, could you?
I have no issue with the motion, I did have a suggested amendment for the recommendations. I don't think you specifically spoke to the attendance policy, are we going to talk about that later, or is that included in your motion? that later, or is that included in your motion?
Oh, well, actually, that wasn't on the list, so I didn't include it in my motion.
We can adjust it a second, that'd be fine with me, and we can proceed with this.
So are we inclu, I'm sorry?
I did have a suggestion about that portion, so we could take that on.
All right, so what's your suggestion about that portion?
Well, I would suggest that we delay adopting the attendance policy under AB 2449 until we can also implement the hybrid meetings that are allowed under AB 2449.
All right, that is friendly to the maker, is that friendly to the seconder?
Yes.
All right, I mean, because we, we did get a, a report that we're going to get something, presumably, in connection with the budget, which is not that far off. Councilmember Brock?
I have a, maybe a friendly amendment also.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Brock.
Microphone. I have a concern about abandoning the onboard training, and there still should be some sort of outside limit while the city clerk's office tries to transition, the basic things should still be done, because if we abandon the 90-day limit, are we saying we're abandoning onboard training completely?
No, the, the point of the, we were doing it quarterly, but quite frankly, most of the appointments happened at the annual appointment, you know, every once in a while, like tonight, we have, you know, a random, you know.
So if someone gets appointed, you know, for the 1st of July as the new commissioner, when should we anticipate the incoming 23, 24 group to be, have their training?
Probably within that next month or two.
So do we need to abandon the within 90 days clause?
But, yeah, it's for the entire year, though, it's quarterly for the year, so in other words, we're supposed to have a 90-day training every, I mean, every 90 days, so if you have one member.
Wait, 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 for the same group of people, or are you being for new people if they're appointed?
For new people. So, for example, we have one appointment being made tonight, so that means we have to onboard that one person in the next 90 days.
So you're saying you'd rather them wait till the end of June, the, or the beginning of July, the question would be, though, are they going to be an effective commissioner during April, May, and June before they get onboarded?
Well, they still have to.
Can we give them rudimentary onboarding, but not a formal?
They will get all the documents.
Comprehensive presentation?
Yeah, we will provide them the materials, they will get the Brown Act, all that stuff, they still have to do their AB 1234 training within the first 30 days, that's not negotiable, that's state law. So they will get the nuts and bolts, it's just they won't have that one-on-one contact until.
Okay, I'll abandon my request.
All right, all right, are we all clear on what the motion is, is it's a staff recommendation with the additional language regarding serving on more than one Santa Monica City Council-appointed board and commission, and not adopting the virtual attendance policy until we get a report back from staff regarding the cost of going to hybrid meetings. Councilmember De La Torre.
So a yes vote would allow elected officials in any governing body within the city of Santa Monica to serve on an appointed body from the city council? If we vote yes today, that, that would allow that, correct?
It would allow a member, yes, of, of the rent control board, the school board, or the Santa Monica College Board, to also serve, but they couldn't serve?
Not city council.
Well, right, not city council, because you can't oversee yourself.
Yeah.
So not city council, but yes, for those three elected bodies, someone could serve on both the elected body and on a council-appointed board or commission.
Yeah, because I, I, I just think, I mean, just on the, on the, on the idea of allowing, you know, expanding opportunities for leadership development in our city, I think that if you're an elected member of any governing board, that should be the focus, you know, you should really focus on that, and, I mean, I, I would, I would like to prohibit them from serving in any other appointed capacity.
All right, so I think we're ready for?
Substitute motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion to, to accomplish that.
All right, what is your substitute motion?
That we, that we prohibit any elected member.
Well, no, you have to cut, you have to do it in terms of what's before us from the city clerk's office, so this isn't about prohibiting or not prohibiting, you have to have a substitute motion for what's before us in the staff report, and then you can incorporate or not incorporate any changes you want.
Yeah, so, well, what's the language before us, what was the, can you repeat the motion?
So, it looks like we have moved on, I mean, I think staff is trying to give us a hint, that we adopt a resolution amending the policies for city boards and commissions, which included recognition for outgoing members, method of presenting annual reports, establishing a policy for appointing secretaries, establishing a deadline for submittal of agendas, and discontinuing the requirement for board and commission members to receive onboarding training within the first 90 days of their appointment. That's the staff recommendation.
And, and then the, what, there was, there was the other one?
So I made a motion.
We're separating those, separate?
No, I made a motion to adopt the staff recommendation with the additional, additional language, as proposed by Councilmember Terosis and the city attorney, that Section 3 be amended to say, no person shall serve simultaneously on more than one Santa Monica City Council-appointed board and commission, and then adopted the friendly amendment from Councilmember Swick, that we not impose the AB 2049, I'm getting the number wrong, the attendance requirements, not impose the attendance requirements under 2449, until we get the report back from staff regarding the cost of going to hybrid meetings.
So I'd like to add the word elected after no, so no elected person should serve simultaneously.
I'm sorry.
Would that, would that meet the?
Doug?
So, in other words?
Substitute that allowed for other elected officials to serve.
Right, so the substitute motion is everything that the mayor said, but changed the one word to add, no elected person shall serve simultaneously on more than one?
On city-appointed boards and commissions. So if you're an elected official?
I don't think that accomplishes what you're trying to accomplish, because your language would allow an elected person to serve, they just couldn't serve on more than one. They couldn't serve on both travel and tourism in downtown Santa Monica.
No, they would, they, well, if you're an elected person, you serve on that body, right, on that governing body, but you wouldn't qualify to be appointed by the city council.
But you were leaving in the Santa Monica City Council-appointed language you just said.
Well.
Well, if you can make whatever motion you want, I'm not.
I think your intent is to say, no person who's elected to a Santa Monica border commission shall also be appointed by the city council to any city, Santa Monica-appointed border commission, yes. In other words, you can't be both elected and appointed.
Correct, you can't be appointed.
That's what you intend, right?
Yes.
All right, so that is, but other than that, everything else is the same, is that right?
That's fine, yeah.
All right, so that is the substitute motion. Ms. Newsom, we will have a vote.
Councilmembers Swick?
No.
Councilmember Parr? Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
No.
Councilmember Terosis?
No.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
No, that motion fails four to three, so now we will go back to the original motion. Does everyone remember what the original motion was? All right, let's have a vote, please.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
No.
Councilmembers Swick?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that motion passes six to one.
And if I could just add, we didn't move on it, but perhaps in the diversity and inclusion report, we could learn more about implicit bias training for both ourselves and all of our commissioners. Thanks.
All right, I think that is well-supported direction.
Okay, public, item 12A, Sustainable City Plan Update.
Where am I?
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council, oh, let's see if I can get that. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Shannon Perry, as a reminder, I'm your Chief Sustainability Officer. I was here in February for a study session on our sustainability efforts, and my team is here tonight to continue that conversation. Tonight, we are going to bring three things before you, the update, the updated data on our Sustainable Rights Ordinance, introducing the Sustainable City Plan Performance Dashboard, and then updating the Sustainable City Plan itself. I think it's worth noting that the last time we came to council with the Sustainable Rights Ordinance was February of 2020, it was just before the world changed. At that time, my office led this work, and we worked closely with staff across the organization. Pre-pandemic, we partnered with the Office of Civic Wellbeing, as well as the Office of Performance Management, and utilized professional expertise across my team as well. Neither the Office of Performance Management or the Office of Civic Wellbeing remain, and my, my office has also been significantly impacted. It's worth noting that our peer cities, many of them paused their Sustainable City reporting or eliminated their data collection efforts during the pandemic. Here in Santa Monica, we did not. We used the pandemic period to apply for and receive LEED Platinum certification for our world-class sustainability efforts, and we took the time to update our Sustainable City Plan. I'd like to acknowledge the remarkable effort of staff across our organization, they went through great lengths to be able to bring this year's sustainability report to you. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge Amanda Grossman, who led the effort for, for data collection and reporting for both the LEED Platinum certification and for the update of the Sustainable City Plan, and for that reason, I'll invite Amanda up in a few minutes to present this item to you tonight. We're really pleased to be able to bring this to you. We're pleased to be able to bring you the reporting, but more importantly, we're pleased to be able to share the meaningful outcomes that we've achieved as a community during this unprecedented, I don't know how many times, maybe we should stop saying that, but it's true, it was a remarkable unprecedented time globally, and particularly here in our community. But while we appropriately put our emphasis on addressing the pandemic, we still had issues of climate change and social equity that were, that, that remain core elements in our community and core challenges to our ability to achieve meaningful outcomes as a sustainable city. And I'm really proud of the work that we did to, to continue to prioritize those efforts and those outcomes during this time. I think it's worth noting, as we go through this work, that our city has prided ourselves on setting what we call aggressive but achievable goals when it comes to sustainability. This allows us to drive performance, and it allows us to develop policies that let us model sustainable practices that demonstrate that these, this key tenet, economic vitality, environmental protection, and social equity are mutually dependent, and they're core values of this community. So with that, I will invite Amanda up, and she will share with you some of the progress that we've made.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, I am here tonight to present the Sustainability Rights Report, as well as the Sustainable City Plan Updates, and present to you our Sustainable City Plan Performance Dashboard. To give a quick background of the Sustainable Sustainability Rights Ordinance, originally adopted by council in 2013, the ordinance recognizes the rights of both humans and the natural environment to exist and flourish. It asserts the rights of residents on behalf of the environment and codifies the commitments of the Sustainable City Plan. As part of the ordinance, the city is required to report on the health of the local environment, which brings me here tonight. In 2019, the city created Article 12 of the Santa Monica Municipal Code titled Sustainability. At this time, we had identified 12 indicators on which we would report for our Sustainability Rights Report. In 2020, staff presented the first Sustainability Rights Report, as well as the updated Sustainable City Plan Dashboard. Tonight, I am presenting an update to the same set of indicators for our Sustainability Rights Reporting with our Sustainable City Plan Update. Jumping right into the data, there are eight rights identified in the ordinance, and they are as follows, so right to accessible water, renewable energy, natural climate, waste disposal system, clean air, clean water and soil, healthy food, and urban forests. For accessible water, we measure the percent of water sourced locally. In the previous report, as of 2019, 72% of Santa Monica's water supply came from local sources, while the remaining supply came, was imported. As of fiscal year 2021, 2022, 51.3% of water is sourced locally. This temporary dip is due to some well maintenance and construction, but moving forward, we should climb back up and to where we were, and possibly even exceed the previous figure. Up next, we have renewable energy. For renewable energy, we measure the amount of distributed generation of solar, as well as the participation in our Clean Power Alliance. In the previous report, we were measuring 6.3 megawatts generated from solar as of 2018. In 2021, the city is, was measuring 8.8 megawatts. For the Clean Power Alliance participation, the city was measuring 93% as of 2019, and as of 2022, we are now measuring at 94% participation, while the remaining 6% are customers of SoCal Edison, LADWP, or they have a direct access provider. And we should see this number increase as municipal operations move towards the Clean Power Alliance as well. Next, we have natural climate. For our natural climate, we measure the percent of reduction in greenhouse gas emissions below 1990 levels. In the city's 2018 greenhouse gas inventory, we were measuring 29% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. This report can, was conducted prior to the implementation of the Clean Power Alliance. And then in 2022, we conducted another greenhouse gas inventory, where we're measuring at 60% reduction in greenhouse gas inventory, or greenhouse gas emissions. And staff is currently working on the next greenhouse gas inventory. For waste disposal, we measure the percent of waste diverted from the landfill, as well as generation measured by the pounds of waste per capita per day. As of 2018, the city was diverting 81% of waste from the landfill using the state agency's methodology. For waste generation, as of 2018, the city calculated that this, that Santa Monicans are generating 5.3 pounds of waste per day per capita. And as of 2021, Santa Monicans are now generating 3.5 pounds of waste per capita per day. For clean air, we measure the number of days exceeding federal air quality standards. In 2018, we were measuring two days that were exceeding federal air quality standards, and in 2020, we were, we experienced eight days that were exceeding federal air quality standards. 2020 was particularly a harsh year for wildfires that spread across 4.2 million acres in California. As a, as this indicator reflects, Santa Monica's air quality was impacted by those wildfires. For clean water and soil, we measure the amount of trash collected on the beach, as well as days exceeding beach water quality standards. In 2018, the city collected over 600 tons of waste from beach receptacles. And in 2022, the city collected over 700 tons of waste from beach receptacles. While this indicator reflects positively on city operations, it does reflect negatively on visitor behavior and the amount of waste that they're bringing to the beach. And for the number of beach water quality exceedance days, the city was measuring 292 as of the 2021, 2022 water year. This figure is a combined total of five different testing sites, and the peer testing site accounts for 72% of those exceedance days. For healthy food? For healthy food, we measure the sales at farmers' markets, as well as residents' proximity to grocery stores and markets. As of fiscal year 2017, 2021, for fiscal year 2021, 2022, the city generated 22.1 million in gross sales. Even with the impacts of COVID, the farmers' markets have proven to remain resilient. And as of 2021, the city continues to measure at 68% of residents live within a quarter mile of a grocery store or farmer's market. And lastly, we have urban forests. For urban forests, we measure the percent of tree canopy coverage. The 2014 Tree Canopy Coverage Study in 2014 showed that we had a 20.5% canopy coverage. And then the 2020, or the 2020 study conducted showed that we are now at a 20% canopy coverage. In fiscal year 2021, 2022, we had a net positive increase in public trees planted. In most years, the city plants more trees than removes, so this deficit is not on public trees, and so the assumption is that we're losing trees on private properties. As part of the Sustainability Rights Ordinance, the city codified the Sustainable City Plan, and I'm here tonight to present a brief summary of the Sustainable City Plan performance and recommendations for the update to the Sustainable City Plan. Our Chief Sustainability Officer provided a very thorough background of the Sustainable City Plan at the February 14 council meeting, so I'll just quickly remind you of the framework of the Sustainable City Plan. It's made currently of 11 guiding principles and nine goal areas, as you see on the screen. And we update our data on our public sustainable, or Sustainable City Plan Performance Dashboard every two years, and we're currently working on recreating our Performance Dashboard on santamonica.gov. As the city builds dashboards across different departments and divisions, integrating new GIS maps and charts, and updating different data sets, this, moving it to santamonica.gov, we can integrate it easier into our Sustainable City Plan Dashboard. As of today, this website is now live. Just to highlight a couple little bits of each section, a lot of the Resource Conservation section was covered in the Sustainability Rights Report that I just gave, but the dashboard, just to show the format of the dashboard, it's divided into the nine different goal areas and different subsections, and we have tiles that kind of indicate the performance of the indicator, as well as visualizations to show the data over time. As, over the years, data reporting is evolving, and sometimes a single figure doesn't tell the whole story for an entire community. So where possible, we are tracking figures in different regions of the city, as well as different demographics where our data is available. And so this is an example of our public health indicators from the state, and it's showing different figures for different parts of the, of Santa Monica. In the transportation goal area, the city is making significant strides to electrify transportation. City has been increasing both trees and spark, park spaces over the years, but the tree canopy coverage has decreased in private spaces. And this is just to show another example of how we're utilizing maps. This is our tree inventory of the city. Another way that the Performance Dashboard, we're able to integrate with other divisions and departments, this is our affordable housing subsection. We're able to integrate the Affordable Housing Dashboard into our Sustainable City Plan For civic participation and community education, we can look closely at public resources, like information on Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District, and students continue to demonstrate their commitment to education, and we're able to showcase that on our website. And as mentioned, and where possible, we want to look deeper at the data. So this is an example from our Quality of Life section. We're able to look at the demographic breakdown of certain figures like unemployment rate and poverty rate. And then this is just another goal area that we're working on is our arts and culture. This is the creative sector indicators were also impacted by COVID as well. So in continuation with the city's reporting and measuring, I'm here tonight recommending an update to the Sustainable City Plan with indicators and targets for 2030, as well as adding an equity and inclusion guiding principle. This is the fifth edition of the Sustainable City Plan, since the original version was adopted in 1994. Subsequent versions were adopted in 2003, 2006, and 2014. The latest version adopted in 2014 had set targets for 2020, and since we are now in 2023, we want to update our Sustainable City Plan with targets for 2030. Santa Monica recently achieved Platinum-level LEED for City certification. Through the process of certification, staff learned a lot about best, current best practices and how other cities are measuring city sustainability. And so we were able to take what we learned through that process and integrate it into this update of the Sustainable City Plan. With this update, staff is recommending the addition of a 12 guiding principle reaffirming the city's commitment to equity and inclusion. And the updated Sustainable City Plan has a total of 147 indicators. We are recommending 42 indicators to be removed, 45 to be added, and 16 to be renamed. The majority of indicators we're asking to be removed were due to a lack of available data, as well as the discontinuation of certain programs. And the majority of indicators that we're adding, it's due to the availability of new data, as well as the implementation of new programs. And while I, we are here tonight to recommend this administrative task of updating the Sustainable City Plan, it is important to note the significance of this document. As our Chief Sustainability Officer mentioned, we have done so many successes because of this document, and we're setting the stage for future generations. And looking back at what was adopted nine years ago and where we are today, that is really why I'm here tonight. And so that concludes my presentation, so I will, I will leave the recommended action on the screen and open it up for comments and questions.
Right, and I really do want to be disciplined here because we actually, this is a public hearing, so we have public comments. So questions only, save your comments for later. Councilmember Swick.
This, this might be best directed to Shannon, but I might sound a bit like a broken record from, from our last study session, but I'm curious if the city clerk would be able to, to throw the first image that I provided.
Are these questions?
Yes.
Which, we have five slides?
There should be three. The, the third, it looks like.
Oh, I think some of them are duplicated, so I'm not sure.
So I referenced this, yeah, I referenced this sort of list of interventions that was analyzed through the Cal, University of Berkeley program, and, and as it mentioned last time, it, it indicates that of all the potential local interventions we could be making to reduce our climate impact, urban infill housing is, is indicated to be perhaps the most effective on this bar chart, followed closely by commercial efficiency and VMT reduction. I'm having trouble seeing what indicators among the 147 in the draft report really speak to that intervention, especially seeing as it can be particularly powerful, and how we're actually measuring something like that, that seems to be a big part of the puzzle when it comes to actually getting our carbon emissions below to the target level by 2030.
Absolutely. I think it's, it's a, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky to, I think I'll, I'll say it this way. What we try to put in the Sustainable City Plan is the outcome indicator, and then what you'll see in the housing element, what you'll see in the bike action plan, what you'll see in the pedestrian action plan, what you'll see in the, the land use and circulation element, are program-specific outcomes. So the classic example that, that we would use is, we don't put in the Sustainable City Plan the number of compact fluorescent light bulbs we install. We put in the Sustainable City Plan the amount of energy use we'd like to reduce. So here, what you, where you would see the outcome in the Sustainable City Plan is in greenhouse gas emissions reduction, and then the programs that the city would target to achieve the reduction that is established in the plan would be electrification, building electrification, it would be commercial efficiency, it would be housing density. So the program, that would be a program-level metric that would come out in a plan.
Okay. I did see there was a substantial drop in emissions as categorized by the city between the 2018 measure and today. Would it be fair to say, I think if I remember correctly, that that was almost entirely due to less commuter traffic due to a global pandemic?
The most significant impact to our greenhouse gas emissions currently is the transition to 100% green power with the Clean Power Alliance. And then we do see reductions in emissions, vehicle emissions from the pandemic. You, you see that, we originally started to see that with air quality and then the associated emissions reduction.
Just, two more questions. There was a, can I use one other of those slides? I, I can't remember which of the other two, what order it's in, but it has to do with the draft indicators. The one that has to do with housing, is, is that housing? Yeah, yeah, that one. There are different indicators that you did choose to use to, to, to market this, and some, one of them says, you know, percentage of affordable housing produced and percentage of market-rate housing produced. Why are these indicated as percentages and not absolute terms? And what is it, how would that be helpful in its current form as an indicator?
So for housing, we're looking, we're looking at percent, I mean, we could look at actual numbers, but ultimately, actual numbers may, can change on for a number of factors. What we're looking at here is the percentage, so you want to know the total of, of whole, of all the housing produced in the city, what percentage produced at rates that are affordable to low-income communities, and what, what percentage is produced at market rate? And the percentages helps us understand the relationship better, whereas the hard numbers, like 115 versus 97, like that is, that's a program-level metric that the housing, the housing division would track because they want to know who, you know, where is the housing produced? Who is the developer? Who is it serving? Who is those pieces? That's more nuanced. But for us, in terms of the outcomes of a sustainable city, we just want to know the relationship percentage-wise. If 75% of our housing is produced at market rate, or 93% of our housing is produced at affordable rates, then we're going to, then that's going to give us a different understanding than the actual, the hard numbers. The hard numbers are absolutely significant, just in terms of the Sustainable City outcomes, we want to look at that.
So under this metric, you want to increase the percentage of affordable, so if we produced two housing units next year and one was affordable, that would be a big increase in our metric?
I think what you are getting at is, why is there not a percentage target? Is that?
I'm just wondering, I feel like personally, I'm asking if perhaps it would be more useful if we were measuring it in relation to something, say like jobs, as there was a previous metric in 2020, that actually targeted as a target that Santa Monica have a one-to-one housing-to-jobs ratio by 2020, but that is no longer a metric?
Jobs-housing balance is a metric that most performance metric systems have moved away from, simply because the metric itself is really hard, it's, it's really hard to know, do the jobs and the housing align? Like, do we know what the jobs pay? Do we know how much the housing costs? Do we know if the person who has the job here lives in the house here? And so generally, what we're seeing across the reporting framework is a move to this. I agree with you, the jobs-housing balance is an important metric and one that we, it continues to exist in the city, we just didn't codify it here as the top level.
Got it. I guess my question was what the, these percentages have to do with, anything having to do with greenhouse gases, then, when it comes to the percentage of affordable and market-rate housing, if, if it has no absolute relationship to anything else?
These indicators are not specific to emissions reduction. So indicators in our housing section exist because housing in and of itself is an important component of a sustainable city. And then the type of housing that we put in the city and who, who it is, who it serves, that then would have a derivative that is emissions reduction, but the housing in and of itself serves an independent purpose, and that's what, what you see here.
The last thing I'll just say quickly, I'll ask quickly, is there is a metric that I noticed that said median household income in relation to cost of living? That strikes me as a great metric that could actually show quite clearly whether people who work here are more or less able to afford to live here, and yet there's no target set for this.
Yeah, and that's because, you'll see that, that no target is set for a number of these, and the reason for that is that no target is set usually for one of two reasons. One is because it's a new indicator, and so we're collecting the data, and once we collect the data and establish a baseline, we'll come back to you and establish a target. And that happens when, as Amanda mentioned, we are updating a lot of these indicators with best practices. We still need, we need to get the baseline here. We don't want to presuppose what our 2030 target would be until we know what the reality is here on the ground. So that's why you see no target in, in a number of these, in this initial phase. And what you'll notice with the Sustainable City Plan is that we come to you with this framework, and then we generally come back every two or three years and update targets as we've developed baselines or as the best practice for that particular space has evolved. And that's why this is an ongoing conversation. The other reason that sometimes you'll see no target is because a target could give a mixed message, and so an example of that is our household hazardous waste. Do we want more or less household hazardous waste being dropped off at our, at our facility? Well, if we have a target of, you know, annual increase, do we want more people coming to the household hazardous waste facility and properly disposing of their materials? Or does that tell us that there's more house, household hazardous waste in the community? So, so in some places, we, we don't establish a target, we just track so that we can have a nuanced understanding. In other places, there really is a percentage reduction or a date-specific reduction that we, that we know is established and that we're moving towards. In this particular one that you're asking for, it's a new indicator, we're going to collect the data, and then we'll be back to have a conversation about where to establish the target.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Pahr.
Great. Thank you so much, Shannon and Amanda, for a great report and just all your work in general on this important topic. So there was, in a couple places here, there was information that we didn't meet our target or, you know, for the tree canopies, right? Which is really sad. And it indicated that the significant loss of canopy coverage was attributed to loss of trees on private properties. So would you say that the loss of trees on private properties is occurring predominantly because of development or construction? They've just occasion roadmap that establishes pathways to achieve existing building electrification. So can you? because of development or construction? They have to location roadmap that establishes pathways to achieve existing building electrification. So can you briefly explain what the city is proposing with this plan and what that roadmap looks like? And there's a, I have a bunch of questions regarding it. So like, what does that roadmap look like? What buildings, all buildings? And because, a lot of questions, controversy, and so I'm going to throw a bunch of questions at you, and then feel free to answer as you want, but this is what I'm hearing. Commercial buildings, multifamily, residential hardships, fixed incomes. And then what would it cost potentially to convert a 1,500-square-foot home? What, you know, have you done, you know, the analysis for all this? What would it cost to convert a four-unit multifamily building? What are some of the incentives that you've already researched, you know, to do this conversion? And what if I don't do it? What are the ramifications? Because again, you know, in this, in this, I know that this is, these are our dreams to put into place by 2030, but, you know, people are still recovering, people are in different places in their lives, right? With either, you know, with the fixed income, and then when I say fixed incomes, I'm not just talking about our senior population, you know, because someone like me who's got three kids, one in college, and then the two other ones, I'm on a fixed income. So to even think about having to convert, and I was just thinking, okay, just change my appliances out, but then having conversations with people, they're like, okay, well, you live in an old house, right? Built in the 30s? Yeah, do you have a floor unit? Yes, okay, well, then you have to patch that wood floor and.
Can I, can I help you?
Absolutely.
I really appreciate you asking.
They took me down a rabbit hole.
And I really, I really appreciate you asking it, obviously. It's an item that we will bring before you many times. And I think I'd like to answer it by starting at the 30-foot level, if that's okay. So building electrification is one of many things that we have, that were included in our Climate Action Adaptation Plan to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and achieve carbon neutrality by 2050 or sooner. Let's, but I think it's really, let me actually not bury the lead. None of the things that are in that article are required. They're all proposals. They're all proposals on the table, they're not required, and each of them will come to you. But let me tell you that now, in a more nuanced way, let me just relieve you of that anxiety and stress, because I also received many of those calls and emails and have had lots of nuanced conversations. So let's start at the top. Number one, the first thing we are doing is, in our efforts to electrify, is that we are greening our power supply. So that was our move to the Clean Power Alliance and opting our residents and businesses into 100% green power. As I mentioned earlier, single most effective measure in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We electrified green power, we greened our electricity, and then we turned our attention to two efforts, electrifying vehicles and electrifying buildings. Electrifying vehicles is our electric vehicle action plan. It is the electric vehicle infrastructure that we are installing in public spaces around the city, as well as electrification of our big blue bus. So we now have green power and we're electrifying vehicles. Then we turned our attention to electrifying buildings. The first step in electrifying buildings is to address new construction. So we greened the power, then we electrified the vehicles, and then we came to electrify buildings, and we started with new construction. So the gap, there will, there just won't be a gas line.
Right.
Right? So lowers the cost. Significant portion of the cost reduction comes from just not needing to plummet for the natural gas. And then, the hardest nut to crack across California, and certainly in a city like ours that is, that has the building stock that we do, is existing buildings. So knowing that existing buildings are a big issue for us, that they, in Santa Monica, our existing buildings are often renter-occupied, knowing a whole suite of factors that our commercial properties are, you know, businesses that have been affected by COVID, a whole suite of things, we worked with the Rocky Mountain Institute and others to develop a roadmap. So just like when you open a roadmap, and you can see a roadmap of California, and you still have to then decide, what route am I going to take to San Francisco? Am I going to go up the freeway because I want to get there fast? Am I going to take the coast? Am I, do I want to go through wine country? Like, those are all questions that you would ask yourself, and then you would choose the route that you're going to take. That's what we produced in our roadmap. It's the suite of programs and policies that are a possibility to get us to our building electrification goals. They are not adopted policy. They are, they are a suite of proposals that our office will meet with stakeholders, will meet with residents, will meet with property owners, will meet with AGLA, will meet with, you know, renters, will meet with construction workers, will meet with, you know, property owners, will meet with architects and designers, and then we'll, through that robust public engagement process, we will hear all these concerns. I'm concerned about the building stock. I'm concerned about there being appropriate trade, certified trades. I'm concerned, I want to make sure that there will be incentives to offset the cost to property owners and managers and renters and owners on fixed incomes. Like, all of those factors will come to us. We will craft a policy and associated programs, and then we'll bring them to you. And then you'll, and we'll bring that proposal to you. You'll have a chance to weigh in on them. You'll adopt the policy, and then it will become the.
Potentially a requirement.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And so I think what happened, and we've had some conversation with reporters, as you have, I think that there was just a moment where the suite of options that were laid out in the roadmap were read as if they were the elements of an adopted plan, and they aren't. So please, thank you for asking, please rest assured.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
That layman explanation, even I understood it. So I appreciate that.
And I also, I did want to say that we did make some graphic design changes to the document itself. We highlighted input in a bubble, that they were draft and really trying to make it clear to people that these are the suite of possibilities that we'll work on together to address the issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Brock.
So, wait, I need you. I want you to, I know, no, no, it's not that I want you, I just, I wanted you to, I know this is redundant, I want you to repeat the one statement about it's a draft plan for electrification, and there are many steps still to come. I'm correct in what I just said, right?
Can you make that in the form of a question?
What is the adopted electrical electrification plan for Santa Monica? Or is it all theoretical at this point?
At this point, we have adopted electrification for new, electrification requirements for new construction. We are in the process of developing electrification, beginning the process to discuss electrification for existing buildings.
How will that differ or align with the state requirements?
We will, we will comply with state requirements for building electrification, which are coming. I do think it's important for people to realize that in the last few years, the state has passed significant efforts towards building electrification, and that's part of what was done in that, in the roadmap, was trying to telescope to interested groups what is happening around electrification for existing buildings.
I was in a Southern California Association of Governments meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there was a lot of discussion about electrifying, and more discussion about the state having to provide subsidies and help to individual cities to get there, because so many millions of people have their gas appliances that, of course, A, last forever, and B, they're wed to them, you know? And older people especially, were told by their parents and grandparents, never cook with electricity, right? Because gas will be even heat, and you hear that from restaurants all the time. So I just want to say, do we believe in the city that as we move toward electrification, I'm getting to a question to satisfy you?
I just want to remind you, we have members of the public waiting to speak.
Do we believe that we will be able at some point to provide subsidies to get people to abandon natural gas?
Yes, there exists currently robust incentives for electrification, and I anticipate as the state ratchets down on the requirements that those will increase.
I want to go to something Councilmember Para mentioned too, but our urban forest, because that was, when we did the previous study, I was on the Recreation and Parks Commission. And I recall that at that time, we looked at what our canopy was and thought that in 2014, we were at 20.5, which I thought as Chair of the Commission at that time was insufficient. I looked at Los Angeles, which was 21%. Actually, it's dropped, but it's now at 21%. I looked at New York City at 22% and said, these places are huge, yet they have more trees than Santa Monica. How do we, we're down to a paltry 12%, whether it's public or private, we've dropped tremendously. What can we do as a city? What can we do as elected officials? What can our city staff do to spur the growth? That's a good way of putting it. You know, of an urban forest in our city and remind residents how incredibly important that tree canopy is to reduce the need for air conditioning, to reduce the need for heat, to help out our environment.
I mean, the value of urban trees are innumerable. It's, they're remarkably beneficial. I think the question you're asking is exactly why we come here with our Sustainable City Report. It's because we come here and we say, hey, we've established this target for our urban forest, and we're not moving, not only we're not moving towards our target, we're not achieving our goal, we're not moving towards our target. And so what you're asking is the important question, what do we do about this? We have, obviously, the city took a stab at that with the private tree ordinance. I think there are other potential factors. I think this moment, though, is exactly the one that we, that gets us to performance in the future, is that we ask that question, and then, you know, you let us know, like, hey, we would like you to come back with programs or policies to address this outcome.
Yes, I would.
Well, and that is, that is the purpose of this.
And I've seen this throughout, where we've looked at the metrics in so many areas through this really comprehensive, amazing report. And I think it gives us great new baselines to look at, and then say in each area, how do we overachieve?
Yeah.
How do we raise the bar each time we do one of these reports? Because success is not, for instance, tree canopy dropping from 20.5% to 12%. I mean, that's a disaster. How do we, how do we change that? How do we start moving up again? So I would, I would love for city staff.
I would love for you to stick to questions right now, and you can make comments later. We really do have public people who've been sitting here waiting.
Anyway, that is, that is my main emphasis.
And you can make those comments when we get into comments. Councilmember Dela Torre.
No, there isn't any today. Really appreciate all the work that you all are doing. I mean, obviously, we're very proud of all the work and having the city be a leader, you know, in these efforts, and I think that we're not going to retreat from any of that. I'm glad that we're clarifying, you know, I've received a lot of the same questions. In fact, one good idea that I heard from one of our residents was sort of like doing a pilot project on electrification of buildings and starting with, like, Community Corporation of Santa Monica has some buildings, you know, and then we can start seeing sort of what the total cost would be, you know, to make that transition, so we kind of really understand, you know, what's going on. I think you all have something to say about this pilot, maybe?
Yeah, I would just say that Community Corporation was the first recipient of our pilot building electrification grant, and that that building is now open. I don't have the, I wasn't fully prepared to talk in detail about building electrification tonight, but we can, through the update to council, we can give you an exact number of the number of buildings they have that are electric and the outcomes of the first pilot project that we did. But we think pilot, tying building electrification with the work of Community Board is really important as well.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. One thing that struck me, and one of the tasks that we have today is, you know, sort of to add the, I guess it was a 13th element around equity and social inclusion and racial justice, and, you know, as we approved our five pillars, you know, for this upcoming budget. And I'm thinking about sort of that lens, right? And so what are the actions, policies that we want to be focused on, you know, to achieve goals in that area? There was one graph that I really, I'm glad that you showed in terms of like cancer rates and asthma rates, and, you know, I've known this from just studying this issue, you know, the particulate matter emanating from the freeway, for example, affects not all residents the same, you know? And residents, you know, in close proximity to the freeway are going to be impacted more. And we see this throughout the county of Los Angeles, right? So I'm really interested in that, and how we might be able to lead in that area, you know? And I have some ideas myself in terms of how we might be able to even get some support from a statewide level, you know, to create funds, you know, to put in, you know, devices, there's technology now that exists that we might be able to not eliminate the problem, but definitely within the living environment, sort of mitigate some of that, you know, with purification, air purification systems and filters and so forth. So is there any, anything that you can tell us along those, that question of how, you know, what actions, policies, programs, you know, are we working on, or is staff preparing for us to sort of focus on more, as you're asking us this question, to, you know, to include this 13th sort of pillar around equity and racial justice?
Yes, I actually went with Delena Benakama a couple weeks ago to talk about how we can work together, our offices work together to, for the Sustainable City Plan, and I know they're working on an equity plan too, so how can those two plans coincide and reflect same indicators? And I had the question to her and Paula, like, what do you want to see from our office, and how can we work together? So I think forming that good relationship with them and aligning our plans is a great first step.
Yeah, I think that's great. You had something else to say?
I just wanted to add very specific to what you were just asking relative to the air quality. Is that, is that exact issue is why we started to add in this demographic information? And so when we start to add in the demographic information and then pull more and more data from Cal and Virus Screen, it will help us to see more nuanced understanding of who is being affected most, who's most highly impacted by, you know, these issues. And so I think the places that you'll see them most acutely is around air quality. And so we did take note of your recommendation when I was here in February about looking at HEPA filter pilot programs or incentives to place those, as well as our Purple Air Program, which are indoor air quality monitors that we, that we have provided to residents throughout the city. So looking at programs like that, that really do understand that there are communities that are more impacted, particularly, you know, by the presence of the freeway.
Yes, great, thank you. I'm glad that we have that, that we have that thinking and that approach. The last thing I just want to talk about, you know, there is a great opportunity for us, and I know you've mentioned education and, you know, looking at just, you know, the students at Santa Monica High School, for example, that these are some of the most organized clubs, you know, Team Marine, and there's, you know, just a lot of clubs that exist, and the students at the high school, they're just very passionate, and I think we can just do so much, like, we can harness their power, you know, and their voice to be more effective in how we educate, do outreach, you know, everything, you know, everything from creating videos, podcasting, I mean, there's so much, there's a lot of technology and social media platforms that are accessible to our youth, where we can engage them in this process. them in this process. And I know that there's, you know, like a, what do you call it, like a poster making competition, you know? All those things matter, you know, and getting young people involved, I think is really a huge resource that we need to tap into. So anything that we can do to partner with our local school district, you know, to lead those types of initiatives and in particular with Santa Monica High School. And I was mentioned, I was mentioned today now that the, the school district is moving right next door, you know, to City Hall. There might be some opportunities that in the past we probably didn't envision that we can bring forward. So, and I saw that's noted there, but I just want to encourage that we deliver some metrics in that area.
Yeah, and you all are going to get a chance to comment. So I think we can now open the public comment. Ms. Newsom, thank you, and I appreciate the public for waiting.
Yes, Jerry Rubin and Denise Barton.
Thank you very, very much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers, city staff, fellow Santa Monicans. Well, that was a very honorable report, Shannon, Amanda. I remember when the Sustainable City Plan started nearly three decades ago in 1994. It's fantastic. It's always been a high priority. Even when it wasn't listed, I guess people felt, well, it goes without saying, we don't have to list it. But I think it is crucial that it be listed and always be listed. And as long as we're gradually, maybe a little faster than gradually, start moving along, because that's a direction that's needed, that's the direction that has to be taken. That's the direction all the students that spoke at the priorities meeting gave. So if we're thinking about the future, this is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing we're doing. I'm glad you brought up about the trees. I think every one of the council members here, the city staff, understand that it's not only trees on public property, but even more so on private property that are causing the downgrade. I think if Matthew Wells was here tonight, he would tell you that. So the sooner the better. We can start working on a lot that's already been done by Peter James here when he gave a presentation to the Urban Forest Task Force and to what was the Environmental Task Force, which is now a commission, and they voiced their support. The sooner we can get that, the better. That's going to help the environment. All I know is that the city is doing a great job. I think everybody understands that we're a leader in sustainability. And I'm glad I remember when art was added as a part of a sustainable city.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Thank you. Ms. Barton?
And I didn't tell you, the city's sustainable plan claiming you care so much about the environment, yet you invested ESG rock by scandal through greenwashing things that are bad for the environment and people. You promote wind farms. So how many blades have come off wind turbines? And how many turbines have fallen over? How many birds have been killed by wind turbines and more specifically bald eagles? Or what about the use of sonar being used in planning for the wind farms in the Atlantic? You know where all the whales are washing up dead? You also promote solar panels, which are hazardous waste for disposal. So would you still be planning to send them to landfills or dump them in poor nations? Here, it's also worth noting that both wind farms and solar panels are destroying the fragile desert environment. You promote recycled water but are unwilling to acknowledge that at least 4,000 pharmaceutical medication and personal care products that current filtration and treatment programs have been unable to remove from recycled water. I also have to question some of the indicators being removed, such as wouldn't removing potable versus non-potable be like removing safe versus unsafe? Or what about removing the affordable housing for special needs? Are you trying to cancel the disabled out or to show your true disdain for the disabled, just like you've done to me tonight on this item? And it's being done due to a lack of data. Well, that's true. The housing authority isn't doing their job. So you don't care about people or the environment. You don't care about birds, including bald eagles or whales or the fragile desert environment. You don't care about putting hazardous waste into landfills and would admit recycling water can be harmful. So with so much harm being done, what in this environment do you really care about? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Are there any other speakers, Ms. Newsom?
No, that is all.
All right, then we'll close the public comment. We are now into council member comments. Councilmember De La Torre, do you have additional comments? All right. Councilmember Terosis?
Thank you. Oh, I don't have, I'm just going to make some comments. So first of all, I wanted to-
We're in comments now, so you can rest until someone throws a question in your
So I wanted to say thank you. I think the city manager can attest, I was very excited about this presentation and was eagerly looking at your dashboard for the last several weeks. So thanks so much. A couple of kind of comments. In our 2020 Sustainable City Plan target, we had 100%, we wanted to have 100% of residents living within a quarter mile of a grocery store. Obviously, access to like safe, affordable, healthy food is really important. Is the reason that we only reached 68, so I guess this is a question, but I was reserving it. Is the reason that we reached 68% not the 100% because of like the north of Montana residents? Or is it because of like Ocean Park? Or is it because we have, we're getting rid of a Vons? I mean, like, what's the reasoning behind the 68%? Because that one seems pretty off target.
So the map that was recently done, it was mostly, I think, the north of Montana, there wasn't, it's a lot of residential area, so there wasn't commercial area for grocery stores. I think that's where a lot of the buffers didn't reach. And I know we're working with new GIS mapping with ISD staff right now to look at more walkability of a quarter mile, whereas before we were looking at like just an aerial buffer. And so I think walkability might stretch a little bit further.
Okay. So it sounds like it's predominantly just because of the heavy residential that we have.
Yeah, I think-
And so that, I guess that makes it sound like 100% was never really realistic.
It is our goal to have 100%, but whether or not we can achieve it, it's just-
I would just say in comparison to the rest of the county, a quarter mile of a grocery store is pretty phenomenal. But of course, we want everyone to be able to walk to their grocery store if they want to.
I actually was going to make that comment. The standard metric is a half mile.
Yeah.
And so we, this is part of that aggressive but achievable and a conversation that we had about a decade ago and just really wanting to prioritize that, that transition for your day-to-day life. Like, so one thing is transitioning your commute to, you know, a greener option, but really looking at those, you know, those closer to home moves. 100% of Santa Monica residents do live within a half mile of a grocery store. But the quarter mile is where that, more of that aggressive than achievable element of our target setting comes. And it's really just to drive us towards higher level outcomes that promote walking and biking for shopping.
Okay. And then another comment I had, I was just looking at the data.sustainablesm.org and I've been looking at it and I know that things have changed there, but I would love to see us beef up the employment section a little bit more, especially with the emphasis, I think I mentioned this at the planning session on Saturday, the emphasis at the state and federal level on green jobs and how we're defining green jobs, how we're creating. And that doesn't mean jobs that are like solely working in green energy. It's like, how are you using climate resilient technology to perform your job? And how are we getting folks into jobs that pay the quality wage? So for example, on the dashboard, I think there's just some information left to be desired. And the unemployment number seems really high compared to, like, we have, it's a 6.3% unemployment, but then it's only for 2020. Perhaps we could just talk at a further time about updating that section. And then finally, I would just say, as I sound like a broken record, I think it would be really fantastic to have a top line dashboard where we actually report out our impact metrics. So just like you were mentioning to Jesse, you know, we're measuring GHG reduction. We're not necessarily measuring like how many units of housing we've produced. Maybe just a few of these like top line metrics that you've identified as a part of the Sustainable Santa Monica on a, like, the housing dashboard's great, but it's very wonky. Like, how do we get to like, when you go to the homepage, some clear outcomes and perhaps like a longitudinal analysis of how we're doing over time, not just a point in time count? Those are just some suggestions. But again, I'm like super impressed and really into this. Yeah, maybe you're going to say you're doing that.
No, I was just going to say you're speaking my language. And that we have looked at some of the rose diagrams, which seem to be what people are going to promote top level metrics. And I think you'll start to see that in our reporting.
And hopefully, we can push that out to the residents. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great job.
Mayor Protem Negrete?
I don't really have a question, but also wanted to comment on all the great work that you guys do and continue to be, to do as leaders. But I'm, as somebody who's a small business owner myself, I find myself in a commercial lease, which, you know, is triple net. So we pay for all the passers' property tax and everything. And I don't have control over, you know, oddly enough, I have to pay for it and have to maintain. But small businesses don't have a lot of control in terms of like, for example, I would like to take out this, the plants that are there because there's a leaky faucet that's constantly, pipe, I'm sorry, that has to be underwatered all the time. I just hope that we're looking at programs when we talk about sustainability and small businesses and diversity and equity. I think that all, I know you guys have this new added, to add the DEI portion to it. I think we need to look at small businesses too, because oftentimes, you know, we would like to participate, but we don't have a lot of control. And maybe there's incentives that can be offered, both to the landlord and the business itself. So I was looking through, and maybe I missed something, but I didn't see a lot of expanded discussion around that. So I hope you guys can consider that because I don't think anybody's not on a triple net lease in Santa Monica. And we have to pay, obviously, we're paying everything and we're impacted. I mean, I know that when I had to replace the water heater, for example, the original water heater was to service apartment buildings, which are no longer on top. And I wanted to replace it with something much smaller because obviously, you know, we don't need showers. And I was precluded from doing that and it was a whole big deal, you know, in order for me to go smaller. So just, you know, things like that, thinking about the small business renter, I guess you could say, and thinking of ways to incentivize. And then secondly, also, there's a great, I think they're a nonprofit, or a small organization that's started by two women that have, they came into my business and went around and spent a few days there and gave us tips for free on how to be more sustainable, just with our day-to-day operations, whether it be from how many times people are using the sink in the kitchen to our paper waste and recycling. And I know you guys offer some of those services, but you're short-staffed and I, I don't know how much you guys engage with other, you know, organizations in the city.
Do you know the name of the organization?
Yeah, I know the woman because she's a friend of mine, Laurel, and she just went back as a second. I am, actually, I'm supposed to connect you guys, so I will connect you with her. They've been going around small businesses specifically to help those of us that don't have like, you know, access or finances to hire a company to come in and do that extensive work.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Schwick?
Thank you. I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the data. It's amazing amount that you've assembled here and it, the website's much sort of nicer than it was before. And I'm looking at the page that says RC5 greenhouse gas emissions. And there's, it breaks it down by sector, I believe. And I'm just trying to understand, you mentioned the Green Power Alliance. When did, you said that was the biggest effect that we've had. And when did that go into effect? And was that, that would be mainly reflected in our residential sector, I believe?
So that went into effect for residential was February 2019. And then for businesses, it was May 2019.
Okay, so then, so I see numbers, I see like 79,000, 97,000. I see a dramatic reduction in there, which I see you're talking about. But I also see in transportation, I see 617,000 and then a drop from 19 to 20. And from 2019, it says 617,000 some odd, I guess, is it tons? I'm not sure, to 342,000 in 2020? That strikes me as the largest drop that we saw between those two years. Is that not correct?
So these figures were pulled from our 2020 greenhouse gas inventory. So that's a little bit more detail and explanation of, but I think as staff works on the next greenhouse gas inventory, we'll really see what were COVID impacts with transportation and what is actually from Clean Power Alliance.
Okay, yeah, because I see, you know, it says in 2019, we were perhaps at 32, 36% I guess, reduction. And in 2020, it says we got to 60%. And it seems to me like the majority of that, I know you're, I see the Clean Power Alliance and the way that the clean energy sources for residential and commercial were helpful, but it still strikes me that the largest drop in our CO2 emissions came from the transportation sector. And I just fear that that number is not going to stay that, that far advanced unless we want to stay in this state of perpetual pandemic. So I guess my comment is only that I think we need to be careful when we think about how far along we are in these goals and not use the pandemic as a baseline in terms of maybe our progress. And specifically, you know, when it comes to that transportation sector, I think you mentioned at one point that one of the trickiest things is the behavioral change, which you don't, you know, you can provide electric car chargers, but you can't, at this stage, make someone buy an electric car. And similarly, or get out of their car and use other forms of transit. But, you know, at risk of sounding like a perpetual broken record, I'd say that the only chance of behavioral change is if someone has the opportunity to access another form of transit. And the closer they might live to their work, by far, the better the chance that they would be able to change their behavior in that sense. And I just, I'd love to see the numbers stay as low as they are, but I fear that as the world goes back to normal, they won't. And that's just something I think I would want us to keep aware of at this time.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I have a few comments. There may even be a question or two in there. So I want to follow up a little bit on what Councilmember Terosis did, speaking about the proximity to grocery stores. You know, I think one of the things that we've talked about has been that even within our R1 neighborhoods, having small neighborhood grocery stores makes a lot of the day-to-day necessities for families much easier. You know, it may not be that you're going to go and do your big weekly shopping, but if you need milk or you need cereal because your husband ate it all, or that sort of thing. I mean, so there's not really a question in there, but it seems to me, and this is sort of where I'm going with a lot of my comments, is that we have this great plan. And this plan is incredibly comprehensive. And as you mentioned, Mr. Perry, you know, obviously, for example, with regard to infill housing being the greatest way for us to have a positive or negative, depending on how you want to characterize it, impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. But we sort of say, we want to do it over here, and then over here, we're going to have housing policy. And so one of the comments I want to make is, we just adopted on Saturday, kudos to everyone who was there and helped, sustainability and climate change, we embrace those as really fundamental city values. And I'm just wondering if it doesn't make sense, and this may be way more complicated. So I'm just throwing this out here as an idea. So for example, we, it used to be when you got a staff report that had an expenditure of money, it didn't say where the money was coming from. And then we said, well, gee, we don't know where this money's coming from. So now every staff report has, this is the budget, this is the budget where it's coming from. And if you want to trace back and see what that budget looks like, you're free to do that. Does it make sense, and this is maybe a more long-term thing and staff will probably set my house on fire after I say this, but if we're going to have this fundamental value of sustainability, does it really not make sense when we're talking about housing policy or we're talking about transportation policy? I know Mr. King is going to come and make some significant proposals regarding Big Blue Bus, that we not incorporate into that, not just this will be good transportation policy, but this is also good environmental policy and have it be, and here's your list of, and I know it says draft here, but here's your list of metrics and here are the metrics that policy is going to address. Because I think for us as a council, if we really do care about the environment, then it's important, whether we're addressing housing policy or transportation policy or water policy, whatever it is, to know how is that moving these metrics forward. And so for example, if we go, gosh, I really don't want to do that, but someone says, gee, if you do that, this is going to move that environmental needle very significantly. That's a conversation to be had. But if you're not in the room and we don't know how that fits into that, that whole conversation gets lost. So that is just a- So that is just a comment for staff to think about. Is there a way, when we get policy brought to us, to incorporate that to how this helps move this plan forward? And, you know, there's tons of metrics here. And I know that's complicated, but I just want to throw that out there. Because I think, for example, as we talk about zoning policy, just to throw this out there again, does it make sense as we look at our zoning policy to say, we want to amend our zoning ordinance to allow small neighborhood markets, you know, we could define that however we wanted to, within the R1 zones, so that people could walk to a neighborhood market? I don't know. That's a policy decision for us to make. But if you came to us and said, we're proposing that, and here's why it would have a positive impact on the environment, I would want to know that. So I'm throwing that out there. The other thing about, we, a lot of talk about the tree canopy. It's, and, and I don't know, I may have dreamt this, so correct me if I'm wrong. I know I saw, or I shouldn't say I know, I think I saw somewhere that actually the greatest loss of tree canopy was in our R1 neighborhoods as those properties were getting developed. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's not the development of multifamily housing or what we're seeing on Lincoln Boulevard, we can talk about that later. But what's happening is as R1 lots are being developed, that's where we're losing a lot of our tree canopy, which, by the way, I support a private tree ordinance. But I just, you know, I think it's important because when we talk about development, people are thinking big, square, silver boxes on Lincoln Boulevard. That's not what's taking out the trees. What's taking out the trees is the redevelopment on R1 lots. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just, I just want to make that clear because I think when people say development, they envision different things in their mind. And, and one thing that's really near and dear to my heart is our Vision Zero policies. And that's certainly incorporated here. We want to see a downward trend in all sorts of accidents because what we have seen during COVID, in, I was having this discussion with someone just this morning, that one of the reasons we see an increase in traffic deaths is because COVID reduced traffic. So people are traveling faster on the streets. So when you, when you were enmeshed in bumper-to-bumper traffic, you're going five miles an hour. You hit someone at five miles an hour, they might get hurt, but chances are they're going to survive. But even if you reduce traffic, and now someone's on our city streets going 15, 20, 25 miles an hour, they're feeling better, they're moving faster, but God forbid, they hit a pedestrian, that pedestrian may not survive. We know that death from automobile versus pedestrian incidents exponentially increases depending on how fast the vehicle is going. Is that right? And, and it, I mean, there are other factors. For whatever reason, vehicles are getting heavier, more people are driving SUVs. And we actually, the electrification of cars is making them even heavier because the electric engine, motor, I guess is what it is, non-engine, the electric motor plus the battery capacity actually makes the vehicle heavier. Is that also true? So, so I really, this is one of those issues where I think there's a really tremendous opportunity to see the intersection between what we want to do in terms of our Sustainable City Plan, but also what we want to do and just, you know, we talk about clean and safe Santa Monica. I think one of the things about being safe is being able to walk or ride your bike or use a non-automobile form of transportation and not worry that you're going to get run over. And, and I guess the only question or comment I have, and again, I'm not sure there really is a thing there, is we know that the Secretary of Transportation has made this a real focus of his policies. And I suggest that there will probably be grants coming out in this regard for regaining, I can't imagine the Secretary Buttigieg would be going all over the country every time he speaks publicly, talking about reducing automobile deaths and then not releasing money for grants to do this. So I guess, I know we're grossly understaffed, and I know it's really hard to, to follow these things. But it seems to me that's a prime area where we could probably qualify for some really impactful grants. And I use the word impactful, and I hate that word. I apologize. But, but some really important grants that we could use because I do think we are a very committed Vision Zero city. We're a relatively small city, unlike city of LA or even some cities that may have a similar population, but a larger geographic footprint. And so there's so much we can do that it just seems to me that that's a particular area where we know there's going to, or there's likely to be very generous grants, and we should just follow up on that. The last comment I want to make is, you talked about air quality standards and then said probably not meeting our targets had to do with the fact that there are wildfires, which are completely beyond our control. Thank God those were not started or actually burning in Santa Monica. Are there things we can do, and we talked about HEPA filters with regard to traffic, but we know, for example, older folks, especially people who may have long COVID now or having long-term respiratory effects, are there things we can do that might relate more, again, to our infrastructure, whether it's, you know, and again, this is not something we have a lot of money lying around, but there might be grants for triple pane windows, indoor filtering, that sort of thing. Because sadly, I don't think we're going to see a reduction in the number of wildfires. And I was reading an article yesterday that said, oh, this rain is great, except what it's causing is this massive greening of the state. And when the rain stops, all those grasses and things are going to dry out, and they're going to be primo fuel for wildfires two, three years down the road. You know, they'll dry out, they'll get brown, and boom. And so I really think that one of the things we probably, you know, maybe we have a little bit of time here, but thinking about, again, are there ways that we can insulate our residents, our people who are patronizing our businesses, even our government buildings, you know, because I do think that we can't control the fires, and I think everyone's predicting seeing more. So those are my comments, along with, I think, my colleagues' gratitude for what was obviously a comprehensive report. But no one has made a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion? All right. Councilmember Terosus, take it away.
I move to accept the information item. And just going back up to the staff recommendation, sorry. We, so we've, we've held the public hearing, and so I moved that we adopt an updated Sustainable City Plan with indicators and targets for 2030 and add an equity and inclusion guiding principle, and also adopt a finding of no possibility of significant effect pursuant to Section 1506, 1B, Sub B3 Common Sense Exemption, and Section 15308, Actions for Protection of the Environment under CEQA guidelines.
All right. Moved by Terosus, seconded by Negrete. Councilmember De La Torre, are you? All right. So seeing no further requests to speak, Ms. Newsom, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Councilmember Par?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. Our passage unanimously seven to zero with the gratitude of the entire council.
Thank you so much. Great job.
It is 11:37, so I'll need a motion to continue past 11 if we want to consider any new business.
I'll make a motion to move past 11.
Second.
All right. Moved by Negrete.
Limit, limit comments to one minute each.
We're only here as long as you all want to speak. Moved by Negrete, seconded by Swick. We can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. We're staying here past 11. All right. We can move on to the next item.
Item 14A, adoption of a resolution for concealed carry weapon license process.
Good evening. Yes, we're still in the evening. We haven't quite crossed into the morning. Thank you, Officer McGee, for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council, staff. It's an honor to be here in front of you guys tonight. My name is Scott McGee, and I'm a sergeant with your police department. CCW licenses, what does that mean? A concealed carry weapons license allows a, a citizen illegally carry a pistol, revolver, or other firearm capable of being concealed upon their person. And a qualified Santa Monica resident can, can be approved to carry a weapon concealed upon their person through a process that is determined almost entirely by the California Penal Code. And a license to carry can be issued by the county, the sheriff of a county, or the chief of a municipal police department pursuant to the Penal Code, such as the chief of our department. Now, state law allows for a person to be issued a permit if they meet certain requirements. And a few of them are listed here. They must be a resident of the city, resident in Santa Monica, be of good moral character, and complete a firearm training and a qualification. They also have to be at least 21 years of age, be free from criminal convictions that will disqualify the applicant. They have to pay their associated fees and provide proof of ownership or registration of that firearm. So how do we get here? Effective March 1 of 2017, it was a, the Santa Monica Police Department's policy to refer all CCW license applications to the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department would approve or deny licenses based on criteria outlined in the Penal Code, including demonstrating good cause. LASD's policy, however, was that CCW license applications did not show good cause if the license was merely for personal convenience of the applicant. And according to their policy in California Supreme Court, good cause shall only exist if there is convincing evidence of a clear and present danger to life or of great bodily harm to the applicant, spouse, or dependent child, which cannot be adequately dealt with by existing law enforcement resources and which danger cannot be reasonably avoided by alternative measures, and which danger would be significantly mitigated by the applicant's carrying of a concealed firearm. On June 23 of 2022, the Supreme Court in Bruin issued a six to three ruling, which struck down a New York State CCW license statute stating that New York's proper cause requirement violates the Fourteenth Amendment and that it prevents law-abiding citizens with ordinary self-defense needs from exercising their right to keep and bear arms. Consequently, the California Attorney General has stated that the Penal Code's similar good cause requirement is likely unconstitutional as well and should not be enforced. And that was issued in a memo that went to the California Chiefs Association. On July 7, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's and Undersheriff's provided guidance to LA County Police Chiefs by citing Bruin ruling and anticipating the increase in CCW application submissions, that they were, they were essentially exceeding their capability to keep up. So they asked law enforcement agencies throughout the county to provide staffing to LASD CCW units, assist in processing. Otherwise, only first-time applications for those who reside within LASD's contract cities or unincorporated communities would be processed effective August 1 of 2022. So on that date, LASD discontinued processing first-time applications for agencies throughout LA County. So it was about 44 agencies, including Santa Monica. So that led us to having to do, to build out a process and start our own research. So we began reviewing and researching CCW license requirements, established policies, best practices across law enforcement agencies in LA, Orange County, again, the sheriff's departments, Torrance, Beverly Hills, Murrieta, and Orange County Sheriff's Department. So various agencies had established CCW units in place while others, like us, needed to develop them. So those with established units accepted paper applications and reported delays in processing time due to understaffing and no streamlined database or electronic method for case processing. An example of that was the sheriff's department's CCW unit application. Their caseload was hundreds and hundreds behind. And last I checked, they were probably about a year behind in processing applications. And per the Penal Code, the licensing authority has up to 90 days from the initial application to provide written notice to the applicant indicating if their license has been approved or denied. So given that LST was no longer going to be processing applications for us, we sought external vendors to establish a streamlined CCW process that would enable us to provide a timely, high level of service for our residents without causing a major impact on our staffing workload. We looked at two different ones, Per Medium and MyCCW. Per Medium is a, is a software as a service, and they collect information online, process payments, set appointments. But they did not provide staffing to help with the background, with interviews, with customer service, and other things that could help expedite the process for, with our own department staffing, but also to, to provide that type of high-level service for residents of Santa Monica. So in addition, what is MyCCW doing? For one, here is a, is a cost-saving approach per applicant. If we were to staff like a full-time CCW unit, each applicant, each applicant would take about 10 hours of work. And for a full-cost recovery, you're looking at about a little over $1,000 here. With using MyCCW, which they have an initial application fee of $398, plus the full-cost recovery of two hours for a background investigator, because there isn't work that we have to do on our end, that would be $219. I'd like to point out some of the things that MyCCW is helping us, would be helping us out and providing us with is, they have staffing. They have experienced post-certified background investigators. They have an electronic web platform, so our residents can apply online, upload all their documents, and have an ongoing communication with their support staff. They conduct background checks and interviews with each applicant. They have support staff during the process that walks each applicant along through the entire process. Of course, that would alleviate the impact on our own department staffing. And another big point I'd like to point out here is this, using MyCCW, they have a maximum 90-day process before it's, it's complete. And they've done it in as little as 42 days. Now it's about 60. And you compare that to a lot of other agencies out there, that is several months, if not a year faster than what the sheriff's department is able to do. And then what they end up doing, they put a final packet together, and they submit it to the police department for review. They, MyCCW does not determine whether or not someone gets a, gets a license or not that rests within the licensing authority. In this case, it would be Chief Batista. So what does this application process look like? They, the residents would apply online. There would be a link on our department website. They complete the DOJ application. Again, it would be online. They upload all their documents that's required. They also get a welcome email and a, and a CCW license request packet that contains information about conditions, agreements, the live scan service, and firearm safety course information. That, that application gets reviewed within seven to 10 business days. Then they schedule a interview with a background investigator, and they go over the required documents. Then there's a thorough background, but not limited to firearms registrations, driver's license checks, local and county law enforcement contacts, obviously a warrant or warrant information. And there's a follow-up with three character references. And within all that, our background investigator would participate as well in doing a check on our local records within our system, because MyCCW doesn't have access to that, and then sharing the information that comes back from the DOJ through a live scan. The other thing they would go through here is a psychological review, a completion of a firearm safety course that is a minimum of eight hours and a maximum of 16 hours, the way the law is currently written. And, and, and during this, they would demonstrate if they have the ability to safely, obviously safely handle their weapon. They have to go through a qualification course, and, and the range master there inspects it and signs off, and signs off on the training and verifying that they trained with the firearm that is on their application. that is on their application. And then after that goes a final review. Like I said, we review the packet, and then we would make the decision. The applicant gets notified. And when they come in to get their license, they would sign an additional agreement. They would have a last interview with department staff, and then they would agree to terms and then go pay their final fees and be issued a license card. So what we are doing here today is adopting a resolution, which is Attachment A, establishing certain concealed carry weapon license fees for new applicants, renewal applications, and mending license, and the amended licenses, setting a maximum and current fee, and authorizing charging the fee as state law changes. So we propose to set the initial fee at $398 and an administrative fee, again, that two hours of internal work by a background investigator at $219 for a total of $617. The California Penal Code currently is setting caps for amended license, renewal fees, and psych exam fees at $150. In the future here, with Senate Bill 2, is expected to be voted by the legislature this year, which is likely to remove or modify the existing caps that you see there. So it's expected that the amended license fee, the renewal fee, and the psych exam fees, at least the caps will be removed from that. In this, also in the renewal fee section here, you'll see in that first box there that the $25, that is the cap, to give you an example of what the Penal Code is currently setting, even though MyCCW would charge $348. It's expected in two years that that would be removed. The other fees on here, besides the application and the SMPD background review fee, those other fees, like the LiveScan, the DOJ, the psych review, the firearm course, all of that is set by the third party, and we don't necessarily set those fees. And in this slide here, it gives you an example of the total cost incurred by the city. So this first chart here at top, you have the $398 from ICCW, the $150 for a psych evaluation, and then the PD review at $219 for a total of $767 for what the total cost incurred by the city would be. And the proposed fees would bring that number to zero for costs subsidized by the city. Going ahead two years upon renewals, if there is no change in the law, then there will be a $432 subsidized cost borne by the city. And that includes the MyCCW fee and the one hour, that $109 there is a one-hour PD review for a background investigator per renewal. So the approval recommended action would not have been, having it this way, the approval recommendation actually would not have an estimated impact to the city annually since the fees are covered by the applicant. And again, like I talked about, the city would not process renewals until 2025, and it is expected that state law will remove or modify the fee caps on renewals. But the proposed resolution authorizes us to be able to charge up to $457 should that state law change. And I imagine there may be a couple of questions.
There might be. Thank you, Sergeant McGee. Councilmember Swick.
Thank you so much for that. This may be for the city attorney, I'm not sure, but at the beginning, there was obviously talk of a good cause sort of requirement that we previously had and a subsequent court ruling in New York, and then some advice from the Attorney General of California. Is that legally binding that we drop that clause based on the advice from the Attorney General? How does that work?
Yes, it would be unconstitutional to enforce that provision now.
Even though, okay.
That was easy. Councilmember De La Torre.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. The renewal fee, what kind of psychological evaluation comes, goes along with this renewal fee? Like, do you have to get the psychological evaluation every two years?
No. The Penal Code allows the licensing authority to have the applicant, the initial applicants have a psych exam. For two years later for the renewal, to have it again, we have to have like very specific and articulable reasons why we feel that they need to have another one. So to answer your, I mean, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then just so that the public and all of us understand this, so let's say you get a, oh, first of all, do we know that the number of residents that have this concealed weapons license?
For the Sheriff's Department, they have a total of 150 applications in their system, and they're processing 83, and there's currently 46 with licenses.
In the city of Santa Monica?
Correct.
Forty-six residents have licenses to carry a concealed weapon. And just so that we understand, someone has a concealed weapon, you're walking down the street, I mean, I guess you feel more secure, but realistically, when can you pull that weapon out? What would constitute sort of illegal way to utilize that weapon? And then what would be illegal, so that we understand exactly what we're talking about here?
Well, I think the situation there will dictate a little bit. I haven't seen anything within the Penal Code as it relates to CCWs and when they can or cannot. But I would say in a life, you know, a life-threatening situation or in a moment where there's a, like, a moment of, you know, serious bodily injury to yourself or someone else, and they feel that there's no other possible solution to that scenario.
Have we had any incidents in the city of Santa Monica where we've had someone with a concealed weapon, and they've been involved in an altercation or?
Not that I've heard of. I have not heard of any, and nothing that I've personally experienced in my time so far.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a few questions. So, and I don't know if you know the answer or not. So one of the things we're going to do is we're going to do a background check that talks, that examines local and county law enforcement contacts. So we know that sadly, guns are often used in domestic violence situations. Would local and county law enforcement contacts include, for example, whether or not members of our police department have been called to a location where the applicant was involved in a domestic violence dispute?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And would also questions about proclivity towards domestic violence be included in the psychological review? If you know.
There is some opportunity for that in the, within the application itself and during the initial interview with a background investigator.
Okay, great, thank you. And this might be a question for the city attorney. I actually, and I can't remember where it was now, so I apologize. I walked by a business that basically said no guns allowed inside the other day. And it was here in California, it wasn't in the South or Tennessee or something like that. Do we have any ability to control where someone carries a concealed weapon? In other words, to say, for example, no concealed weapons allowed on the pier, that sort of thing?
Yes, there is some ability. There are some limitations. For example, they could be prohibited from all city government buildings and so forth. And then a condition of the CCW can be that it's not taken onto property where they restrict carrying guns there.
Okay. And I didn't see that listed here as a CCW license restriction, or did I miss it?
No, that is not part of, so the item in front of you tonight is pertaining to establishing a fee regimen for the issuance of concealed carry permits under, there's actually some state legislation being developed, actually, it's more than developed, it is fully developed, being debated in the state, supported by the governor, that actually does have a number of different restrictions in it about where you can carry a gun. And I'm pulling it up right now so I can kind of enumerate what some of those are because it will cover things like public buildings, schools, places of worship, and things like that. I'm just pulling it up to give you the.
And that's fine. So, I mean, so it might be, would it be appropriate then, tonight, we can address this issue about fees, but then also give direction to come back with modifications to a program that might, you know, within state law, limit the ability of people? Because I'm very concerned, obviously, about our public spaces, concerned about our schools. I mean, we've just seen some terrible things at houses of worship.
Schools are already off limits, but.
Okay, well, good, glad to hear that. So anyway, all right, that, those are my questions. No one else appears to be in the queue, oh, Councilmember Terosis.
Did I accidentally put my mic on?
And I do have the SB 2 item up in front of me, just real quick. So where SB 2 will designate as certain, what they define as sensitive areas where firearms cannot be carried, will include things such as school grounds, community college, colleges, university grounds, government and judicial buildings, medical facilities, public transportation, any place where alcohol is sold and consumed, public parks and playgrounds, or special events that require permits such as demonstrations. And that's basically the totality of it. And just to be clear for the record, the city of Santa Monica will be issuing a letter of support for this piece of legislation, consistent with the only other jurisdiction I know in the area to date is LA County, and we will be joining them as well.
All right, great, thank you. That's very informative. Councilmember Terosis.
Thank you. Really appreciate the presentation. Can you just clarify for me, maybe it's my lack of understanding here, but on the staff report, on page nine, the proposed, I mean, you're clear in this report, the proposed maximum fee is $617, but then you have, on this presentation, this slide here, and then on page 11 of the staff report, the total proposed cost recovery fee is 670, sorry, $767, it's getting late. I was not clear in reading this. Are we proposing that we are charging $617, or are we charging $767 in order to recover for the psychological evaluation?
So proposing is 617. So that's the, it's the $398 from ICCW, and then the $219 for the staff time. That $150 fee is capped by the Penal Code, and that fee will actually go to the psychological company.
But we don't have to pay for that? They have to pay for that to the psychological company directly?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure. And would there be any sort of authority for us to charge more than the $617?
Well.
Or maybe that's a question for Doug, I'm not sure.
Well, under state law, we're limited to charging what a reasonable fee is.
Right, I.
And then what a constitutional fee would be, and so the upper limit is probably our actual cost.
Okay.
And our cost, the cost we presented to you tonight, with the exception of the renewal fee, which is limited by state law, is based on our cost recovery.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to think, you know, should we recover more than just our cost, especially if we're not trying to incentivize everyone to go out there and get a CCW permit?
There would be some risk to that.
There'd be a risk, okay, a legal risk, okay, thank you. And I would also just say I support a future item similar to what we did in LA County to prohibit carrying guns on public property, et cetera, and prohibit selling large-scale like magazines in the city of Santa Monica, if that's a thing that we haven't done yet.
All right. So why don't we start out with, I will move that council adopt the resolution attached to the staff report establishing certain concealed carry weapon license fees for new applications, renewal applications, and amended licenses, setting maximum current fees, and authorizing the charging of higher fees if state law changes, and that we also adopt a finding of no possibility of significant effect pursuant to Section 15061b3 of the California Environmental Quality Act.
I second.
All right, moved by Davis, seconded by Brock. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom?
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nogrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero. I would then move that we give direction to staff to monitor SB 2 as it works its way through the legislature, and should it in fact be enacted, that staff return with a proposed ordinance that would limit the places in which concealed weapons could be carried, and that we also ask staff to investigate the possibility of limiting high-capacity magazines, their ability to be either sold or used within, or possessed, I guess, within Santa Monica.
Second.
All right, that direction is moved by Davis, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Nogrete. We can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously as well. Thank you, Sergeant McGee, and thank you to Chief Batista for all the work you all have done on this.
Item 16A, request of Councilmembers Wick and Brock to ask the city attorney and city manager to return to city council with amendments and updates to the municipal code to prohibit gasoline-powered leaf blowers, allowing for electric leaf blowers, and enhancing enforcement of the prohibition on gas-powered leaf blowers. Also request the city manager to return with potential funding sources to incentivize conversion to electric leaf blowers. A draft ordinance amendment is included.
All right, who's leading on this one? Councilmembers Wick.
Yeah, just by way of background, this is being brought forward because of a regular stream of feedback I received from residents around the fact that gas-powered leaf blowers have been banned for many years, if not decades at this point in our city. They're still quite prevalent. By way of personal anecdote, on Monday, my neighbor on one side of me uses them, and on Tuesday, the neighbor on the other side of me uses one. And as we all know, and as is indicated in the attachment, these gas-powered leaf blowers are tremendously polluting, really shockingly so, frankly, even compared to automobiles. And I know there's been some feedback that we've received that indicates, which is true, that currently the ordinance that we have on the books prohibits all motorized leaf blowers of any kind. I would say that this is a question of the perfect and the good. As policymakers, our job is to deal in reality, and the goal here was to say, how do we, while the ordinance currently prohibits all gas-powered leaf blowers, it's not effectuating that in our city. And what we were looking at, what I was looking at, along with Councilmember Brock, was frankly, a series of incentives and punishments that would actually effectuate a situation in our city where we see better enforcement of the ordinance against gas-powered leaf blowers. But we also allow, in dealing with reality, reasonable alternatives for gardeners and landscape companies that have very low cost margins and have to deal with many households and properties in a day, that would provide them an opportunity to switch over while still making a living, while simultaneously dramatically reducing the noise and air pollution that are caused by the internal combustion in gas-powered blowers. So in my mind, this is a compromise that would actually lead to a better situation in our city with less air pollution and less noise pollution. It allows the code enforcement to rely not just on their own eyes and ears and being able to show up in the exact moment in which an offense might be taking place, but it allows the admission of video evidence through which they could target enforcement against a responsible party with, armed with that evidence that was backed up by the person who took the video and sworn testimony. So it could hopefully make that more feasible for code enforcement to actually enforce what we have on the books. While simultaneously, as mentioned, it would provide avenues for people who want to do their best to comply with this law, to actually be able to do so, it also has. with this law, to actually be able to do so. It also has specific decibel levels to which even the electric leaf blowers would have to fall below. I think it's listed as 70 decibels, and that's a reasonable standard that I've seen in other cities, by which not only would we be limiting it only to electric leaf blowers going forward, but we would be limiting it to those electric leaf blowers that fall below that standard. And again, I hear the feedback from some residents that says, well, we've already outlawed every kind of leaf blower. Why would we change that? And my answer is that, again, as policymakers, we deal in reality. And while I too would love to see no leaf blowers in our city, I would most especially love to see a policy put on the books that reduces the air pollution and noise pollution that I currently see experiencing in our city. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brock, do you have anything to add?
I do. Nobody should ever ask me that question. No, I'm just kidding. You know, look, we've had a leaf blower prohibition on the books for over a decade, and yet we don't have the staff right now to enforce the current leaf blower ordinance. We know that no matter what kind of leaf blower you use, it pollutes. There's airborne pollutants, allergens, there's feces, there's all kinds of things mixed up in the lawn, in the lawn blowers. However, on top of the allergens, we also have the noise. And it's interesting that the residents who usually complain about leaf blowers are the ones who are hearing the gas-powered, gas-powered blowers, which are also spewing gas fumes into the air along with the natural pollutants that are being stirred up. But in addition to that, you know, we've found over and over again that we have no ability to enforce the current rules, and that the gas blowers just make a racket. The new electronic portable leaf blowers are actually relatively quiet. You can walk by them and hardly know they're there. I, on my walk the other morning up San Vicini, from Ocean to the Brentwood Country Club, counted nine leaf blowers at 10:00 AM. Every gardener, and I, and I can tell you, I've fought with our building gardeners, and I've stopped them from using leaf blowers, saying we would not employ them any longer. But, and then they went from, well, can we just do it inside the premises, inside the greenery in the premises? And we said, no, they can't. But it takes them an extra hour or two, and I know our building gets charged a couple hundred extra a month in order to have gardening services because we want the guy to sweep, in which case the guy starts using water. So, I don't know if we're winning either way. We don't want the pollutants from, from blowers. We don't want the gas used. We certainly don't want the allergens and everything else that's in the air. But right now, we're failing completely. And I think most residents have decided we're failing. So, Councilmembers Wick came to me with this. I'm still concerned about the environmental impact, as Jesse is. We're both concerned about the environmental impacts. We're both concerned about the hazards to our respiratory systems from any kind of leaf blowers. And we're both concerned about the, the gas that's used. But we need to figure out something. And the, the code enforcement director in the city has suggested a couple of alternatives, which I think would help. You'd be able to submit a video of the person using the leaf blower. They would get a letter to the owner of that building, and we would put part of the onus on the owners of the building, to say you can't use that kind of leaf blower. Now, we could do it by saying no leaf blowers, and do that evident, and do it that way, too. But, you know, there is something to be said about, we have a tremendous amount of gardeners in this city. And Councilmembers Wick mentioned something. We need to be concerned about everyone's livelihood in the city as well. And I think that's an important point, that we don't want to drive people out of business. And they are used everywhere now in Santa Monica, Brentwood, you know, the entire city of LA. Gardening's a huge profession. So, this is a compromise to see if something can work, and I support it.
All right. Are there any other comments? Well, no one's in the queue, so I will make a comment. I, I do always appreciate the idea of letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. And I certainly respect the idea that folks who are in the landscaping or gardening industry do use leaf blowers and find them, I'm gathering, to be more efficient, which is why they use them. I'm reminded of that scene from LA story, though, where the guy had the leaf blower and a single leaf, and he was chasing it all over the lawn. I certainly appreciate that gas, gasoline-powered leaf blowers are the most polluting. But when we initially, and I was on the council when we initially adopted this ban, there was significant discussion around the fact that not just do the engines expel pollutants, but the actual act of using the leaf blower generates a lot of air pollution. People point those things at the curb. There is detritus within the curb area, and it gets blown into the air. And, and I told Councilmembers Wick this, that I believe on that night, the terms fecal material were used repeatedly, because you're blowing the leaf blowers over areas where dogs and other animals defecate, that sort of thing. So, I actually was attracted to the idea of using video evidence, and also making it very clear that the person who would be responsible for paying any fine that ultimately was assessed would be the property owner that was allowing the bad behavior to continue. But I really have serious concerns about allowing electric leaf blowers. Yes, they are more quiet. They are not quiet. Yes, they are more environmental, but they still have this sad truth that not only, they may not emit pollutants via their motors, but that somebody using them will be blowing pollutants into the air. And so, that, that is my concern. And so, for that reason, I can't support the draft ordinance as written. But I do appreciate the idea of trying to change the policy that would allow us to do a better job of enforcing our ban that's already on the books. So, would someone want, nobody else is commenting, so maybe it's motion time?
I have, sorry, can I make another?
All right. Councilmember De La Torre. Well, he's next in the queue.
I mean, I, you know, I, I think the electric leaf blower is definitely an upgrade, you know, to the gas-powered leaf blower in many different respects. But, and one of the things to be said, I mean, I've seen people work with the leaf blower, and it's, it's better, it's easier for them to do the job. And from what I've seen is, they don't put it on full blast. They know how to control the power of it to, you know, minimize sort of the, the pollutants. So, they, they do a very good job of trying to keep things, you know, you know, not, not as harmful. And so, I totally respect, you know, this item and where it's going. And, you know, we're, we're making improvements. It's incremental progress, you know, towards getting to a point where, where things can be perfect. But, you know, it's, it's also, you know, thinking about these workers, you know, who are, you know, they have plenty of, plenty of routes, you know, you know, they, they have a lot of, they're serving, they're servicing a lot of our residents. And without the leaf blower, you know, it's just a lot more extra work on the back, you know? It makes their job easier. So, I think that the electric leaf blower is definitely an improvement, you know, and, and I support the, the item as, as written.
All right. Councilmembers Wick?
I would just, yeah, I would respond just to say that there was a lot of research performed as to what certain decibels is on the issue of noise to start, you know, whatever presents. And, you know, the average gas-powered leaf blower is around somewhere between 80 to 90-plus decibels, which, which is sort of in the, in the harmful range when you, when you study this. Something that at a sustained period of time would be not only just a nuisance, but actually potentially dangerous to one's hearing if you are the one operating it. Whereas 70 decibels, which was the limit that we would set, which most electric leaf blowers fall under, is the equivalent, in this graph at least, as the office noise inside a car, sorry, office noise or the inside of a car going at 60 miles an hour. There's, there's nothing to be said. I share the same concerns that any sort of air-blown device would disturb certain pollutants, and that's a reasonable concern. I would simply say, as has already been mentioned, the business model of many of these landscaping firms are to hit as many houses as possible very quickly. That said, regardless of one's opinion on, on that particular issue, this 16 item, while there is a draft ordinance attached, is simply a request for the city manager to return to city council with amendments and updates to our code. And if there are things that the council likes about this or doesn't, I would move that we ask the city attorney to make these amendments. And if we see fit to further alter them, we'll have multiple opportunities to do so.
All right. Councilmember Brock?
I was just going to suggest, or I thought Councilmember Wick was going to suggest the motion.
Yes.
So, if you suggest the motion, I'll second it.
I will suggest that we move for the, I will make a motion for the city, to, to request that the city attorney and city manager return to council with amendments and updates to our code on leaf blowers.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Wick, seconded by Brock. Because there's no money involved, we can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any abstentions? All right. That resolution passes five to two. Did you want to explain your no vote? Please go ahead.
Thank you. And the reason why, I mean, aside from, is that for someone that is a chronic allergy sufferer, and I have acute asthma, anything that gets blown into the atmosphere makes me super sick. So, whether it's, you know, electric or not, for those that, especially those of us that live near the freeway, we just had this conversation, any type of leaf blower is not good. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will move on to the next item. Ms. Newsom?
Item 16B, request of Mayor Davis and Mayor Potem Negrete that the city council allocate $10,000 of discretionary funds to Samo High Grad Night, a 501(c)(3) to enable over 165 low-income students to attend. This would close the shortfall between previous city funding, funding allocated as part of the annual budget and the organization's expenses for 20, June 2023. For over 30 years, Grad Night has provided a safe, secure venue for graduating Santa Monica High School seniors to celebrate their achievements.
All right. Mayor Potem Negrete?
I don't want to belabor the evening, but I do want to say that it is one of the best events. Kristen McCann and I worked it last year, and I've worked it in years past. And so, I implore all of you to check it out, because it's, it's actually a very cool idea. I mean, I had it when I was, when I graduated in 1997, and I'm just happy that it's still going on. The ship doesn't look the same, but it is an amazing event. Costs have gone up in a big way, and we have always supported it, I think, in the same capacity. But our support this year means even more, because a lot of students can't afford the tickets to go. So, this gives everybody an opportunity. And I just want to point out that every year, they have done an even better job of making sure that every student gets the ability to attend, and somehow they are able to cover the costs with parent support and fundraisers and whatnot. So, our contribution is just going to continue to allow these students to go and just help offset some of the looming costs for the event.
Did you want to make a motion?
And I would like to make a motion that we move to allocate $10,000 of discretionary funds to Samo High Grad Night.
All right. Councilmember Brock?
I'll second the motion. But in addition to that, since I have something to do with the Alumni Association, and all those seniors the next day will become alumni. So, I'm thrilled to support this motion.
All right. Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes, I think it's really important that we, we support this, because there are a lot of students that, you know, can't afford it. And I think it's about almost like $100, or maybe even more with the cost of things. So, this is a really important thing that, you know, for our budget priority in terms of social inclusion. So, I support this motion.
All right. Since this does involve the spending of money, we'll do a roll call vote. Motion by Negrete, seconded by Brock.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes seven to zero.
Item 16C, request of Mayor Davis and Councilmembers Wick that the council allocate $10,000 of its discretionary funds to support pride activities this year. Organizers are working with the pier, downtown Santa Monica, Santa Mica Travel and Tourism, and Santa Monica Place to return pride activities to the city sometime in June. Current plans are for a one-day, family-friendly celebration with installations in downtown Santa Monica at the pier and the, and Santa Monica Place. Total budget for the event presently is $30,000 to $40,000, and a $10,000 contribution will allow the city to be a sponsor of the event. Other organizations are contributing similar amounts as part of their sponsorship.
And I'll take the lead on this one. I'm very proud of the fact during my prior term as mayor in 2019, we had our first citywide pride festival. It was incredibly well-received and a joyous time for all. We were able to celebrate Santa Monica as an inclusive community. And I think the remainder of the item speaks for itself. Councilmembers Wick?
I would just add that I was surprised that 2019 was the first-ever pride event in Santa Monica. And unfortunately, it was also the last because of COVID. And I think it's very important that it not be. It's, it's very important, as, as Mayor Davis mentioned, to us being an inclusive community. And it's, it's also probably a great revenue generator and, and thing that would be good for our city in general, to, to celebrate and bring people to our downtown and our beaches and the rest of our community.
Is that a motion?
I would move to allocate that $10,000, yes.
Second.
All right. Moved by Wick, seconded by Negrete. No one else in the queue. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom?
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parr?
Yes.
Councilmembers Wick?
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Request, I'm sorry, item 16D, request of Mayor Davis and Councilmember Terosus that the city council allot $10,000 of its discretionary funds to the Santa Monica Animal Shelter Foundation. The funds will be used to help create a properly turfed play area for dogs at the Santa Monica Animal Shelter. The shelter needs a proper area where dogs can play and exercise and interact with potential adopters and shelter volunteers. Currently, the play area is all dirt, which makes it unusable and unpleasant much of the time, and it has repeatedly flooded in recent rains. Creating a properly turfed area will greatly benefit the dogs, the shelter dogs' well-being while waiting for their forever home. The estimated total cost of the project is $30,000, and the foundation plans to seek private donations for the additional monies needed to complete the project.
So, I'll start off with this one. As you all know, I have been featuring the animal shelter during my, this term as mayor, and I had the tremendous pleasure of going and visiting and getting a sense of what is needed there. And I will say, one of the sad things about the COVID pandemic was that a lot of people adopted dogs, and then for whatever reason, were unable to keep them, either because they had to go back to work or other reasons. And so, for the first time in a long time, our shelter is virtually full. And it has a lot of larger dogs that have, unfortunately, have, need to be rehomed. And they have an area where the larger dogs in particular can play, or where anyone who wants to adopt a dog can interact with the dog to see if it's a good fit. But sadly, it was grass, and it died. And with these recent rains, it has repeatedly flooded, which makes it almost unusable for the dogs, because if they let the dogs out into the dirt area, then the dogs need to be cleaned, and they don't have enough volunteers to literally clean all the dogs that are currently in the shelter every day. So, the Santa Monica Animal Shelter Foundation, which is a nonprofit which supports activities at the shelter, is seeking to raise a total of $30,000 to re-turf the play area, and this would contribute, obviously, a third of that. Do you have anything to add, Councilmember Terosus?
No, just that this is much needed. And I've also suggested that the shelter leveraged this funding with perhaps some discretionary money from our supervisor. So, hopefully, we can get them the $30,000 that they need.
That would be awesome. With that, I will move item 16C, oh, sorry, 16D, sorry, I'm on the wrong spot, 16D, to allocate $10,000 of our discretionary funds to the Santa Monica Animal allocate $10,000 of our discretionary funds to the Santa Monica Animal Shelter Foundation.
Go ahead, you threw an item in.
All right, moved by Davis, seconded by Terosus. Councilmember Brock.
I have a, I'm totally in support of this, but I was curious, I think we were supposed to be told each night that we're using discretionary funds, what the balance is?
Yes, and as-
Do we know that?
Yes, as I understand it from the city manager, there is sufficient money in the discretionary fund for each of the allocations that are requested here. Is that correct?
Yes, going into this evening, you had $73,000 discretionary funds, and if everything is allocated tonight, you'll be down to about $33,000.
And, and just a reminder, we will presumably, although I guess we always could be surprised, we'll presumably get a new allocation on July 1st.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion made by Davis, seconded by Terosus. May we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom.
Councilmember Zwik?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously seven to zero.
Item 16E, request of Mayor Davis and Mayor Potem Negrete that the city council allocate up to $10,000 of their discretionary funds to the Montana Avenue Merchants Association, a 501(c)(3) for their annual art, art walk that is planned for September 30th, 2023. The art walk is a one-day outdoor art festival that takes place along the Montana Avenue Business Corridor from 6th to 17th Streets. The event includes performance artists, live music, and interactive art activities for children and adults. Art Walk has been an annual event for the past 10 years and has become one of Montana Avenue's signature events. The funding will be used to offset costs related to supporting an enhanced and expanded event, including the costs associated with potentially closing portions of Montana Avenue.
Mayor Potem Negrete.
In years past, this event was on the sidewalk, and it has since grown to be much larger, which I think is amazing. It is something that the entire city goes to, and I hope will go to. So the support from the city council's discretionary funds will help, as you heard earlier from Albin, supply some of the much-needed barricades for the streets and other costs that allow for them to expand it into the street. So, I mean, it says everything in here, and I think you guys all know what it is, and I'm getting really tired. So I'm introducing it, and I'm also going to make a motion to move it if I can.
Second.
All right, moved by Negrete, seconded by Terosus. Councilmember Zwik?
Just a quick question. It sounds great, and I'm in support. It, it does say that the funds will be used for various costs, including potentially closing portions of Montana Avenue. Are the funds indeed partly to, to close the street, or is that just an idea? Because I'm very in support of that, and I'm just, want to understand if, if that's in the plan, or-
I think before they knew they were getting the money, they weren't sure what they'd have money to do. So now this will help direct that. But that's what we were told, is specifically that's part of it, not all of it.
Okay, well, I mean, I just would say that I, I hope that is part of it. It would make a more vibrant atmosphere.
Well, just, just, I think the reason why it had to be potentially is because we're bringing forward an emergency ordinance to you in April 25th to allow for street closures. Current city policy actually makes that really difficult and challenging. So it's subject to the council supporting, taking action that would allow that to occur. That's why it had to be potentially.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Negrete, seconded by Terosus, I believe. All right, so may we have a roll call vote, Ms. Newsom.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zwik?
Yes.
Mayor Davis.
Yes, that passes unanimously seven to zero.
Item 16F, request of Councilmember De La Torre and Mayor Potem Negrete to determine the cost to improve the vacant lot at 1318, 1324th Street to allow for sustained parking and other uses until development of the affordable housing project designated for the property commences.
Who will be introducing this?
I'll start.
All right, Councilmember De La Torre.
The parking lot three was torn down, demolished, and there's an empty lot. So we want to find a way to expeditiously create an opportunity to either generate some revenue with a parking lot or some other creative uses. We've heard everything from a skating rink to, you know, movies, you know, some, some type of activation. I understand that downtown Santa Monica Board and Executive Director has been working with the city. There's been talks, you know, about, about sort of some creative ways to activate that space. So we're looking forward, you know, for staff to come back with some creative ideas for the fastest way to get that going. We know that we're probably at least two years away from any type of construction, breaking ground, so we don't want to have that dead space. We want to have some, something there. So we're looking forward to, you know, those conversations that have already started with downtown SM and staff to bring forward some proposals to this council so that we can support it.
Do you have anything to add, Mayor Potem?
Yeah, I mean, I think you put it very clearly, and it's also just to look at, there was some conversation about, you know, whether or not it could be a parking lot. We just need to understand if it's even, the base is set up, you know, the compaction. It may not be, it may be very expensive to do that, but we want to look at all our options so that we can not only generate potential revenue, which could be used for other things that are needed, but also a space that people could utilize, whether it be food trucks that come in. DTSM Board has done, had a lot of discussions about it, and we just want to actually push it forward to look at what's the timeline and the cost to activate that space so that it's not just sitting there.
Councilmember Terosus.
Yeah, I, I would just say, generally speaking, I'm super supportive of everything that activates the space downtown, especially around the promenade. I am concerned about the fact that we tore down a parking lot to create more parking. The optics of that, I know that there's a parking structure on 4th Street that's like half a block away, and technically, we have enough parking in the downtown area. I will say that I did speak with EAH Housing, who is in an ENA with the city on that site, and they said that they have a similar situation, Stevensville, they have a similar situation in West Hollywood where they have entered into a development agreement to develop affordable housing on city-owned land, and they leased the land back to the city while they were getting their entitlements, and now it's a community garden. So I would just say, it sounds like DTSM is really supportive of doing something in an activation sense. I would just say, my preference would not to be parking there, but really would be to activate the space to the extent possible. Thanks.
Councilmember Zwik.
Just to echo a little bit of that, I mean, I'm very supportive of finding ways to activate any of our space in our downtown and, and make it a more vibrant place, as we all have as a goal as a council. I did, because I was curious, dig into the question of parking in the downtown, and, and you know, we do have studies that I, I thought were quite interesting. The last year in which the parking capacity of downtown was studied was in 2019, which definitely has had vehicle or traffic levels that we have not returned to since that time. And interestingly enough, among the study findings were that on the five busiest days of the year in 2019, the amount of available spaces we had on average in our downtown was 1,142. That was the five busiest days of the year. We had over 1,000 available parking spaces. And, and as we all know, when, when Parking Structure 3 was decommissioned, Parking Structure 6 had previously been designed to accommodate all of those spaces. So it doesn't seem to me like that would be the best use if we have already a glut of available parking in our downtown, but as long as we're studying every option, I'm happy to support that.
Well, I actually disagree with that, in that, by that, I mean, I don't think we should spend a nanosecond studying building more parking, and we certainly shouldn't contemplate spending any money. It's my understanding that the pad that's currently there cannot support the weight of parked vehicles, and why we would consider spending a dime to create more parking spaces when, as Councilmember Zwik pointed out, we don't need additional parking. We are so overparked in downtown that we're actually in negotiations with downtown Santa Monica to take the top floor of Parking Structure 6 and turn it into a movie theater, effectively, to do outdoor movies. Why we would even contemplate surface parking when we could use that pad for all sorts of exciting things that I think downtown Santa Monica would like to do there remains just incredibly mystifying to me. And I know that we received an email from someone who said, well, people don't like to park in the structures. Well, the interesting thing is literally across the street from this place, we have a tremendous amount of outdoor surface parking where many people can park. So I don't, and as Councilmember Zwik points out, this will not raise money for the city because we'll, we'll have to charge the same rates that we charge in the structure. This is not going to drive more cars. So instead of people parking in the structure, they'll park on the surface lot. It's not going to be additive in terms of revenue to just create more parking spaces. It just means people will park in a different place than when they might otherwise park. So I'm very much opposed to even sending staff off to try and get estimates for what it would cost to create parking when we don't need parking, when there are much better things to do with the site. And frankly, and we had this discussion when we heard the original Sustainable Cities Plan, is every study that's looked at the question shows, when you create more parking, you actually are perhaps driving more traffic, and if you reduce the availability of parking, you reduce the vehicle miles traveled by people. So I think from a, I mean, we just spent all this time on a Sustainable City Plan. We, on Saturday, we adopted sustainability as one of our underlying values. And the idea that we would then turn around and say, okay, let's think about building more parking, is absolutely anathema to me. So while I support having the city continue to negotiate with downtown Santa Monica for the use of this empty space for exciting things, the idea of spending literally a nanosecond looking at the possibility and actually having someone go out and evaluate how much it would cost to build more parking, I think is just not consistent with our values and not consistent with what we need. There's no shortage of parking. We just reopened the library parking lot. As I said, there's literally tons of surface parking across the street from this pad. Our current existing parking structures are underutilized, and as I said, they're so underutilized that we're going to take an entire floor of Parking Structure 6 potentially out of commission and do something really fabulous there with an outdoor cinema. So to me, I, I can't support this. If we wanted to, I mean, because it seems to me, while it does talk about its sustained parking and other uses, the only reason we would have to go out to get cost to improve the vacant lot is for the sustained parking. It's my understanding from talking to folks at downtown Santa Monica and the city manager, and correct me if I'm wrong, that for the kinds of things that downtown Santa Monica wants to do at the site, there does not to be, need to be any further improvement at the site. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we're in conversations with downtown Santa Monica already about activating that lot through a memorandum of understanding, and there's no improvements to the lot needed to entertain the range of uses that they're talking about at this point in time.
So the only improvement would have to be is if we were going to turn it into a parking lot?
That's correct.
Then I'll be voting no. Councilmember Brock.
Well, I know you expect me to say, damn it, let's get that as a parking lot immediately. However, you know, contrary to a couple of residents who wrote me in the last 48 hours, I have attended four movies downtown in the last three weeks and parked in our parking structures. I've also parked on Arizona Avenue, and I've parked on 2nd Street. I've eaten downtown five times in the last three weeks as well. And I've also, before we ended up in a, changing our climate base to somewhere in, you know, England, and we're now somewhere in York with the rain, but before that, I walked downtown all the time. I will tell you that I'm really disappointed because we have more parking and less people downtown than we've ever had. Now, that hurts me to say that, but I have not had to park in the last three weeks above this. I went as far as the third floor in Parking Structure 5, and in Parking Structure 6, I park on the bottom floor going down every single time and hit the top layer there. And in fact, what I would consider spaces one through five have been empty on a Saturday afternoon and a Sunday night. So I will tell you, first of all, that's frustrating to me, but secondarily, the, the spaces from that are not needed right now, and they really aren't. And, and I've been down there, I've parked, and I haven't had a problem parking. In 2018, 2019, yeah, I would have had a problem parking. So, and last Saturday afternoon, at different times, our city manager was downtown, I think our planning director was downtown, I was downtown. And I parked within two or three minutes, and downtown, actually, I was impressed. It was, for one of the few times, it was bustling. It was Black History Month downtown, there was a special event going, there were new stores opening. I participated in the grand opening of Blender's downtown. I was really impressed in that, that far, that furthest block. So I am, I am one of the people, along with Councilmember Parra and some others, I think, that talked about a roller ring back when we were having discussions about whether we could even get the ice rink going. So I, I don't want food trucks on that lot. First of all, they wouldn't be able to be sustainable because if you can't park cars, you can't park food trucks. But a roller rink there, other events where people can walk right through to the gallery food hall, food hall that just reopened, or on 3rd Street, right to the promenade, where hopefully, we'll have a restaurant in the center pod at Arizona and 3rd soon. So I, I, you know, I will support uses. I won't support parking there because frankly, we have enough parking right now. That doesn't make me happy. I want that to be clear. I'm not happy we have enough parking. I want to come back to the day where I have to drive around 20 minutes, or I have to walk from my home, which is what I normally do to our downtown. So that's where I am. So I won't support parking, but I will support uses. And was there, was there already a motion made?
No, there was no motion. We have a couple more people, the-
Okay, because otherwise, all right, I would make a friendly amendment when the motion's made, asking to strike the parking, but absolutely go with special events.
Well, can I just ask a clarifying question? We just heard from the city manager, he's already engaged with downtown Santa Monica to do events, so do we need any direct, you don't need any additional direction for that. This is really aimed at the parking. Councilmember De La Torre.
I mean, well, just, the, the effort here is to try to activate the space, you know, and, and to get something going. Parking was one idea, but it was, the item was written in a way to say, and other uses, because we have a very intelligent and smart staff, and we think that the staff working with downtown Santa Monica is going to come with the best recommendation possible to get the most expeditious solution on the ground, and that's really the goal. And so I, I put my full trust in, in the leadership at Downtown Santa Monica, Inc., and also in our staff to come with some recommendations that we, that we all can, can agree on.
Mayor Potem Negrete.
I just wanted to echo the same thing. I mean, I hear the robust emotion behind parking, and I don't disagree. I think that there were businesses that were talking about convenience and the, at night when you're closing up and working at, say, Barney's Beanery, and you have both female and young staff members having to take out trash and walk to parking, that was some of the concern, along with other patrons. So it wasn't that there isn't a lot of parking. I, too, experienced, because I frequent the promenade area multiple times a week, that there's a lot of parking, but I didn't realize that this would create tons of thousands of hours of work or money, or whatever it would create. If you've already decided that, you've done the studies, and you know that it's not going to handle any of it, we were just looking at all options and not excluding any one thought process from it. I think the idea in the end is, I've always talked about the roller skating rink. I have to promote something like that in another part of Southern California, and whatever it turns out to be, maybe it's even more than that, and it's flexible so that we can use it for other things. I think we're just not, we were just simply putting on, as Councilmember De La Torre said, the items so that we were moving forward with it, and it sounds like I'm hearing that, oh, we're already moving forward with this, and we don't need any direction. So are you saying, city manager, that there were already items coming back to us to be presented?
All I'm suggesting is that we, our staff have been engaged with DTSM on-
All I'm suggesting is that we, our staff have been engaged with DTSM on talking about how to activate the parking lot. It's been, I think that's always been, my understanding is it's always been sort of part of the long-term plan when it came down was that we would work with them to activate it. So those conversations are, it was a bit of a hiatus when they have leadership changes at DTSM, but with Andrew there now, he's engaged in those conversations with us. So I don't know if that MOU, the part I'm hedging on is, I don't know if that MOU requires to come to council, but the conversations with them are just naturally, we're aligned and wanting to activate it.
Okay, I mean, I've had conversations, I attended the last board meeting and I've definitely been talking to all of them. So I'm looking at you as far as-
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's okay to say that we're heard, we are, we're being heard today and that, and that staff knows that council, you know, this was a robust discussion and that we want to see some activation in that space as soon as possible. And I think we don't, we can, we can withdraw the item so that-
The work is already being done.
Yeah, the work's already being done, we look forward to that, to those suggestions as soon as possible.
All right, thank you, Councilmember De La Torre. Councilmember Brock, do you still need to say anything given that statement?
Yeah, just because it's me. The real, no, 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 seriously, I think the one thing that's really important is we want to keep activating downtown, we want to renew it, we want to restore it, and we want to have an innovative downtown. That presents a temporary event space for downtown to use. I encourage the city manager to present that canvas to them. And I think that's what Oscar and Lana are talking about, too. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, so 16F was withdrawn, we don't need to take a vote. And thank you, everyone, for the conversation, we'll move on to 16G.
Item 16G, appointment to one unscheduled vacancy on the Architectural Review Board for a term ending on June 30, 2023, and we've received one applicant, Edward Scott.
Absent anyone else having a nomination, I would suggest we appoint Edward Scott by acclamation.
Second, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Mr. Scott, welcome to the Architectural Review Board and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Item 16, sorry. Item 16H, recommendation to accept Evan Nicholas's resignation from the Disabilities Commission and authorize the city clerk to publish a vacancy.
I will move it.
Second.
All right, moved by Davis, seconded by Negrete.
Can I just make a comment? He said in his resignation letter that he can't leave the house during the evenings. And I just think, again, this speaks to our ability to be accessible and inclusive for everyone to be able to serve. So just wanted to point that out.
No, and I, I understand that. So move to accept with regret by Davis, seconded by Negrete, and also, of course, with thanks for the time that he has served. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that passes unanimously. Sadly, we have two adjournments this evening, we'll begin, Councilmember Terosis.
Sure, so this evening, when we adjourn, I move that we adjourn in memory of Jerry Manpearl. Jerry Manpearl was born December 27, 1937, in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. He moved to Hollywood with his family when he was five years old. Although his grandparents were observant Jews, Jerry grew up in a secular family environment, meaning the Manpearls' Jewish identity was culture-based rather than religious and therefore intrinsically linked to their progressive politics and activism. Raised in a progressive house ripe with hands-on activism and an emphasis on education, Jerry was political from a young age. He got his BA from Berkeley in the late 1950s in what became the precursor to the free speech movement. He participated in San Francisco demonstrations at the Federal Building against the House Un-American Activities Committee in May 1960. Jerry received his law degree at UCLA in 1963, where he was a member of Law Review. He later clerked for Justice Clement Shin, Chief Justice of the California Court of Appeal, which he would regard as an immutable part of his legal education. After clerking, Jerry joined a small business law firm downtown where he defended people arrested in the 1965 Watts uprising and in the 1967 Century City anti-Vietnam War demonstration turned police riot at a Lyndon Johnson fundraiser. Both times, he prevented, he defended them pro bono on behalf of the ACLU. By 1970, Jerry and his first wife, Sandra Everbach, had three children, David, Jeff, and Karen. And after a short stint teaching contracts in the 1970s, Jerry continued his business litigation practice, representing both large and small corporations and several artists. His time on the Board of Air New Orleans and as Director and President of the Southern California Foreign Trade Association led to his writing and lobbying in Sacramento for trade-related legislation that eventually came before the US Supreme Court in 1981 in a case involving the Commerce Clause of the Constitution. In 1982, Jerry met Jan Goodman in the elevator at a law office Christmas party. He said the first night that he knew that she was the one he was going to spend his life with. They got married in Cuba, where they were both part of a National Lawyers Guild delegation to the island. Together, they have one daughter, Terry, who was born in 1996. Jerry's ideology can be described as secular humanist, progressive, anti-racist, anti-capitalist, anti-war, pro-working class, pro-welfare, and feminist with a sprinkle of US communism. But his outlook was so much grander than its parts. He always put his time and money where his mouth was and was devoted to causes, organizations, and people he believed made a positive difference. For almost 40 years, Jan and Jerry hosted countless events to benefit and highlight left-leaning causes, issues, organizations, and individuals. The week that Jan and Jerry moved to Santa Monica from Venice, they opened their home for a fundraiser for New Left Lion and State Senator Tom Hayden. Their home has been a stage for local progressive politics ever since. They have hosted events for Senator Barbara Boxer, Congressmembers Ted Lieu, Adam Schiff, Dennis Kucinich, Henry Waxman, Alan Grayson, and Cory Bush. They never neglected local electeds and candidates and most recently hosted an event for Mayor Karen Bass when she was running for mayor. They also annually host the Santa Monica Democratic Club Sammy Awards as well as annual fundraisers for ADA, Shalem, and the Physicians for a National Health Program and California Physicians Alliance, Medicare for All Party. I know many of us have been to their amazing fundraisers and have enjoyed chatting and being with them. Jerry was also a longtime Director of ADA, Americans for Democratic Action of Southern California. He was a member of the Santa Monica Democratic Club, Santa Monicans for Renters' Rights, and on the Board of Community Corporation of Santa Monica, the Alcott Center for Mental Health, and a devoted member and supporter of Shalem, a progressive secular Jewish community and school. Jerry was a natural risk-taker and adventurer, leading to his becoming a private pilot and driving his race car numerous times in La Carrera Panamericana, through Mexico from Guatemala to Texas. He was a biker, skier, scuba diver, and traveler, truly, he did it all. Family was incredibly important to Jerry and his was large. With scores of extended and unofficial family members, it was an under, it is an understatement to say that Jerry lived a life full of many characters and adventures. Jerry was a father to many beyond his bloodline and will be remembered by many for his guidance and wisdom. Jerry is survived by his wife, Jan Goodman, sons David and wife Nancy, and Jeffrey and wife Charlene, daughters Karen and husband Simon, and Terry, grandchildren Zach, Izzy, Keenan, Matthew, and Ray. Jerry was a big personality who will live on in all who knew him and tonight we adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Terosis. And sadly, we have a member of all of our family who we need to adjourn in honor of tonight. It's with a heavy heart that we're adjourning tonight's meeting in honor of our employee, Peter Provençal, our urban forest coordinator in the Public Landscape Division of the Public Works Department, who recently passed away. He came to Santa Monica in May of 2015 from working at Central Park in New York. Peter was a board-certified master arborist and his experience, aptitude, and natural talent made him an exceptional expert and practitioner of urban forestry. He did so much to progress how we inspect and prune trees here in the city. The trees on every street and every park have been inspected and pruned under his direction, so his work literally is seen everywhere. He's also was an incredibly hardworking and loyal colleague who loved working in Santa Monica. His energy and positive outlook were contagious and his booming voice and laughter will be sorely missed. The Public Works family is devastated by his loss, though they feel lucky to have worked alongside Peter for so many years. While we grieve Peter's loss, we can be grateful for his care of our urban forest every time we experience a shady and verdant walk along our many tree-lined streets. Fair winds, Peter. All right, on those sad notes, we will adjourn and we will be back one week from tonight on May 20, May, I'm sorry, I'm living in the future, March 21st at, for a special council meeting. Thank you all for your patience this evening.